The board will now come to order. Mountain Clerk, please call the roll.
The woman Tyus, present. Alderman Middlebrook.
Present.
Alderman Bosley. Alderman Evans.
Present.
Alderman Page.
Present.
Alderman Gracia.
Present.
Alderman Calder.
Here.
Alderman Rice.
Present.
Alderman Gunther.
Here.
Alderman Ballmer.
Present.
Alderman Martin.
Present.
Alderman Stevens.
Here.
Alderman Schweitzer.
Present.
Alderman Howard. Alderman Green.
Present.
Alderman Oldenburg.
Here.
Alderman Peel. Alderman Todd.
Present.
Thank you. Alderman Davis.
Present.
Alderman Spencer.
Present.
Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd.
Present.
Alderman McCarroll.
Present.
Alderman Norrion.
Here.
Alderman Con. Alderman Clark Hubbard.
Here.
Alderman Boyd.
Present.
President Reed.
Here.
Alderman Bosley. Alderman Howard.
Present.
Alderman Peel.
Present.
Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Con. Twenty-five present.
A quorum being present, we're just blessed today to be led in prayer by past Pastor Cynthia Rogers of Christ Deliverance Ministry. Pastor Rogers, we're in your hands.
Thank you. I appreciate that, President Reed. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. If you don't mind, would you just pause with me for a moment? As we recognize a prominent leader here in St. Louis, Bishop Allen Courtney Jones, who transitioned earlier this week. If you don't mind, we pause for a moment of silence in honor of this prominent leader of the city and a servant to the people. Thank you. Thank you very much. And if you don't mind, as we go petition in prayer, if you don't mind, bow on your heads in a word of prayer. Heavenly Father, we come to you this morning, first of all, with Thanksgiving in our hearts, for being allowed to see another day. We ask your blessings on the people who have been called to lead the city of St. Louis, the community in which we live and work and play. Remind them, especially in the midst of their political debates, that they are not only leaders, but also servants, and that it is their responsibility and ours to serve the common good of all. Heavenly Father, I ask that you grant them wisdom and knowledge as they make decisions. Grant them the wisdom and the courage to do what is right and good and true. May they speak out when it is time to speak out and listen patiently and receptively when it is time to listen. May they always be guided by the spirit of community, by the spirit of justice, and by the spirit of love. This is my prayer in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Pastor Rogers.
God bless you.
And before, before you go, I know there are a couple aldermen that were buying, they eat every like, there are a number of them that want you to be their special guest. So don't turn off, don't leave quite yet. Alderman from the, Alderman from the twenty-second.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I am certainly honored to have my pastor, Pastor Cynthia Rogers give the prayer on this last day of, uh, last Friday of Black History Month. She has certainly been an inspiration to me and my family, and um, we love her dearly. Thank you, Pastor C.
Thank you, Alderman Boyd.
All right, Alderman from the twenty-sixth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Me and Jeffrey been talking about, I'm sorry, me and Alderman Boyd been talking about this all week, that we will be playing tug of war because I have to say that Pastor Rogers, you look beautiful this morning, queen in that purple. You have been an amazing spirit. Uh, every time I reach out to you, Christ Deliverance is in the form of twenty-sixth ward, now the tenth ward. And I want to say that you absolutely speak to the power of ten that I talk about in the tenth ward. So thank you for always opening the doors for meetings. Thank you for always being opening um, to communicate with constituents that are around the church. You are definitely church outside of the walls. And so anything we can continue to work together on, you know, there any resource I could be to you, know that, but again, we, we sure are you today. She my special guest too.
Thank you. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. God bless you.
All right, Pastor Rogers, thank you so much and for, for that beautiful prayer, and we're looking forward to seeing you back here again.
Okay.
All right. With the Spence with line item three, introduction of honor guests. Any alderman from the twenty-third?
As always, in going for the world record, uh, I'd like to have my good friend Greg Meyer as my honored guest.
All right, Greg, welcome. Alderman from the twenty-first.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's my honored guest. I'd like to have Mr. Brian Rogers, the Vice President of the International Association of Plumbing and Mechanical Officials, and my good friend and our former Chief Clerk, Mr. David Sweeney.
All right, welcome. Alderman from the fourth.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, as my honored guest today, I'd like to uh, recognize Julia Allen, Michael Burns, Laura Hughes, the Lobster Brothers, and a host of others that are making significant accomplishments throughout the fourth ward.
Right, all right. Alderman from the twelfth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, today I would like my honored guest to be any St. Louisan pastor president who calls Ukraine home in some way or another, be they Ukrainian-American or be they just visiting for a bit. Um, in this present conflict, I think that solidarity is necessary with the people of Ukraine, especially those that happen to be a little bit closer to home. So today, my honored guest would be those that call Ukraine home. Thank you.
All right, let's welcome all of them. Alderman from the fourteenth.
Yes, I'd like to have as my special guest today, Ms. Catherine Birch, constituent. Um, she's always tuned in and watches the board of aldermen diligently. So I'd like to welcome her and, and along with the alderman from, alderman from the twelfth, I'd like to um, send my condolences and prayers to those people in the Ukraine and those citizens living here that have relatives over there. It's really a horrible situation that we're in right now, but I think we can pray and hope for, hopefully things will resolve. Okay, thank you. That's all.
All right, thank you and welcome Catherine Birch. Alderman from the fifth.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this morning, I would like to uh, recognize as my honored guest, uh, good friends, Mr. Freddie Lee James and his lovely wife Deborah. Uh, for those who may not know, uh, Mr. and Mrs. James are owners and operators of Freddie Lee's Gourmet Sauces. Uh, they started in a very humble commercial kitchen right at St. Patrick's Center in the fabulous Fifth Ward, and expanded into a larger facility uh, on the near North River front, and I have the honor of working with them as we speak to expand yet again. They manufacture a number of sauces, and a lot of people who enjoy barbecue around St. Louis may not realize it, but the sauces they're getting are commercial versions of sauces they manufacture. So it's my pleasure, especially in African American History Month, to recognize as my honored guest, Mr. Freddie Lee James and his wife Deborah.
All right, let's welcome Freddie Lee James and Deborah James. And thanks for all that great work. Uh, Alderman from the nineteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, and members of the body. I want to have as my special guest today, uh, all of the members, men and women of the St. Louis Metropolitan Police Department and the St. Louis Firefighters uh, Department. As we know, and we've looked most especially these last couple of weeks, there has been some tragic situations that they have been a part of saving lives and risking lives, which is their own. And so I just want to have all of them as my special guest, and I send out thank you for their services and prayers for their safety. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, let's welcome all of them. Alderman from the twenty-seventh.
Thank you, Mr. President. In honor of our colleague Samuel Moore, I want to have as my honored guest all the people that were not recognized today. As honored guests. So in recognition of Sam Moore, all of you all are our honored guests. Thank you so much.
Oh, I love that. All right, any further introductions, any further inductions? Alderman from the tenth like to wrap us up.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Since we gather here on February twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two. It was on this day in nineteen seventy-two, the Cardinals made one of their worst trades, giving Steve Carlton to the Philadelphia Phillies for Rick Weiss. A sad day in my life as being a left-handed user, yeah, I looked up to, but more importantly, this is Carpe Diem Day for you folks, not versed in Latin. That means seize the day day. All right, thank you.
All right, let's seize it. Approval of the minutes.
Approval of the minutes dated Friday, February the eighteenth, twenty-twenty-two.
Alderman from the tenth, you recognize on approval of the minutes.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move for approval of the minutes from February eighteenth, twenty-twenty-two.
Move by Alderman from the tenth, entertain a second on that motion. Second about Alderman from twenty-second, and I think was the Alderman from the twenty-third. Any discussion? It's been moved to second it that we adopt our current hour, uh, our February eighteenth minutes. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Reporters, city officials.
Reporters, city officials can be found in A, B, and C of the agenda that has been placed in the alderman's mailboxes.
We dispense with line item seven. Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal counters, any bills or resolutions off of any of our informal counters? We would dispense with line items eight, three, twelve. Second reading.
The following board bills were reported out of Pus with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill one forty-four, sponsored by Alderman Calder, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated November sixteenth, twenty-twenty-one for the seven four four through seven five zero South Fourth Street area. Board Bill one fifty-two, sponsored by Alderman Mohammed, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated December fourteenth, twenty-twenty-one for the West Florissant, De Soto, and East Wani Avenue area. Board Bill one eighty-eight, sponsored by Alderman Davis, an ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission on February the ninth, twenty-twenty-two to change the zoning of property as indicated on the district map from the K unrestricted district to the H area commercial district in City Block two one nine six, so as to, so as to include the described parcels of land in City Block two one nine six and contain an emergency clause. Board Bill one eighty-nine, sponsored by Alderman Stevens, an ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission on February the ninth, twenty-twenty-two to change the zoning of property as indicated on the district map from the A single-family dwelling district to F neighborhood commercial district in City Block four six nine six, so as to include the described parcels of land in City Block four six nine six and contain an emergency clause. Board Bill one ninety, sponsored by Alderman Gunther, an ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission on February the ninth, twenty-twenty-two to change the zoning of property as indicated on district map from J industrial district to F neighborhood commercial district in City Block one five five six, so as to include the described parcel of land in City Block one five five six and contain an emergency clause. Board Bill one ninety-six, sponsored by Alderman Peel, an ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission on February the ninth, twenty-twenty-two to change the zoning of property as indicated on district map from the K unrestricted district to H area commercial district in City Block three nine one eight point zero three, so as to include the described parcel of land in City Block three nine one eight point zero three and contain an emergency clause. The following board bill was reported out of public employee with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill one eighty-three, committee sub, sponsored by Alderman Bosley and Alderman Stevens, an ordinance relating to the appointment of and salaries of certain employees of the St. Louis Board of Election Commissioners pursuant to one one five point zero four five and one one five point zero four nine revised statutes of Missouri allocating certain other employees to agree with rate and including an emergency clause. The provisions of the sections contained in this ordinance shall be effective with the start of the first pay period following approval by the mayor. The following board bills were reported out of the streets, the street committee with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill one eighty, sponsored by Alderman Davis, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate above surface, surface, and subsurface rights or vehicle equation and pedestrian travel in the remaining seven zero two point zero six feet of the twenty-foot wide east-west alley in City Block three nine two eight, beginning two hundred and eighty feet east of Vander Vanda and continuing eastward to its terminus, saying being bound by West Pine, Spring, Le Cleed, and Vander Vanda in the city of St. Louis, Missouri, as herein after describing in accordance with the Charter Authority and then conforming with Section one four of Article twenty-one of the Charter and imposing certain conditions on such vacation. The following board bill was reported out of legislation with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill one eighty-one, sponsored by Alderman Oldenburg, and the following all the persons, Jeffrey Boyd, Davis, McCarroll, Calder, Pam Boyd, Mohammed, Oldenburg, Middlebrook, Clark Hubbard, and Ballmer. An ordinance submitting to the voters of the city of St. Louis a proposal to change Article four, section twenty-four of the city's charter in order to increase the maximum fine that be assessed for violations of ordinances regarding the preservation and protection of environmental conditions in the city for the prevention of harm to health, safety, and comfort of city residents or harm to private or public property such as the unauthorized dumping of waste or debris on private property or public property, prohibited refuse waste tire disposal and the like from five hundred to one thousand dollars and providing for election to be held for voting on the proposed charter change and the manner of voting thereat, and the publication, certification, deposit, and recording of this ordinance and contain an emergency clause. The following board bills were reported out of Transportation and Commerce Committee with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill one eighty-seven, sponsored by Alderman Con, an ordinance recommended by the Airport Commission and the Board of Estimate, Estimate and Apportionment pertaining to the process through which the city of St. Louis Airport Authority lets concessions contract at St. Louis Lambert International Airport contain the severability clause and contain an emergency clause. Board Bill one ninety-nine, sponsored by Alderman Calder, an ordinance amended ordinance number six seven four zero two, which ordinance relates to original lease agreement dated March eighteenth, two thousand and seven, to be extended in the second mutual option between the city of St. Louis, Missouri and Consolidated Grain and Borch Company, a Missouri corporation, contain the severability clause. Board Bill two zero four, sponsored by Alderman Middlebrook. An ordinance relating to ordinance number six seven two nine nine, which ordinance relates to an original lease agreement dated February the ninth, two thousand and seven, to be extended in the second mutual option between the city of St. Louis, Missouri and Aber, Aberacy Constructors, Inc., a Missouri corporation, authorizing the execution of a first amendment to lease agreement between the city and Lisi under certain, certain terms and conditions for a period of five years with one more five-year mutual option for land and mooring rights for one hundred and fifteen thousand, twenty dollars and one cent for the first year and increasing each year thereafter as set forth in the said First Amendment as attached here to as exhibit eight and contain the severability clause. Board Bill two zero five, sponsored by Alderman Middlebrook, an ordinance amending ordinance number seven one three eight seven, which ordinance relates to an original lease agreement dated December first, twenty-twenty-one between the city of St. Louis, Missouri and Grossman Century Company, formerly known as Grossman Iron and Steel Company, a Missouri corporation consenting to the assignment of said lease agreement to Advantage Metals Recycling LLC, a Delaware limited liability company, and contain the severability clause. The following board bills were reported out of public safety with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill one ninety-three, sponsored by Alderman Clark Hubbard, and the following all the persons, Tyus, Davis, Howard, Spencer, Pam Boyd, Bosley, Mohammed, Oldenburg, and Alderman Page. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Estimate and Apportionment, authorizing the fire chief on behalf of the city of St. Louis to enter into and execute an assistance to firefighters grant with the U.S. Department of Homeland Security, appropriating said funds and a required city match for said funds, and authorizing the fire chief to expend the appropriate funds by entering to contracts or otherwise for grant purposes and contain an emergency clause. Board Bill one ninety-five, sponsored by Alderman Bosley, and the following all the persons. Norrion, Gunther, Davis, Howard, Spencer, P. Boyd, Mohammed, Oldenburg, McCarroll, Clark Hubbard, and Page. An ordinance authorizing the Director of Department of Public Safety or Police Commissioner to enter into, execute, and administer on behalf of the city agreements in substantially the form attached as exhibit eight here to regarding reimbursement for the city for the cost of training for law enforcement positions with the city or who leave their city law enforcement position in a short period of time and contain the severability clause and it, and an emergency clause. Board Bill one ninety-eight, sponsored by Alderman Martin and Alderman Page. An ordinance to make it unlawful for an individual to operate an all-terrain, all-train, um, vehicle as defined here and, and any public right-of-way or public property in the city. Board Bill two zero one, sponsored by Alderman McCarroll, Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Page, and Alderman Howard. An ordinance amended section one of ordinance five seven eight three one pertaining to vehicle exhaust systems to specifically prohibit straight pipe exhaust systems. Board Bill two zero nine, sponsored by Alderman McCarroll, and ordinance accepting phase four, provider relief fund, and authorizing the fire commissioner on behalf of the city of St. Louis to enter into a grant agreement with the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services and to contract to, and to contract to expend such funds and contain an emergency clause. Board Bill two ten, sponsored by Alderman McCarroll, and ordinance authorizing the fire commissioner on behalf of the city of St. Louis to enter into a grant agreement with the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services and to contract to expend such funds and contain an emergency clause. That is the extent of second reading reported standing committees.
We will dispense with line item fourteen, perfection consent.
Board Bill one four seven, sponsored by Alderman Martin, an ordinance amending ordinance number six eight nine six three, which ordinance relates to original lease agreement dated October nineteenth, two thousand and eleven, to be extended in the second mutual option between the city of St. Louis, Missouri and the ACBL Transportation Services LLC, formerly known as ACL Transportation Services LLC, containing the severability clause. Board Bill one seventy-two, sponsored by Alderman Con, an ordinance recommended and approved by the Airport Commission and the Board of Estimate and Apportionment, amended ordinance number seven one two eight eight, approved on December fourth, twenty-twenty, and the air service incentive program for fiscal years two thousand and twenty-one through two thousand and twenty-three, as adopted by ordinance number seven one two eight eight, contain the severability clause and contain an emergency clause. Board Bill one seventy-three, sponsored by Alderman Con, an ordinance recommended and approved by the Airport Commission and the Controller and the Board of Estimate and Apportionment, making findings respecting the transfer of a maximum of thirteen million, seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars of excess monies that the city of St. Louis, the owner and operator of St. Louis Lambert International Airport intends to transfer from the debt service stabilization fund to the airport revenue fund during fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, containing the severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill one seventy-four, sponsored by Alderman Con. An ordinance recommended and approved by Airport Commission and the Board of Estimate and Apportionment, providing for the transfer of one million dollars that the city of St. Louis, the owner and operator of St. Louis Lambert International Airport intends to transfer from the airport development fund through the airport contingency fund into the airport revenue fund in order to fund the airport's air service initiative program for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one through fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, contain the severability clause and contain an emergency clause. Board Bill one eighty-six, sponsored by Alderman Con, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Estimate and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the issuance, establishment of terms, and negotiated sale of airport revenue refund, refunding bonds not to exceed twenty million dollars to effect the refunding of certain outstanding bonds, providing for the funding of any required debt service reserve funds and for the payment of cost of issuance, appointing a trustee, approving the form of an indenture, and authorizing the preparation, execution, and delivery of such documents and actions or as necessary or appropriate, repealing inconsistent prior ordinances provision, and contain the severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill one sixty-seven, sponsored by Alderman McCarroll, an ordinance establishing a two-way stop site at the intersection of McCaslin Avenue and Bancroft Avenue, regulating all traffic traveling northbound and southbound on McCaslin Avenue at Bancroft Avenue and contain an emergency clause. Board Bill one seventy-seven, sponsored by Alderman Davis, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate above surface, surface, and subsurface rights for vehicle equation and pedestrian travel in the remaining two zero five-foot irregular shaped portion of the twenty-foot wide east-west alley in City Block one nine six zero, beginning at Spring Avenue and continuing eastward to its terminus as herein after describing in accordance with Charter, Charter Authority and then conforming with Section one four of Article twenty-one of the Charter and imposing certain conditions on such vacation. Board Bill one sixty-five, sponsored by Alderman McCarroll, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Estimate and Apportionment and authorizing the police commissioner on behalf of the city of St. Louis to enter into and execute an agreement with the RTI International to extract all crime incident reports maintained by the Department for offenses occurring two thousand and fifteen through two thousand and twenty-three with specific data outlined in the contract and authorizing the police commissioner or his testing needs to enter into contracts and expend the funds to, to the extent received and contain a severability clause and an emergency clause. That's the extent of perfection consent calendar.
Alderman from the tenth, you recognize on the motion for the perfection consent count.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move that we adopt the perfection consent calendar.
Move, move by Alderman from the tenth, second about Alderman from the twenty-third. Uh, any discussion? It's been moved and seconded that we adopt our courtesy resolutions calendar. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose. Motion carries. Third reading, third reading can split. Board Bills for Perfection.
Board Bill one eighty-four, as amended, sponsored by Alderman Oldenburg, President Reed, Alderman Howard, Alderman Davis, Alderman McCarroll, Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Middlebrook, Alderman Boyd, and Alderman Evans. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Estimate and Apportionment, authorizing an appropriation consisting of funds received under the American Rescue Plan Act of twenty-twenty-one. Funds received into the city's capital fund pursuant to ordinance number six zero four one nine, as amended by ordinance number six one two five zero, representing one half of the operating balance of the general fund from the preceding fiscal year and revenues occurring to the public safety, public safety infrastructure account of the economic development, sales tax fund, all for the purposes of funding capital improvement totaling, totaling eighty-six million, nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars as herein after described, I'm sorry, as herein after detailed and contain an emergency clause.
Alderman from the sixteen, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill one eighty-four as amended.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move to perfect Board Bill one eighty-four as amended.
Move by Alderman from the sixteenth, entertain a second on that.
Second.
Second about Alderman from the fourteenth. Alderman from the sixteenth, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Uh, Board Bill one eighty-four as amended is a capital improvement spending plan. Uh, this bill seeks to spend about approximately eighty-six million dollars towards critical capital improvement. Uh, this bill seeks to spend about approximately eighty-six million dollars towards critical capital improvements uh, throughout the city. This is also a jobs bill. I think that's important to underscore. We can put a lot of people to work with these capital improvement projects that have been uh, long on the books for the city but uh, short on the capital to execute upon them. These are the recommendations of the city's capital committee, uh, panel that convenes uh, you know, every couple of months uh, to keep updated on the city's capital improvement plan. Board Bill one eighty-four, if you take a look at the exhibits uh, and the uses outlined there, you will see that um, that this we're utilizing about eighty per eighty percent of the total eighty-six million dollars uh, from the ARPA fund sources. So this is a tremendous opportunity that's afforded our city that we can utilize these in concert with the minuscule capital sources that are already in place and the needs that are much greater. So ARPA funds are saving the day here for the critical capital improvements. There are over four hundred and thirty million dollars worth of capital improvements that are needed to be made throughout our city. Uh, the capital committee in conjunction with engineers, experts, planners have have honed in on uh, three categories, right? The which which of those are critical? Uh, which of those are needed and which of those are desirable? A hundred and seventy-eight million of the four hundred and thirty million are critical. So that is they are, these investments are needed to be made so that city departments can execute on their daily operations and their jobs uh, to to ensure that services are being provided to residents and taxpayers. And uh, also public life, public safety and life safety is an important part of that critical category. So of this hundred and seventy-eight million uh, that's that's part of the critical capital structure. Um, we're going to be reinforcing bridges. We're going to be providing uh, uh, improvements that that ultimately lead to life safety aspects for for many of our, if not all of our residents. Uh, kind of just to to specifically put a, put a bow on this. This bill will pave twenty-four miles of city streets. We will reinforce and repair and or replace twenty percent of the city's bridges. Um, several of those bridges compromised or will be compromised if not, if not improved. We're going to light up the city. You all may be familiar with the the LED light conversions that's happening throughout the city. There are about twenty-one thousand light posts still remain those uh, uh, sodium streetlights. Uh, we're going to be able to replace all of those to the tune of four point two million dollars with this. That brings a real benefit not only from a public safety perspective, but from an operating cost view. Year over year, it's much cheaper to to have LED lights than than the sodium lights. Uh, we are going to improve all of the city's recreation centers and address uh, pools, uh, the city's pools that that are um, in in compromised situations as well. We're going to make improvements to various city buildings that are falling in disrepair, municipal buildings and others so that city employees as well as our first responders can have a adequate work environment. We're going to purchase about four hundred and five city vehicles. These are indoor pieces of equipment. This is non-police and non-fire equipment. We will also be purchasing several vehicles and equipment for the fire department and for the police department. That's that's sort of a backfill to a long overdue list of of uh, of those equipment needs. Um, I'm going to close with saying that you might hear the argument today that that sourcing capital improvements with with ARPA dollars um, is is not a good idea and I certainly respect that opinion and it doesn't fall on on deaf ears. Uh, I will, I will, I will address that in saying that federal government has released ARPA guidelines whereby they say that capital improvements um, is a particularly well-suited uh, source of the ARPA dollars and they warn us to be leery of creating new programs uh, and at coming up with expenses that aren't already on the books that we know how to execute on. Now, there may be some uh, aspects where we want to pursue that. But they warn us, they warn us to be uh, careful of creating something that has year over year operating expenses. We know, we know that investing in capital improvement projects, there's very little operation uh, expense year over year and it pays dividends five and ten years down the road and leads to economic development, uh, quite frankly. So, Mr. President, I'll certainly yield for any questions regarding uh, board bill one eighty-four.
All the one from the first.
Mr. President, members of the board, if the Alderman from the sixteenth would yield.
Alderman from the sixteenth, will you yield to the Alderwoman from the first?
Yes, sir, I will.
Alderwoman from the first, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. Alderman, so um, I've been talking to other Alderpeople and I'm not on uh, it's interesting, I'm the Chair of Streets but I'm not on the Capitol Committee. I am going to submit a bill to change that because that's interesting to me that we have all this stuff that refers to streets and to uh, bridges and all the things that's up under my committee, but I'm not on it. And I know how to change it because I was here when the actual committee was formed, so it needs to be changed. I remember when Dan McGuire changed and added the Ways and Means Chair to it, that didn't used to be on it. But one of the concerns I heard from some of the people who are on this committee is just what you said about what the ARPA funds should be used for and what they should not be used for. And so I guess my first concern or question to you is um, when I was approached about this problem, I went to look up. Well, if you're not going to use the ARPA funds for capital improvement, where where are we going to get this money from capital improvement? And as I understand it, we got another pot of funds that are coming along for capital improvement. Is that your understanding?
I think you might be referring and correct me if you're not uh, Alderwoman to the infrastructure uh, but federal infrastructure dollars that that we know are coming to communities throughout America. Yeah, I I mean, the the short answer to that is we do know that infrastructure funds are our federal infrastructure dollars are coming uh, to Saint Louis and to other communities. We do also know that those will be administered through the council of governments or uh, East West Gateway. So they they are not sort of at the direct fingertips of of uh, the city and the city's leaders. So often the capital improvement list and and the transportation and or any other infrastructure spending projects associated with that uh, does have to go through that board, uh, East West Gateway and and in often cases has to be utilized or matched with other federal dollars, so it's not as efficient. So I think the short answer is to, yeah, we 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 do know those dollars are coming but these are projects that we have the ability to move quickly on that we have designated and I think most people can agree on are in fact critical.
And is it your understanding if it goes through East West Gateway, then we still could get some of the funds for the city, but it'll be a harder process or more um, tedious processes that you're understanding?
That is my understanding. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and so um, then where do we get the funds? Because as of yet, we've had a big promise from this uh, person who's in room two hundred about North Saint Louis. Where is it in, do we get funds if we use these funds up, which I want capital improvements, although I do have a little problem about some of the things that you all left out. But uh, where do we then get the funds to do the many projects that have not been done in North Saint Louis over the twenty years are that we've had uh, the Slay administration, the Crew, Crusoe administration? If we use this money up, where do we get those funds from?
Great question, Alderwoman. Um, what I would say is that um, backing up, you remember board bill two uh, we passed about a hundred and twenty-two million dollars after the line item veto, after the line item vetoes of this ARPA relief, uh, these ARPA relief dollars.
I remember.
Yep, backing up even further from that, uh, the federal government is making uh, transfers, wire transfers uh, and advances of these proceeds in two tranches. So of the four hundred and ninety-eight million dollars in ARPA proceeds the city is getting, we've got half of that uh, in June and we appropriated a hundred and twenty-two million of that. So uh, after this appropriation of sixty-nine million, that's going to leave roughly thirty million dollars of of the remaining first tranche. Then in May or June of this year, we will receive the second tranche of that four hundred and ninety-eight million. So there will be another two hundred and forty-nine million dollars sitting in the city's escrow account, call it, May thirty-first um, or the first week in June. And I've made representations to not only my colleagues here on this board, but also overtures to the president's office and the mayor's office. And I think there's agreement that there needs to be a strategic target to uh, make improvements in uh, disinvested areas as well as uh, you know, how can we capitalize on the strengths that exist in North City and other areas uh, to improve not only, you know, capital improvements, um, but how do we generate economic development and holistic neighborhood revitalization?
About if we do some reparations?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, I think my answer is there's uh, two hundred and eighty, two hundred and eighty-five million more dollars um, to 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 that I think can can regenerate uh, the investments you're speaking about and 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 our colleagues are in in North City.
So I want to go back to what you said about board bill one, uh, board bill number two. Um, yeah, that's how long ago was that? How much of that money has been spent?
You know, I don't know the exact percentage of how much has been spent. I do know what's been reported on in the post-satch Alderwoman and it's it's about two or three percent of that. I do know the wheels of government move slow. You know that better than anyone, ma'am. You've been down here a long time and I'd certainly give respect to your opinion around uh, executing on that, that government can move slow. Uh, I will say the distinction here uh, with when you solely focus on capital improvements is the Board of Public Service, while they also have uh, the cog of of government and transparence need to work through. They have not lost a dime on executing on projects. They floated multiple general obligation bonds. They've administered revenue bonds uh, and haven't lost a dime. So I put my, I put my full faith and credit, uh, pardon the financial puns here in in the Board of Public Service to expeditiously get these projects moving because we know we've had them. We've been teed up for them. Uh, so the hope is they can move a little quicker than what in that board bill two's appropriations. We were making an immediate and almost emergency-like response to the negative impacts to COVID that it placed on a lot of our residents.
And it was immediate and negative and how mu- and we spent three million. And I remember that day I was at my mom's house because that was her birthday week, week and we did twelve hours of a meeting and we spent three million dollars is there about? And of that three million dollars, I get calls every single day saying, I haven't got a penny of that five hundred dollars. I take a whooping every single day about that, okay? And people saying to me, what is going on? Do I don't, maybe you don't hear that, but I do every day. So I'm concerned about that we spend this money and and you're talking about all this other money that's out there, but I don't see anything's doing. Now, I know how to do development. I I talk about all the time about this racist redistricting they did in my ward, but I had done fifty-two million dollars with the development. That's what I do, development. I know how to do that. I know how to build grocery stores, uh, schools. Uh, the things that all happened in North Saint Louis the first were me. I was doing them. I didn't do them in thirty years and this board, not you, but this esteemed board tore up my ward and stopped re- redevelopment. And so when you talk about that, I'm going to come back with a reparations package of how you give my money back because you that instead of stopping things that are uh, going well in North Saint Louis and tearing up things that are showing you this is what you're supposed to do. That board back there in two thousand and one did the most stupid ignorant thing I've ever heard of. You tear up what's positive. You're supposed to call that person and say, what are you doing over there? How you building schools and grocery stores and everything like that, not tear them up? So um, uh, it seems like, and what I found out doing my development is that um, former Alderperson from the twentieth and the nineteenth used to call me when I did development. And they would say, Sharon, you're doing such a good job. How are you doing that? And I said, you know, Sterling, I've been doing this for a long time, so we just put our heads down and we know a lot of people. My husband knew people. He's got his master's in urban affairs, so he knew how to call the people that he went to school with and who you know a lot of times in development makes a lot. And what I was told by the former nineteenth and twentieth ward Aldermen, which were the Roberts Brothers, is that they were told by banks and people like that that you could not do development in North Saint Louis. And so when I started doing development in North Saint Louis and building all this stuff up, I, you know, and I had run against the Roberts. They start clapping their hands and saying, wow, you're showing that this can be done. But here it is twenty-five years later, all of that stopped. That didn't happen. We had twenty years of white mayors who didn't think it was a good idea to do, idea to do development. People then blamed black Aldermen like we don't want it. We're not in charge of that money. Because if if they wouldn't have tore my ward up, Natural Bridge would have been done, King's Highway is mostly done. Union would have been done. I don't need anything for you to put a little money there and we'll get it done. So when you tell me, well, we got this money sitting here, but I'm looking at, I'm maybe thinking this is the uh, Francis Slay did four terms, Lydah Crusoe was his fifth term. Maybe this is the sixth term of Francis Slay because I don't see anything getting done in North Saint Louis except for promises. And so then when I look at this um, this bill here that you have about ARPA, I've been here long enough to know that you don't know this, but Joanne Wayne used to be the first ward Alderperson when I came down because I was the twentieth ward. And so Joanne Wayne actually had to s- put a kind of a strike or sit across the Union Bridge because all these bridges were getting done in all parts of the city except for North Saint Louis. And so when she actually said, she brought people out and they 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 uh, stood at the Union Bridge and wouldn't let people cross before that she could get money to uh, get the Union Bridge done. So when I see these bridges, you all, I I always wish that when people put this stuff out here that they would ask for a history of how much money has been spent where, because everybody thinks, well, yeah, these bridges need to be done, but that, but I see streets that need to be paved, but I don't see Goodfellow. The Alderman from the twenty-second ward, I'm in your business, but I know how long Goodfellow is and the money that needs to be put on that, that that's not in here. So to me, you would be taking one of these bridges off and putting Goodfellow there because we don't get that money. And when you, and I am going to make them now, give me the money of how much money has been spent on bridges in this city since I came here and I probably can pull them up. And mo- all but, let's see, they fixed the King's Highway Bridge, they fixed the Union Bridge in North Saint Louis. And I want to say another, maybe three bridges. I think the little one that goes over Natural Bridge uh, up in the twenty-second ward, they may have fixed. That's it. But they haven't fixed anything else and they keep saying, but we need this. And we also have needs in our community too. So um, when I see Goodfellow not on this list of things to do, that makes me really feel like that uh, somebody is playing around with a fairness of North Saint Louis, okay? And about how the money should be spent and that you all are pushing ahead, what you want done in certain areas of town at the expense of others. So to me, you should be taking some of that money off the bridges and looking at some more streets to be fixed. Also, I want you to know I'm going to come back to get my oh, ten plus million dollars that you stole from the twentieth ward when you picked up my ward and moved it because I will be looking for reparations. So I just want to make sure where I'm going to get this money from because I got a precedent over all this stuff that's right here. Because when we finish hearing about the redistricting and the legality of it and I'm going to come back here in April and ask us to have a real hearing about what happened. So you can see how racist and ugly this stuff was and how you took people's votes and how really you is about stealing the money. Ward capital, ten million dollars out of North Saint Louis. Now you guys come in here and you're like, oh, well, we got these bridges. I don't see not one bridge in North Saint Louis here. I see Compton over Mill, Compton over Mill Creek, Lindo and Union, Lindaway U- Union and for the MetroLink Bridge repairs, nothing in North Saint Louis. But then I go over here to uh, streets and so you look like you're being fair, Union in right to Florissant, that goes right through my ward, King's Highway goes right through my ward, Bravestor Florissant. Um, but you could have had a couple X more streets in North Saint Louis to try to balance out the cost of bridges. Um, so that makes me sad. I do want to see forestry get things. In fact, I actually called Alan um, in forestry and asked him for a dream list of what he wanted. Um, because if we can't hire enough people, we ought to get machines and things that do the business that are more than one people, person rather. And one of the things he gave me, he gave me a list and 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 actually sent me pictures of things that he needed, um, which I tried to talk to Nancy Cross in the mayor's office uh, about these are things that you need, especially like there's a machine that you use to uh, cut back trees and it costs like five hundred thousand dollars, but if you're not going to have enough people, then you still need those trees. And that actually for me was more for South Saint Louis than North Saint Louis. I'm one of the few North Saint Louis wards. I have a lot of trees. I've planted probably six thousand trees in my career because I'm a tree hugger. But a lot of South Saint Louis and Central Quarter have uh, trees that need to be cut back and they're falling on people's cars. And what I'm asking you, I was asking for fairness to South Saint Louis. I want you all to be a little bit more fair in how you distribute that money. When you look at how much these bridges are and then you look at this uh, uh, these streets, it's not a fair distribution. And maybe, and again, you don't know the history that I do, but those bridges is a, that's a red flag for me because for uh, Alderwoman to have to actually sit across a bridge to get a bridge fixed in North Saint Louis. I actually came down to the city of Saint Louis when I got elected. It was about, I'm going to get King's Highway paved. And if you go back there, they wrote a big article because for twenty something years they would not pave my part of King's Highway and I had lived in South Saint Louis. I had lived in the Central Quarter. I lived all around King's Highway on all ends of King's Highway. And I had to actually come down and actually fight for and five or six, seven years to get King's Highway paved and redone. Um, because uh, And five or six, seven years to get King's Highway paved and redone, um, because uh the mayors wouldn't do it. And that was Conway and Shamo. And so finally, uh, when Bosley got in, he had promised that we got it paved, but it was a big deal. Because we, we hadn't gotten it done. So when I looked at leaving out Goodfellow, that's a major. Uh, mistake to me. I don't, you know, that's just a major mistake. I'm glad for King's Highway. I'm glad for Grand. But you should have taken one of them bridges out and done Good, Goodfellow because it's such a major wide area. And I'm not talking, when you start from Natural Bridge until you go to the city limits, that's just a mistake for me for that not to be in here. Um, and I wanted to ask about what you said about the money going through East-West Gateway. So um, I am not a trolley fan. I'm especially not a trolley fan. Because I am the only alderperson still here in which um metro. It was by state then came and lied to my face and promised that we were gonna get a north-south distributor. Okay, and we allowed them to build the first links in the central quarter. And at this time, you need to know, when we were doing met- by-state MetroLink then, Clayton didn't want it. Uh, the people out in uh Ch- Charles didn't want it because they said people from the city would come and get on. And I, I mean, just ignorant stuff. We get on uh MetroLink and come and steal their TVs, okay? So, but, so every time I see any money spent that's not in North St. Louis on Natural Bridge, because. I trusted them. I was new and young and we voted for that and they swore up and down. I was removed for ten years un- unceremoniously. When I came back in thirteen, I started raising the issue again. Francis Lay tweeted out, she's right. Because I'm like, what happened to the north-south distributor? We had meetings at Lexington School. The whole time, we picked the north route. The south's route, they got into argument, but all of it was supposed to connect up. So when I see fifty, sixty, seventy million dollars on a trolley car. Um, that is just to me so arrogant. And so I'm above everybody else. Because why couldn't we just have taken one of those trolley cars that you use to tear, to put the bus people around? And then now, well, we're gonna go back and we're gonna let them put some more money into that. And you haven't done anything in North St. Louis. Uh, there's parts of South St. Louis up in Shrewsbury, some parts that have any, that have something. We have nothing, not one link. And we uh actually picked the cheapest route because we were gonna be up above ground, okay? So when you start telling me, we're gonna get this money to uh East-West Gateway, and then what are they gonna do with it? Is that gonna be part of the money they use for the trolley? Is that something you understand?
I, I, I don't think so. I think, I think the trolley at it, at its, at it, as, as we sit here currently. Um, is, is self-funded uh, uh, through operations. I think the problem is. No, no, I, I mean, there's a funding mechanism, rather, Alderman. Your, your point's well taken. There's a funding mechanism. I think the, the issue was a breakdown in the operations and the management. Now that, that by-state is i- in, in uh, you know, agreeing to step up and manage it. I think that, that will bring that circus uh back into at least a, a professional operation. Uh, but I share your sentiments with, with the, with the Loop Trolley Project. I also, Alderman, for the record, and, and I mean this sincerely, I, I, I agree with you one hundred percent about the slowness of the funds. Uh, that there's no excuse for that. Um, and I, I, I assure you that I, I plan to work with you and other alderwomen in this next round of. Of funding to, to ensure that there's a, a bona fide plan for North City investment and to build up areas of North City. And, you know, I, I also will say, I acknowledge and think it's a darn good idea that the uh Chairman of Streets. Uh, be on the Capitol Committee. I, I think that makes perfect sense. Uh, a- and, and that, that's where we, we could have heard uh advocating for Goodfellow. Um, you know, I, we take a lot of these representations from the experts that, that these are the most critical and the priority. And we don't often hear from, from um folks who maybe drive the darn road every day. So I would support, I would support that, that change to put the Streets Chairman on, on the Capitol Committee as well, Alderman.
Okay, and, 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 and again, like I said, I don't not want the whole city to prosper. I do. That's why I'm so irritated and still talk twenty years about redistricting. Because when you have something. And so just to make you understand that they used to compare the sixteenth ward and the twentieth ward. They would say, those are silk stocking wards. So if I came into the sixteenth ward and tore it up and you were doing, you would still be furious now. That's how I feel. And until this city puts it back and puts all my money back, that's gonna be a problem with me. Um, and when I look at the uh trolley, I look at Joe Edwards, Francis Lay, Lyda Crusen. That uh not for, whatever, there are, what is it, a, that a committee that they got set up? That's who all thought that was a good idea. That's who should be paying for it. We should really get rid of Francis's and Lyda's uh pension or anything else. Because they should be paying for it. Because I think it's such a negative, wrong thinking. Uh, long-term, when the mayors can go in, and Francis was there, Lyda wasn't, but Francis used to sit. I think you, right where you sit when we voted on MetroLink. So for him to then come in and work with Lyda and to put that kind of money. In um, uh, in, in, in a trolley car. That's like saying one p- part of town, oh, we're drinking caviar and champagne, and the rest of the city. To hell with North and South St. Louis, okay? And um, I begged for years, I used to beg the South Side Aldermen, stop letting the Central Quarter split North and South St. Louis up. We're the majority. And if we ever stop doing that, then we ought to get more things. Because I'm not even arguing against South St. Louis. I don't think you guys get as much stuff as you should get because we were so concentrated on building downtown. There was no downtown neighborhood when I got elected. That's why we put billions of dollars over there and billions of dollars in the Central Quarter. And now we say, well, we just gotta keep doing that because they need it. Instead of saying, shut it all down, you guys have gotten more than your share. And it's time for North and South St. Louis to get things. And so um. Uh, it just pains me to look at this kind of money and then I hear about three million dollars, which is really was a citywide. That five hundred fa- dollars that were given to people, that's not even a North St. Louis initiative. That's a citywide. And then they did it so. I don't want to say the word stupid. I want to say not smart because uh, because they then took the money. And they put it on the internet. A lot of people older and low income don't have internet, don't have access. So you're doing that and then you don't do paper applications. So then you, uh, when you found out that people were complaining, you go over to Forest Park Community College. And so then people say, well, that's too far for me. And the mayor's office staff said, well, the people in North St. Louis can just, uh, this is gonna be funny to you. They can get on MetroLink and ride over to Forest Park. Uh, duh, we don't have MetroLink to go over to Forest Park, okay? So that's how in, not in tone, the progressives who work in the mayor's office are. And they're just living in their own little head. And they don't even understand. So they finally then said, okay, we're gonna go down to some libraries in South St. Louis and North St. Louis. We're gonna go to Woe's Center and we're gonna take applications. Again, I kept saying, please do paper application. Because when you don't, you got all these older people, a lot of people, people standing in line. They did, they said, we're gonna be here this day, this day, di- this day. They then turned around, did it to twelve o'clock one day. Then cut it off because they said, oh, we had too many people applying. But you had already told people you were gonna be here doing this. This day and this day. Much smarter way would have been to take all your applications, listen to some people when you said. Oh, do some paper applications, because then you could have done a paper, paper application, have the people apply. And also put all the things that they're supposed to have. You would have had a little sheet of paper in there saying, this is what you need. And then they could have brought it back and mailed it in. And then you could have come back to the Board of Aldermen and said, this program is so popular. Can we get a little bit more money for this program? But I'm, again, just to cut it off. And to tell people who don't have MetroLink, you can get on MetroLink or to uh promise to keep it open for a certain amount of days. So you really cut out a lot of the people who di- who needed to get access but didn't have it. We could have gone to senior buildings. So when I look at that five million dollars that's been spent, I think that is a, not a D, F minus. In the way it was handled, I want to say, and also giving it to, who did they get, what, whoever the organization that they gave it to was not equipped to handle it. So I, I guess I'm just irritated to look at all this kind of money that's going here. And then everybody all have all these uh, things about what could be done in North St. Louis. And nobody's doing a dag gum thing, okay? And it's not because people don't know how to. It's because incompetent people who work for the mayor. Office who think they know how to do things better than people who know how to do it. And then um. I'm irritated because I feel like that I am um, I'm, I'm. Kind of speaking against a bill that I'm really not against. I'm against that. We're not getting our money that we're supposed to, okay? We haven't had anything done. And the mayor's office is, has been there now for almost a year. And a lot of things that could have been done, like the, the previous mayor okayed me to finish my hardware store, which should have been done twenty years ago. A year later, nothing has been done. So I just don't get. So you guys are pu- doing this money, you think it's gonna get be done, but if it gets done, then I'm really gonna be irritated. Because if it can get done in one part of the administration, then it ought to be able to get done in all parts of the administration. Um, so um, the, I, I'm gonna put a twenty-two million dollar bike path down Tucker. My, my phone just rang off the hook when the people heard that. They were like, really? Is that really a priority? Not that I'm against a bike path, but is that a really priority, a bike path down Tucker? Um, I really can't think of a lot of other things that should be happening with the money. So I'm gonna vote present. I was gonna vote no. I'm really not opposed to money being in all parts of the city. I'm opposed to a fairness of how allocations have been. That's what I'm opposed to. And I'm opposed to a group of people who don't know what they are doing and won't listen to anybody. And then run out behind this, which first I heard they were not for, now I'm hearing they're for, so. Um, and you all know, I was a big supporter of the mayor and I'm a big disappointed person now. That's what I want to tell you. Um, I'm very disappointed. I'm disappointed in how the whole process is working. When I heard all that money that was coming into this city. And I'd heard about being fair and addressing some of the past inequities because. The reason why we can talk about this, all you gotta do is go pull the block rent money, see how it was spent. Look at the monies, how it was spent. It was not spent fairly. You go pull the block rent money. We got applications that said, oh, these are the horrible problems in North St. Louis. But let us spend that block rent mainly downtown and in the central quarter. If you did that, you're a banker. If we apply for housing money for a house to fix up. And then I fixed it up at the house next door, I would go to jail for fraud. And this city ought to be ashamed of themselves. And this mayor just hired a person who's supposed to be the, I guess, the, the diversity equity person. And he says she's gonna use um. Data. I am a data person. I do pull stuff because I've been around. I know where to look for it. It's real easy to pull the data. And to know that we should have been for a year now, at least six months, working on projects for North St. Louis that are not happening. So I don't not wish that the other parts of town don't get money. I just think that it's very unfair what's going on with North St. Louis. And I'm starting to think this is the sixth term of Francis. And I know Francis did it on purpose because he came to my uh. Groundbreaking for the Snooks Plaza and said, Sharon, you're doing all this development over here. So he knew what he was doing. And recently just told somebody, well, Sharon Tyas could have made a deal. I don't have to make a deal about my votes, Francis Lay. I want you to hear that. I have a right to have voted in two thousand and three. So you violated my voting rights. You violated half of my ward to try to punish me. That is illegal under our charter and is illegal under the Voting Rights Act. And when we get you and drag you into uh subpoena you back over here to the Board of Aldermen for you to talk about. That and you feel as young about the racism that happened down here and the money that you all stole. See, you didn't expect that I would be back here talking about yet this, but here I am back. But you should have expected, because when I left in two thousand and three, I told everybody, I'll be back, because you can't make me uh capitulate to you. By using that you gonna steal my ward. Racism does not make me capitulate to you. Uh, violating the law when you the mayor and then saying things like Sharon Tyas didn't get along with anybody. I got the highest vote of return in two thousand and one of all but one person. I wore my election by fourteen, sixteen hundred votes. Yeah, I got along with the people I needed to and I was building stuff. I had done fifty million dollars worth of development. And since that, all ignorant stuff happened, we haven't got anything, but I did build a new credit union. But we haven't got anything done because Francis was the mayor and Lyda was the mayor. And they never, ever said, let's try to make this a fair city. And so when people blame Alderman about this stuff, it's really the mayors. We don't control these development uh people. That's the mayors. So when all these people say, oh, black aldermen didn't do anything, and for all you people, Shane Cohen, talking about how we only got so many people left. In North St. Louis, there's a reason for that. Because when you don't get services, you don't get fairness. People, black people are not stupid. They leave and go places. And why you got that big black population in, in South St. Louis? Is because the poor black people moved to South St. Louis, to parts of Southeast St. Louis, because they needed to go to the Walgreens and the stores. The wealthier black people live, moved out to North County or West County or someplace. And then it's people like me, working middle class. We stayed here. But at a great expense to ourselves. And so I wish that when people start criticizing what happens in North St. Louis, they would say. And shame on the people who were the mayors at that time, because we should not be having conversations about. There's no hardware in North St. Louis store. There's no restaurant. That's all because of the racism of Francis Lay. Sixteen years and other people. And I want to give a shout out to Vince Shamo. Because when I got elected and I came and said I wanted to get a grocery store, within three months of me saying that Vince Shamo put four million dollars up. To buy.
Point of order.
Of, you could.
This is not germane to the bill at all.
Everybody, hold up, everybody, hold on. Uh, Alderwoman from the eleventh, please state your point of order.
We are talking about previous administrations. We are, the bill that is in front of us is, has to deal with a current mayoral administration. And has to deal with current priorities, not what happened ten, twenty years ago. Thank you.
All right, um, I, I think what the Alderwoman from the first was doing is she's talking about how. That history impacts uh this bill. So uh, so I think that that actually is in order. She has not veered off of that path and, and explaining why uh she has reservations about this today. Based on um how uh spending has happened in the past and how that impacts things moving forward. Alderman from the first, please.
I wish, thank you, Mr. President. I wish I didn't have to talk about this. I wish that it had been fair. But again, I want to give a shout out to Vince Shamo, because when I was a new alderperson and I said I wanted the grocery store, we hadn't had one built in North St. Louis in thirty years. He put four million dollars within a three or four months and we bought the very spot that the Snooks is on. Clarence Harmon came in, put millions of dollars on Natural Bridge. We have a, that, a shout out to him. But the person that, the people that have come after that, shame on them. That would be Francis, Lyda, and now Deshaun Jones if she doesn't get anything done. So again, I am not opposed to the whole city being built. I'm opposed to when I see things like bike paths. But we got all these vacant buildings that are not being torn down, or we don't have the fairness about uh streets getting paved. You know, that's what I'm opposed to. So I am gonna vote present. And I hope that we do get the correct ARPA, ARPA funds so that we're building something. I hope this time next year, we're doing, we're building something. That we get something done. And that only happens when we have somebody in the mayor's office who's a can-do person. So both Vince and Clarence Harmon, for all you people think it was Freeman, it was not. It was Clarence Harmon. That stuff that we have on Natural Bridge, that was Clarence Harmon, not Vince Freeman Bosley. Clarence Harmon came in here, he finished things, and if you would go and meet with him, he would say, what do you need? And put the money, and he understood the need to be fair. So he gets a really bad reputation when it's really not fair. And Vince Shamo gets the shout out from me that he didn't fu- feel like, oh, well, that can't be done in North St. Louis. And that's what we have to have, is people who believe in our city, our entire city. So again, I am not opposed to uh capital improvements. I'm opposed to just the unfairness of how dollars have been spent. And I have been sitting down here the whole time. And I'm so glad that the eleventh ward can have something to say about it, because I just saw that they're gonna tear down a whole row of. I think things in Crandale. Boy, if you could just go through North St. Louis and looks at the places where people have to live. Next door to vacant properties, on both sides, and the property should go down. I actually know where those properties are. And so we can tear that down, but we can't tear down all these raggedy properties. And we actually lost a fireman because we couldn't tear this properties down. So yes, I am irritated. And I'm gonna be quiet now and say, I will not be voting for this, but it's not anti-South St. Louis and anti-anyplace else. It is uh pro-North St. Louis. And I'm not voting for anything until I see some things, something come out of the ground in North St. Louis. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman from first. Uh, Alderman from the twenty-fourth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Um, I, I would like to just say that I, I understand the uh point of the uh. Alderwoman from the first, uh, those points are certainly well-taken. Uh, the way that we fund this city, uh, you know, twenty-eight. Parcels at a time doesn't always make sense to me, uh, particularly on larger projects. Um, that being said, I would like to thank the Alderman from the sixteenth for his work on this. I know that it's been a, a heavy lift. Um, anytime that you are doling out, you know, close to eighty-seven million dollars. Uh, we're certainly gonna have some substantial. uh, we're certainly gonna have some substantial disagreements on where those funds should go. Um, I, I think it's important to note that some of this, uh, funding is, is also just simply kind of backfilling lost, uh, revenue. Uh, we, we had a year plus where we had virtually nothing coming in from, you know, Blues games, Cardinals games, uh, people weren't downtown in restaurants. They weren't going out. Um, you know, we, we, we lost a ton of revenue to fund the, the basic necessities that we need. We need to be able to, uh, have, you know, police cars that aren't breaking down. We need to have, you know, refuse, uh, uh, working. Um, and this, these, close to eighty-seven million dollars goes to backfill a lot of that, uh, that we have been doing without right now. So, uh, it's, it's far from perfect, certainly. Uh, I, 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 I imagine that the Alderman from the sixteenth would tell you that it's far from perfect. But it, it is a, a working, uh, a working bill. And, you know, it's, it's the sausage making, it's the meat grinding. I know that, uh, the Alderman reached out to, to me at least to see, uh, you know, where I was at with things. And my understanding is that he did that with, with a lot of other people to try and get as much buy-in as he could on this. Uh, and I, I do respect that. Uh, so I will be supportive of this. And with that, I would ask that my name also be added to this bill. Thank you.
Madam, uh, thank you, Alderman from twenty-four. Madam Clerk, please make note of that and add Alderman from the twenty-fourth, uh, as one of the co-sponsors.
Don't note it.
Alderman from the fourteenth.
Will the Alderman from the sixteenth yield for questions?
Alderman from the sixteenth will yield a question to the Alderman from the fourteenth.
I will.
Alderman from the fourteenth, please proceed.
I want to also commend you on the work you've put in on this. And, and I, I do believe that as we move forward on some of these ARPA funds that, you know, the city as a whole needs to move forward, not north side, south side. We don't need to be cannibalizing ourselves and, and not working together. I'm, I'm glad to see that we're working on the PSAP, renovating our, our emergency response. I also am pleased to see the City Justice Center in there. And I know some of that funding was already allocated, but a question I have for you is that, um, when you talk about the Capitol Committee, is this, were included in this committee, were those people that we were asked to designate citizens, um, to be part of the Capitol Committee was, is that where this, part of this comes from?
Yeah, that, that's a great point and probably something I should have highlighted, um, uh, when first recognized on this board, but Alderwoman. Correct, if you recall, uh, it was an initiative of, uh, the mayor's office and others to put together a citizen advisory committee in to help guide and counsel the Capitol Committee, uh, which is made up of city employees, um, and representatives. And each, I believe each ward, uh, had the opportunity to submit two, uh, citizens and residents to be the advisory council, uh, on this. And they actually ranked and scored each, uh, line item that you see on here. And if you go to your Google Drive, that, that survey, uh, and the results of, of their ranking, uh, is, is in, is in the Google Drive too. And, and it's worth noting that all of the uses in the exhibit here that are line item, uh, all received, uh, a six or more, meaning that, uh, one would be a use that they didn't deem appropriate or view as important, ten being the highest. So I would gauge that as a proper barometer for, uh, you know, a good sample of what a lot of residents want to see get done or how they prioritize, uh, ARPA funding, uh, specifically for this use of capital improvements. I appreciate you bringing that point up.
Also, I'd just like to say that, um, uh, being in office for ten years, I had never been asked to have anybody appointed to a committee on capital spending, and I had to inquire about that. And I don't know if the Alderman, Alderwoman from the first, she's been around quite a long time. I don't know if she ever experienced that or not. But I was told the reason it was never done, uh, you know, in my tenure was because they never had the amount of funds that they were always playing catch-up in the past. So I was proud to, uh, you know, find two people that were willing to serve on that committee and, uh, have their input. And they were, they were, they knew it was a lot of work, but they, they did follow through and they didn't get their say, they were heard. So, um, with that said, I'd like just to, um, for people to know that I think it's very important that there were citizens involved in these decisions. So thank you very much, Mr. Alder, Alderman Oldenburg for your work on this. And I will support this. And I'm of course cosponsor also. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman from the fourteenth. Alderman from the eighteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Alderman from the sixteenth, will you yield to a question?
Alderman from the sixteenth will yield a question to Alderman from the eighteen.
I will.
Sixteenth, uh, are, is there any money in the bill to, uh, board, board up windows on all floors and cook windows and vacant buildings in the, in the city, throughout the city, to make them safer for, like we just had that fire person's accident?
Uh, I'm sorry, what, what's the question? Is there, is there money in here?
Is there money in the bill to board up when, board up windows and doors on all floors?
Uh, I, you know, Alderman, there are not any specific, there's no specific, um, use in here for vacant buildings. These are, these are all, uh, current capital assets that are in operation, uh, in the city. And I just want to make sure I have that right, because I'm going to the master capital inventory list here to ensure that. But I believe, I think the thought or the convention around that is that there are other programs that help, uh, that, that source or fund, uh, vacant building and, and board up. And I would certainly, uh, uh, agree with you that, that, that maybe we need more. Um, but yes, as I'm looking here at municipal buildings, so that wouldn't, that wouldn't necessarily include, uh, LRA property or, or, uh, private property that's abandoned vacant, either in the city hand or otherwise.
Uh, thank you, uh, Alderman from the sixteenth. Thank you, sir.
All right, um, Alderwoman from the thirteen.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I would like to, uh, also say that I'll be supporting this. The Capitol Committee that put together the recommendations, all of those meetings were open to the public and could be viewed. And there was a transparent process that came up with these recommendations, which I think is incredibly important. Uh, I think that we should absolutely be using ARPA funds for some of these infrastructure improvements. One of the things I hear more often than anything else is how much we need to improve our roads and the condition of our roads. Uh, and so I think this is a, a wonderful way to spend this money, and I appreciate the Alderman from the sixteenth putting this together. Thank you.
Great. All right, thank you. Uh, Alder, Alderman from the twenty-second.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Um, I have some challenges with, um, use, the use of the ARPA funds currently. I'm totally in support of capital improvements, and I certainly want to appreciate all the members that participated in all the, the Capitol Committee. Um, certainly, you know, we're way behind. I've sat on the Capitol Committee years ago as a member of Ways and Means. Um, but when we think about trying to right some wrongs, I don't think our priority is in the right order. Um, certainly the money that's coming from, uh, the transportation funds, you know, it's gonna be a competitive process. We don't know how much of that we would get. Um, currently, um, we're gonna ask the taxpayers in April to approve a fifty-million-dollar capital bond. Um, so I don't know why we can't just wait until, wait and see what happens after that. Um, I'm of the mindset, like I said, in Ways and Means, a bird in a hand is better than torn a bush. Because we get promises, 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 promises all the time. If the administration changes, the promise is out the window. People get amnesia about what they promised, just to get your vote. You know, once that vote is taken, it is what it is. Um, I'm just gonna do a roll call on the expenses, just for, you know, the public and understand, you know, what we're talking about. Um, so in Exhibit A of the ARPA funds, we're looking at spending sixty-nine million, five hundred and eighty thousand. Of that, the LED, LED light conversion is four million, two hundred. Refuge trash task force cameras a million. The pave union from interactive florists is one point, one million, one hundred and seventy thousand. Grand Holly Hills to Hall Street paving is three million, one hundred and twenty thousand. King's Highway Grabway to Florist, it should be West Forest, I believe, uh, three million, two hundred and fifty thousand. Jefferson Chipwire, DeShoto is one million, forty thousand. Then we have just bridge repairs, uh, for two million, eight hundred thousand. Parks, Recreation and Forestry, Recreation Center boiler replacements, anywhere from twelve to thirty of them, one million, nine hundred and forty-four thousand. Pool renovations, anywhere from one to seven, one million. Recreation Center roof replacement, two point five million. Tree removal for hazardous and safety purposes, one point one million. Fire Department Bridges and Equipment Firehouse Roof Replacement, one point five million. Uh, hmm, Maglin Grip Exhaust System upgrades, two hundred thousand, ambulance replacements, about eight of them. Two million, two hundred and forty thousand, van replacement, thirty-eight thousand, fire pump replacements, eight million, one hundred thousand. Quint one twenty-five feet replacements, two of them at two million, eight hundred and forty thousand. Quint seventy-five feet replacement, one, one million, two hundred and seven thousand. Police Department Headquarters Elevator, three of them, two million dollars. The Academy Stone Posada Tuck Twenty, two hundred thousand. Vehicles, half of the inventory, three million, four hundred and twenty thousand. Say, uh, say Mashwell Police Foundation is a million, so we're gonna match one hundred and fifty thousand of that. Um, corrections and other public safety. Now mind you, I think we just allocated about four or five million dollars not long ago for the Justice Center. But now we're gonna add four million, seven hundred and fifty thousand, public safety answering point. P, PSAP for the nine-one-one system, I guess that stands for, two point, two million, two hundred thousand. Municipal Buildings and Equipment, Corner Hand Courthouse Air Hammers, one million, six hundred and fifty thousand. Juvenile Court Plumbing Upgrades, three hundred thousand. Medical Examiners, Best Disabatement, seventy-five thousand. Missile Lane O-Pay, City Hall Fire Alarm System, one point seven million. Municipal Garage Repair, six hundred thousand. Central Industrial Roof Repair, six hundred thousand. Telecom System Replacement, two point five million. City Behaviors Refuge, Streets, Forests, Parks and Other, nine million, eighty-six thousand. Refuge Trucks in lieu of lease purchase, fiscal twenty-two, lease purchase, one point one million. So that's a total of sixty-nine million, five hundred and eighty thousand of just the ARPA funds. And then we go to the Capital Fund. Uh, before I recite this, just to be clear, with Alderman from the sixteenth, you'll?
Alderman from the sixteenth will yield a question to Alderman from the twenty-second.
Well.
Uh, thank you, Alderman. Just to be clear, where it says Capital Fund and then one-half surplus, what exactly do that mean?
You're in Exhibit A, Alderman?
Yes, sir.
Yes, Fund Twelve Seventeen, Capital Fund, Half-Cent Surplus. So by ordinance, uh, when there is a surplus in the city's budget, uh, half of it goes to, uh, fund capital improvements.
Is that the only way we fund capital improvements?
It is not, is not. Uh, you'll also see there that, uh, the next column over, the Fund Eleven Twenty-four is the EcoDevo Sales Tax. Uh, that's a half-cent sales tax whereby ten percent via ordinance, uh, was passed by the, uh, voters of City St. Louis, ten percent of that sales tax captured also goes to fund capital improvements.
Are there any other funds that go directly to capital?
There are. Alderman, uh, if you go to the, um, I will tell you though, but just so you can go check it out yourself, you go to the, uh, City of St. Louis's website under the Budget Division, uh, one of the most transparent offices in City Hall, every, every darn document Mr. Payne and his team have up there. Uh, you will see a capital improvement. There's a Capital Committee tab, then there's Capital Improvements. Um, you will see the plan, and then it, it outlines every source that can go towards capital improvements. It's not a whole heck of a lot. Um, I have it here, hang on. Uh, a little bit of gaming, about, uh, two or three, four million dollars a year from gaming revenue goes there. Uh, there is some additional, uh, costs that go to that. Uh, and the, the issue though is with, with those, with those sources, is that what we've done is we've been smartly, from a financial product, uh, standpoint, uh, we've, we've capitalized those in the sense of financing and debt, right? So we've turned it, we've turned those revenue streams into debt instruments so that we could do capital improvements in a more meaningful way. So now when those sources come in, uh, we pay debt service, and there's very, very little left over to, to do of cash, if you will, to do capital improvements.
Uh, sure, and I, I certainly support that strategy. How, but how much excess do we have over that we could spend because it's not pledged to debt?
Yeah, I believe it's, uh, less than fifty percent of what, um, what comes in.
Just a rough number.
Yep, hang on. I don't want to do a rough number. I want to be accurate with you, my friend. So give it about, give or take, uh, thirty million a year comes in for capital improvements. Uh, half of that is pledged to debt service.
Okay, so that mean we have fifteen million to play with? And has, and has that fifteen million been pledged already?
Uh, it is, yes. Some of that went, uh, we did an appropriation from the Capitol Committee. Uh, I want to say you, last session maybe, or even the session before that where, uh, no, last session, I believe, where, uh, a good amount of that was pledged.
Right, but we're in a new fiscal year, Alderman.
Yeah, hang on, hang on. Yes. I believe most of that fifteen million has been pledged, uh, Alderman.
Okay, I can follow up with that later. Uh, so, um, this next column is basically what you said is, um, at the end of the year, because the city didn't, couldn't hire enough people, didn't spend enough money, we had, we had excess revenue that we call surplus. And so what we've done is we'd say, okay, half of that surplus goes to capital and the other half goes to, um, um, drawn a rev's reserve, right?
Yes.
Okay, so this is the, the half, uh, of the surplus because we didn't spend it all. So in that column, we have Tucker Cycle Track, three hundred thousand. Lindo and Union, Overpass, uh, Forest Park Parkway. Uh, wait a minute, Compton over Mill Creek, four million. Lindo and Union over Forest Park Parkway, one point eight million. Lindo and Union over MetroLink, one point eight million. Okay, and then we have more money for the Justice Center, seven million, seven hundred and fifty thousand. Then we have miscellaneous repairs, seven hundred and fifty thousand. And that gives us a total of sixteen million, four hundred thousand of, um, that surplus money that we were having in the bank. Then we have the Economic Development Sales Tax Fund. And of that, the Public Safety Answering Point, uh, the nine-one-one system, a million dollars. And that gives us a grand total of eighty-six million, nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Now, again, North St. Louis has been disenfranchised for at least five decades. I don't think that's indisputable at all. We certainly have seen the decline of some neighborhoods in South St. Louis over the, over a couple of decades, twenty years for sure. But I, I just challenge the thinking of my colleagues and this administration about how it doesn't seem like anyone is really looking after North St. Louis best interest. Now, again, I'm not against capital. I'm just wondering, why couldn't we allocate, why couldn't we prioritize the spending of these ARPA funds whereby we have made a bold statement to the world that the City of St. Louis is interested in really righting wrongs by putting nearly half the ARPA funds into North St. Louis. We're getting almost five hundred million dollars. Five hundred million. And we couldn't prioritize two hundred and fifty to go into North St. Louis to rehabilitate? Now, of course, there's the Nav, oh, well, we put, you know, twenty million out there because we're gonna use New Marcus Tax Credits and we're gonna use, uh, create this fund, which I totally support, voted for just this week. Um, and then we talk about home repair, which is a city WAP program. And when we think about prioritizing fund, I was just shocked that more money wasn't initially allocated for home repair. I'm the one put fifteen million dollars into home repair. Because I wanted to be serious about supporting our citizens. And I'm sure most of that money will probably go in North St. Louis. But it's put into a fund and everybody has access to it. So it'll be shared very equally. Um. I'm not gonna vote against this. I voted against it in committee. But I want to be very serious moving forward about these ARPA funds. And I will be relentless. On trying to ensure that North St. Louis gets more than its fair share. And then on top of that. We have the stadium money. And we probably should start having conversations about that. If we really want to right wrongs. We need to start walking the walk and not just talking the talk. And everybody that knows me, I walk the walk and talk the talk. I'm allergic to hypocrisy. So. I'm be easy on y'all for the sixteenth, what I had a lot more to say, but I just want you guys to know, and I'm asking you guys. I'm appealing to your conscience that the next round of ARPA funds, let's be more than fair to North St. Louis. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Alderman from the twenty second. Uh, any further discussion, any further, uh, all the, all the ones from first?
Um, Mr. Mr. President, members of the board, I see Alderman Bosley's hand up and I he's, I have.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't see his hand pop up right there at the last minute. Alderman from the third for the first time.
Uh, good morning. How's everybody? Everybody's doing well today?
Yes.
Uh. Sorry about that. Um, with the Alderman, uh. I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yeah, yes, from the sixteenth.
With Alderman for the sixteen year for question?
Alderman from the sixteenth, will you yield a question to Alderman from third?
I will.
Um, from third, please proceed.
Thank you. Number one, I do appreciate you taking the time to contact uh, you know, a lot of the members of the board and regarding to this bill. I do think that um, uh, you diligently are trying to figure out. How we utilize some of these dollars for these uh immediate capital expenditures that need to be made, especially for critical services or some of these departments that need critical repairs. That is, that is extremely important for the viability of our city and us being able to sustain uh adequate services. So I do understand the intent and it is appreciated, it's well intended and I think as well, uh, you know, thought out. So with with that, um, my question would be uh particularly if um, we're looking at. Uh, utilizing these funds to ensure that the different departments have the tools that they need uh for the employees that they have. Um. Is there anything particularly in this bill that gets us to a place where we actually are putting? Uh, our funding somewhere where we will have employees that are able to utilize these different equipments, trucks. Um, you know, any, any of the things that we're getting ready to acquire that each department is asking for. We also have had a very large shortage of employees. Um, so is there anything to enhance um? And I guess the, or help these departments um. Uh, with with funding to advertise the departments a little bit more so we can have enough bodies to do the services that are required.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think the short answer, Alderman, is, is that usually employees is, is a, is a uh operating uh expense. And um not one of of capital. So um, it's not, it's not as if we could use these funds to, to, to create a, an operating budget to hire folks. Because they're non-recurring funds. Uh, I, I will say that hopefully if there's, you know, good equipment produces a good job. And if, and if we've got state of the art equipment that uh for these departments that uh that'll create some supreme decor with the employees and hopefully attract. Um, you know, i- i- through recruitment, uh, good employees as well because they've got, they've got good equipment to work with. I mean, I would envision it be incredibly frustrating to show up to your job and, and your truck's always broke. Or the, the particular shredder in forestry and chipper is broke. Or the demand's so great, you need two or three more pieces of equipment and, and the one you got get run all over town. So uh, not in the way of directly hiring employees. Um, will, will that help the city departments other than I think if there's good equipment, hopefully that will help with recruitment?
Understood, and that's, that's definitely, I think, a really good piece that the public needs to know. We are getting ready to spend sixty million dollars on a lot of capital improvements, but we, you know, realistically still don't have the workforce that we need within the city to be able to maximize. Um, the equipment um that we're getting ready to spend. Uh, do we have any plan uh with the different shredders that we're getting to utilize them and maximize their lifespan within the areas that need them the most? I for one need a heck of a lot of vegetation removed in my ward, the grass is never cut adequately. Um, we listen to and hear the different departments and the department workers, employees say that they don't have. Uh, you know, proper lawn equipment, sometimes I don't really see anything in there with them getting brand new lawn equipment. Uh, I don't see them getting uh new grass cutters. Of course, it's great that we have like the bush shredders, that's important. I talked to um, uh, Alan on multiple occasions about the importance of, um, well, not the importance, but he's talked to me about the importance of getting one of those shredders. Hey, turn it down. Um. Uh, he's, he's talked to me on multiple occasions about the importance of getting a shredder. So I do know of the importance of us having, once again, a lot of these equipments, but at the same time, when they do get a lot of these new things and they have gotten equipment over the years. The grass still doesn't get cut, trees still do not get um cut down. And it's not because of the commissioner is doing a bad job, but these employees just don't uh, you know, don't care. They don't have enough of them out there working, there's not enough manpower within the city. And it's impossible, I think, to want people to come and work for the city if we still haven't figured out how to adequately pay people in the city. We're spending all of this money on ARPA funds and capital improvements, but we literally have ten thousand people that work for us within the city, maybe a little more than that. But these, these folks are being underpaid every single day. They go to work, new equipment is not gonna make you feel better when you get home about the bills that are waiting for you on the table when you get there. We are underpaying all of our people and we got money right now to put into ensuring that they get adequate pay. You got individuals that's been here for ten, twenty years and now has the same amount of pay or had the same pay increase that everybody else got when they came in. When we put it at fifteen dollars an hour, and I appreciate the mayor doing that, but there's also things that we can do to help support those agendas. The mayor um can only do so much and we also have a uh. An important job to ensure the health and quality for the individuals that work for us. Uh, or conducive for the environments that they work in and fixing buildings to not fix people. It's not gonna make them cut the grass better. Just because they have a new machine to utilize while cutting, what's gonna make them cut the grass better is appreciating the amount of uh, I'm sorry. What's going to help them come to work and feel comfortable about the job that they're doing is knowing that every hour that they're working, they're being compensated adequately. For uh the job that they're doing, and I think that that is important to let the people know in the city that we morally care about you at the same time. We're spending money on things and our people, those things are important, but they're nothing if the people are not here to enjoy them. There's nothing if the individuals are not here to enjoy driving up and down ground. People are leaving left and right because the city has no safety plan realistically. And there's not a shot at Dr. Isom or any other individuals. These things have been systemic and they have been going on for a very long time and we can do absolutely nothing in this city if we're not pouring into the people first. People are looking up every single day and they're just saying, hey, you know, when is it gonna be uh, you know, our turn to get arranged? When is it gonna be our turn to uh, uh, you know, see a building come up? I'm, I'm, I appreciate you having Grand and a few of the streets in there from the north side that can connect from the north to south city, uh, you know, that like stretch. I think you got a Grand in there from, forgot, but you take it all the way down to like um Broadway, those things are appreciated. Same thing with Kings Highway and a few other streets on there also, but you know, just, just being realistic. Um. People are flying through our city left and right, getting hit, we got pedestrians uh being struck. Some of these streets, when you pave, you're just gonna turn them into highways because there's no plan to actually do what's necessary to slow them down. We're not getting more traffic officers, I see that we got some things in our poor corrections, things like that. Once again, where's our capital improvement, our improvements in our people? Where's our improvements in making sure that the people are doing, are having the resources that they need particularly to service this city? Things don't service the city, people service the city utilizing those things, so um. There is nothing in there specific particular that I saw so for, for safety, um. We need cameras all around the city, I think there needs to be at every entrance and exit license plate readers as you come in and out this city. We got thousands of new people coming here that will be here from the NGA, we got folks that'll be coming from the soccer stadium. Um, do you think that is important, and this is a question, for them to feel safe?
Well, I think it's important for uh citizens and visitors to feel safe, my answer is yes, resounding yes to that, Alderman.
Thank you. Do you think that these dollars?
Not only feel safe, but actually be safe is how I would also.
That's right, I, I agree with that a hundred percent. Uh, you, you're right, the feeling is, is feeling is nothing compared to the reality. We can, yeah, so I, I agree with that a thousand percent. You know, I, I think that um, these funds can also be utilized for protection to some degree. For some of the, the, the things that we have said for a long time, we have no control over, but we kind of do if we utilize technology in a way where we actually have a plan on what it is. We're looking at doing to sustain whatever it is we trying to create, you know, and that's just um, you know. A, a thought as far as the, the safety piece goes, I, I think there needs to be something in here for cameras that, that is a capital improvement. Um, for uh sometime you have had multiple Alderman, and that's from all across the city asking for cameras to the point where, you know, I think one neighborhood, forgot what neighborhood it is, I don't want to. Um, uh, guess, but I believe they went out and got their own cameras, they're not waiting for the city no more. They cannot wait for uh them to have some protection in their neighborhoods because they're not used to having folks breaking their cars. Or these things that are, have become some sort of a regular occurrence, the neighborhood took it upon themselves to do what was necessary. Um, and made a capital expenditure, you know, to say that our, our safety is extremely important. So I just, you know, it's, I know at some point in time we'll look back on these things. And once again, I'm not saying that this is bad legislation at all, I think you did a great job, I think it is a, a good board bill, but is the timing right for it? Is, is it time necessarily for everybody who lives on the north, lives on the west, to be looking at us as legislators saying? You know, we get new uh lawn equipment, you know, but there's nobody here to cut the grass, you know, we got some real nice fancy equipment. I literally got grass right now in the snow that you can see is, is, is up higher than it should be, you know, what the law allows. Um, and you know, we, we deal with these things on a regular basis and I fear that this summer come June. Um, you know, and that's, I do have another question, I fear this summer come June. We all will be focused on our elections, trying to do what we need to do to ensure, you know, whatever um, uh, works that we have been working on, things that we want to complete, projects we want done. We'll probably be working to, to get a lot of those things done and I fear the grass still won't be cut. I fear we'll have all this new equipment, we'll have these new things, all this money will be spent, and when we knock on these doors, our residents will say the same thing that they said last summer. You know, what about this tree? And it's great that you got that, you know, the what, one point one million of trees, that's perfect, that's appreciated also at the same time because that is very important. But there is no um, uh, direct way that I see that being spent particularly in the places that it should be spent. It can cost tens of thousands of dollars to tear down, you know, one tree, like depending on how big that tree is, and we got some huge ones, when you tear down these houses. Generally, the contractors leave a row of the trees up in between the tree line area between those two houses. And they end up going into large trees and most of my folks are just being really, we don't have ten thousand dollars to turn down a tree. Who did, we put it in a roof or put it in something in the house. Um, but those things get very, very expensive and, and I fear once again, that money can easily be taken or utilized. And we still won't put a dent in the amount of issues that the people are saying particularly from our side of town that, that are, they're in alignment with. See, everybody has a different idea on what we should be doing economically or this or that, I'm just strictly, strictly speaking on what we all can agree on. We all can agree, we got a trash problem in the city, I'm glad we're getting trash trucks, but that's not putting debris teams on the ground to pick up all this trash on, in our alleys. We got trash all over the alleys, folks come out there and throw trash right on the ground. You know, by requesting us put cameras in every alley, we got the money to do so, then they say that we don't have the personnel. So, you know, what good is the trash truck if they just pick the trash up, the dumpster up and put dumpster right back down on the trash? And we still gotta drive past the trash on the outside of the trash can, it's great that it's picked up, we can put some more trash in it. You know, but now we gotta get outside and shovel it and that's okay with us having to work to keep your neighborhood clean. But when you got five vacant buildings in between, when you got, just you on the block and it's a whole line of, of, um. Uh, blocks of houses that we've torn down, of course, it's good, we were able to tear them down, but you got those houses torn down. It's easy for folks to come and throw trash on the ground or kick uh tires out, all those different things that we've been dealing with because nobody's watching. And it's like, my folks are still gonna come outside and, you know, it's my responsibility to represent their interest because they're allowing my interest also. They're still gonna come outside and say, all right, Bosley. What about that trash? They've been dumping here for four years straight, you know, what are we gonna do about it? And, you know, I really don't have a rebuttal to that at this point, other than saying, you know, I appreciate us just lifting up the thousand, you know, the uh amount of fines that we can do on people. That's not gonna help us catch folks, hopefully when we catch them, that's gonna help us determine, that's appreciated also. But we still have to, once again, it's that people thing, what's gonna make people feel empowered um to, to go out and go, you know, chase folks or catch them or, you know. We need some system set in place where they know for sure we're looking out for their better goods so they can get engaged and I just think that um. You know, their uh issues are falling on deaf ears and that's just being real. We've had this money for such a long time and not one roof that I know of, of a senior citizen in my ward, she ain't got a roof, ain't winging a home repair, all these dollars that we put in. And it's not really touching the people, and once again, with that five hundred, that's great, I think, once again, it, it. Uh, it's something that was impactful for those individuals who got it, that was a lifesaver for some folks. You know, but as far as long-term sustainability and how we affect individuals and can affect them every day. Is by ensuring that whatever it is they're seeing outside every day that we can utilize as a capital improvement to their lives or something. You know, that, that they can walk outside, see and feel, and I, once again, is it, it comes down to what you see going on in your neighborhood. Like Alderman, um, Todd said, there's no money in there for boarding up these second floors, you know, the building division will tell you regularly that, you know, we, we don't go to that second floor. And I get it, some of the stuff is dangerous, but we gotta figure out, you know, how to, once again, if it's, if it's too dangerous for our own building division to go into, imagine how the person living next door feels. You know, if the city's saying, we won't touch it, imagine how we feel knowing that we can't even get the second floor boarded up, you know, and we live next door to this stuff. So, you know, it's things like that, 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 that realistically can change the way that our communities look at leadership in general and get them more engaged. And when we spending millions and millions of dollars and I don't feel like it's touching the people and that's what it's meant to do. That's where that disagreement comes from, these capital improvements are needed without a doubt. You know, but the, the people, uh. Yeah, we, we gotta point to these people, we gotta point to these employees, like they are, they, they, they overworked and underpaid. They haven't gotten any extra funding during the pandemic, we could have give out, you know, a thousand, five hundred dollars for some of these employees who've been working overtime, you know, corrections. Like that, I'm glad we put money in corrections too, but that, man, our folks worked hard and they, they, they get underpaid regularly. So I appreciate you, um, I guess another question would be, do you have any foreseeable future? Or do you think in the future that we could be possibly affected by the war that's going on in Ukraine right now? Because in June, if we looking to get some money and things pop off, you know, we never know, we, I'm just saying, things could get interesting. So that is a question, that is, and I want to make sure that's germane, I won't dig too deep into what's going on over there, just looking at, is it potential? You gotta ask that it could affect us at some point in time or the amount of funding we're expecting to get from the federal government.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that's a good macro question, Alderman. Uh, I, I do know that I think, I don't think the ARPA funds are in jeopardy of getting pulled back or, or, or reneged on as a result of, of, of the conflict that's in, in Ukraine right now. Although you make a great point that I think the y- yet to be seen or yet to be felt, there will be law, you know, short and long-term economic implications associated with what's happening. Uh, vis a vis the sanctions, uh, vis a vis the oil operations in, in, in Russia, in, in Eurasia. So, uh, yeah, I mean, that's a, that's a good point, that is something that, that I think, you know, uh, we, we're yet to feel but likely will.
Understood, and I, and I'm, and I'm knowing that you know that, and I think what comes with it, even if they don't pull the ARPA farm backs, is, is, is. It's good reason to assume that at some point in time, we, nine times out of ten, I've gone inflation from this, I mean, field inflation from this, correct?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think we're, we're, we're in the perils of, of uh upward trending inflation as we speak, yes, sir.
So do you think it would be interesting for us to look at the possibility of creating? A pot specifically where we can have some of that money that we have and have not had access to for a very long time grow interest? We don't know how particular things are getting ready to play out, but you know, from the banking world, I'm sure you all take a lot of risk. But when there are things that are imminent that could potentially um. Stop a source of revenue or income or impact you in a certain way, you look and mitigate that risk based on what the reward is, right?
Yes, sir.
So potentially, if we put sixty million dollars inside of a bank account to some degree, let it grow our co-interests for the next two or three years, we probably be looking at somewhere around what, extra ten million?
I mean, give or take your close there, I think, right, with the approximations, yes, sir.
So it, it'd be interesting to, to see, you know, while we look at the different dollars that we have coming in, how we can keep these dollars revolving, right? As soon as we spend this money, it goes to Toyota, it goes to Ford, it goes to GM, it goes to all of these different equipment and manufacturers. And, you know, once again, it does not come back to the city, it comes back by way of what we would consider services. But, you know, I don't want to sound on type of way, but it just comes down to truthfully who's being served, you know? The bridges aren't gonna collapse tomorrow. The bridges aren't gonna collapse tomorrow. And, and you know, the, the streets, ones that don't get paid, it's not gonna stop people from driving on them today. Um, but we know for sure, for sure, uh, but let me take that piece back. I, I don't even want to go there with it. Um.
I will say though, Alderman, I, I'll agree with you in the sense that um, you know, we should look to create a trust with, with any windfall of, of money that is sustainable. Uh, I will say the challenge with the ARPA dollars is that it does have a sunset spend clause, right? So by the end of the year 2025, these funds have to be exhausted. And, and I don't think the federal government would, would uh, you know, favor us, you know, throwing it in a bank account um, uh, in waiting. Where there is that opportunity and, and, and we should all explore this is um, the, with the NFL settlement piece. I mean, that's an opportunity to set up a, 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 a social commitment, a social compact trust whereby we can invest that, those dollars. Those dollars are pretty darn flexible, if not completely unencumbered. And I think there is a real opportunity and, and to, you know, um, to um, invoke what the Alderman in the 22nd ward said earlier, um, righting historic wrongs. I mean, I don't think, I don't think anything, uh, I don't think you can, you can um, I, I think an achievement of that goal is sticking it to the NFL, quite honestly.
Understood.
We've got it. We've got a social fund here that, that, that's going to right a lot of historic wrongs. Um, and, and uh, thank you NFL. And uh, you know, I, I, I think that's an excellent idea you brought up. And I'd be committed to working with you and the mayor's officer, whoever the heck else in the president's office around your leadership to, to figure that out. Cause that's an opportunity that, that I know if we all put our best foot forward, we won't squander.
I'm sure that's certainly appreciated also. And uh, and just for clarification, I, I know for sure that uh, I know that money has to be spent. I, I do get that. I was just thinking like in terms of, you know, just for the next few years, you know, while we're looking at doing the remainder of these allocations, you know, we could, we could take a year, make it, make some extra money and actually take that interest because it was accrued and it's not kind of federal money at that point. Do whatever we like to do with it. Um, I'm just saying while we got it, it makes sense to figure out how to get more because it takes money to make money or it takes good credit. And, you know, we got a whole lot of assets, uh, uh, but this is, this is a lot of money. And I just, I, I wanted to touch, I, I just wanted to touch my people. Um, and that's just, this is what it is. I'm always hearing no and I've always heard no when we're in a position where we can say yes to a lot of things. I mean, it's not a storefront man built. There, and that's what ARPA funds can be used for, actually could be built for, used for your new structures. Like I read it, we can actually build stuff. And we haven't built anything, you know, we had, we hundreds of millions of dollars thus far allocated and not one thing is built, not a, not a staircase for, for a new structure on the North Side. Like that is, is mine. We've been in this for a very long time as far as in this pandemic mode where everybody shut down, us doing zones, everybody in the house, that plenty of time to build. And, you know, I, I don't want us to mess this opportunity up, even when that Rams money come, you know, like I know everybody gonna have their hands in that pot. Um, it's gonna go a lot of different ways, hopefully. And if, you know, uh, well, actually, when do you expect we'll receive that pot?
The second funding, second?
No, the Rams funded.
Oh, you know what? I don't know. I, I'm not privy to those negotiations. We have the proceeds in, in hand. They, they, we, we were delivered those, I think, on Christmas Eve. So we, we've got the money. Now it's been distributed, uh, I mean, uh, distributed in the sense that the, the uh, the lawyers have taken their fee out of it. And now I believe there's an agreement getting worked out uh, as we sit here today between the members of that RSA, that Regional Sports Authority Commission are working on an agreement of, of what's left over uh, minus legal fees and transaction expenses. So we've got, we've got money, Alderman. I, that mean is, is the question. But now there needs to be an agreement worked out. And uh, you know, I don't know where that stands in the timing.
Understood. So, so I guess you and Alderwoman and Gracie, which I appreciate also, uh, her comments yesterday. Um, and a few other Alderpeople have also stated they would be, well, not a few, I'm just gonna say that too, that, that, let me be frank. Um, you would be definitely willing to use some of those Ram funds on the North Side. Once again, as this pertains to the capital expenditures now, this is something that I'm not against and I would not feel comfortable um, voting for unless I articulated the reason why I would potentially vote for it or potentially not vote for it. Cause it is important on both sides. Uh, would you be willing, and this is a question I gotta ask you upfront, would you be willing to take uh, cause it, I, I, this is about 750 million we getting?
Well, I think the original settlement was about 780 or 790 million. I think after lawyers and the, and the expense fees, there's, you know, roughly 500 uh, some odd million. And then that's gonna probably, I would think gets split in an agreement between the three members of the RSA who have the, built the stadium and carried the debt service, both the state, the county and us as in city. So I think approximately it's probably safe to maybe say that, that we'll get the north of a hundred million dollars, uh, the city of St. Louis, this portion.
Okay. And we get another 200 million uh, second round in June, right?
Yes, another 249 million, uh, I think May-June will be that second advance of, of ARPA proceeds.
So roughly kind of at the end of all of these different fundings we'll be getting from ARPA and from the federal government, we, we're somewhere around 700, 800 extra million dollars that within the last two years we received after we get this extra funding.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that, Alderman?
Um, with the ARPA funds collectively together and the, the funds that we get in here from uh, the Rams uh, that we'll end up clearing, would you, would it be safe to say we've gotten or will get somewhere around 700 million dollars over the next two years? Well, I mean, of course, we've already got some in Spain.
Uh, uh, yeah, all in, all in. Yeah, that's probably pretty close, right? All in with the, with the half a billion from, from ARPA proceeds um, and the Ram settlement. Um, yeah, we're close to that figure, sir.
Okay. Well, that's, that's it. And once again, I just want to put that out there. So we know, hey, we gonna spend 60, if we spend 60 million on this, we gotta come make sure that North Side and these other wards, you know, are, are able to grow um, uh, you know, like, like the city has been. So yeah, I just want to put that out there. Our whole job, my job is, I believe is to negotiate. That's what we do. We negotiate with each other. We try to figure out what's best for the city. How to ensure that what you believe is aligned with what you believe, what it is, I believe is, is uh, you know, what I believe is aligned with uh, what you believe to some degree. And we all believe we're trying to move the city forward. So I believe that is what you're doing. And I hope you believe that when I say um, I, I believe that it would be remiss for me not to say I like the North Side of St. Louis, the West Side of St. Louis and a bit of the South Side, wherever, whatever the need is at most. We need some hundreds of millions of dollars poured into it, period. I mean, it can't be 50 million dollars the next time we come having a conversation about funding North Side or the West Side, we gonna have to talk some real numbers. And, you know, and I know that you are uh, you know, once again, you've agreed to have some conversation around the, you know, that Rams funding, but uh, you know, just want to put out there, we, we need a really big ask. And, and we need some, we need some help structuring those things also. I think the North Side, once again, we, we haven't had nothing, West Side, nothing. Um, 60 million dollars is a lot. So uh, uh, with that, once again, I, I appreciate if you want to have any more closing remarks. I believe that, I mean, not closing remarks on the bill, but to me, just being respectful.
Yeah. Well, what I would, thank you, Alderman, because I do want to address, you, you mentioned around public safety and, and cameras too. Uh, and there is, there is a line item in here for a, any legal dumping. So, you know, you can kind of tie all those together. There will be some relief in this bill to those items you spoke to. We did add a million dollars for the trash task force to buy 100 new cameras uh, over the next year and a half in, in this appropriation. Uh, as you know, there's over 200 mil, there's over 200 cameras right now that the environment, environmental investigation unit of the trash task force has spread out throughout the city. They are in the high dumping areas. Um, and one of their asks to the public safety committee, when they were given their annual report was, gosh, we need new updated cameras. We've got these old cameras and they help us catch people. They are helping. But it requires an officer to go and download the data in a hoist bucket from the camera. And then it takes a week or so to review. So in this bill, we'll be able to buy them 100 new cameras, state of the art equipment, about 10,000 apiece. And I know you know technology, Alderman. Um, and they'll be federated into the real-time crime center as well. So no more waiting three or four days and then a detective has to investigate any illegal dumping activity. We'll be able to see this in real time. And maybe it get to a point where we can then track them with the other LPRs um, and PTZs we have in the area and catch these guys right in the act. Uh, and I think that'll send a strong message to deterring uh, also along those lines of illegal dumping. You know that, that I've also introduced board bill 181, which is hoping to increase that maximum fine from 500 to a thousand dollars for illegal dumping. And that's something we're gonna have to ask the voters for, but I think that's a particularly important issue too, to the items that you were, you were speaking of. So I do want to let you know, there is some relief in there for cameras and particularly the illegal dumping area in, in, in board bill 184 as amended, sir.
Good stuff. That is appreciated. Would you be also willing to work with uh, you know, I guess anybody who's willing to work on it and make sure that those cameras go? Um, you know, cause it's just 100 of them. I got 220 blocks in my ward, a little more than that. So, you know, that is, that's a good start. Um, but, you know, can we make sure they go to the most frequently dumped places? Um, and they actually um, are broken up in a way where, you know, we not having this conversation a year and we end up seeing all the cameras and, you know, you know, one side of town. I'm just being real about it.
No, and I, I know that's not. Explicitly for the record, Alderman, they should go and in the environmental task force, um, or the trash task force uh, uh, carries out in that, in that regard, that, that planning. The majority of those 200 cameras are all in the highest dumping areas and neighborhoods and wards, I think 27, uh, 28, 3, 4. Those are the high wards that, that get the dumped on literally, uh, which is in inexcusable, you know, um, uh, activity. And uh, I would, yes, congregating those cameras around those high points uh, is where they should go.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, and I, I guess my last question would be not, uh, in the third, would you also be willing to help? You know, just, this is just a real thing. It seems and it always has been that conversation um, that the South Side grass get cut before ours, Central West Stand, everybody gets taken care of before the North Side. We ready to spend all this money. So, you know, if that is the rhetoric this summer, I'm just saying, we spending all of this, we gonna need some help from some of our, our colleagues that are, that are in those wards that are getting serviced the way that we think we should be being serviced and being able to speak up and say, hey, you know, um, they're saying that the grass ain't getting cut. Why is my grass cutting? You know, their grass hit. We just spent 60 million dollars, you know, on making sure you have the machines. We asked you what you needed, you know? We gonna need some pushback to ensure that the individuals who are living, uh, you know, the, the, I'm gonna say the good life, but better than than we are when it comes to services are able to, to speak up on that. You know, when we're saying there's a difference here and being able to look at that and help investigate that. So we can get it done right. So.
Yes, sir.
Just, would you?
Yeah, I would say, I would say, Alderman, if we're leading with equity, we should prioritize those neighborhoods and communities of color in terms of service, uh, employment. Um, I've got no problem saying that publicly and working with you and everyone else to ensure that those are the priorities of the city.
Thank you. And lastly, why were the NSIs left out? I mean, the, the, our neighborhood stabilization offices, they like need money. Those folks take all the CSB calls, they have folks riding on our neighborhoods to look at the different dump sites or the different problems that we have. These folks work, they butt off. They take every service call in the whole city and we don't have a dime in there to upgrade the service request. We don't have a dime in there to upgrade their equipment. We don't have anything specifically in there that gives them um, the different tools that they need. I'm not sure what they asked for, if they were in part of the capital meetings, uh, you know, and that's my ignorance, my apologies for not being there. But, you know, they are left out from what I read and they are one of the most important parts of the entire city by way of the citizens having one place and only one number that they know to call aside from the police um, for a certain service. So is there a certain reason we left them out?
Yeah, again, we can't use the ARPA dollars for salaries and, and that's just an operation uh, uh, of employees in, in the city. There's no real equipment or capital need. So that, that was the reason that I think that, that they're not included uh, comprehensively in this. But, I mean, I, I think.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I, I would say when it comes budget time, uh, Alderman, I, I, I think we, the, the Ways and Means Committee as well as the Board of Ena would welcome that input that let's, let's bolster up the neighborhood improvement specialist operation. Can we hire more? Can we give them more resources uh, so they have, you know, i- i- at a minimum, let's, let's all get adequate coverage so that we're not sharing among wards, right? I think we're at a point now where uh, one NIS covers two, and in some cases maybe three wards. So uh, they need bodies. I, I, I hear that.
That's all. And, and once they need a little bit of equipment too, but I, once I appreciate it, just wanted to, you know, ask that question also. Believe that sums up my question. And um, I will support this because of uh, you know, I understand the importance of these capital needs. I do not 100% support the idea of not, well, let me answer it because it's not even an idea. It's not you per se. It is, I'm trying to not make this a you. It's not about you.
Understood, Alderman. Thank you.
It's just kind of one of those things where I just wish we kind of put a little bit more into the people. But uh, you know, I, I appreciate you. Definitely appreciate the efforts. Uh, with that, I use, sir.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Alderwoman from the eighth for the first time.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Um, I wanted to address, there was um, some side conversation happening in the chat about the um, 500 dollar cash assistance program. And I know absolutely that there have been challenges in there. Um, the mayor has talked about this a couple of times on calls with the Board of Aldermen.
Um, Alderwoman from the eighth, anything related to this board bill? I don't think.
I do, I do. I just, I, I want to be transparent as that was part of the conversation that the Alderwoman from the first had earlier. So I wanted to respond.
But the cash assistance thing, if you guys want to just discuss the cash assistance thing, if it's buckled into um, uh, this, these line items somewhere, that's, that's, that's good. But if it's just to talk about the cash assistance, application processes and stuff like that, um, put it in the chat and we'll make sure that is posted. But please proceed.
Thank you. I wanted to respond to some of the questions that were raised earlier about it. And I, um, you know, I think that if we, if we were short on money, then that is something we should continue to look at on the, um, the next round of ARPA funding. Um, if there were more folks that were applying that we had money for, then it's something that we should strongly consider um, increasing that fund uh, in the next round of ARPA funding. So um, a couple of other things, um, and I'm happy to talk with anyone um, who is also struggling with that program that um, I, I know that there were a lot of uh, concerns there. So roll out on that program. But um, as far as some of the other things that have been raised and I, you know, there are, there are pieces of this bill that I don't love. Um, but these are, are needs that are urgent for the city of St. Louis and having this type of money um, that does have very specific guidelines on how we can use it. Um, and deadlines, um, that we have to have the money spent by the end of 2025 um, is really important when it comes to big capital improvement projects because the amount of work on the front end that has to go into designing streets, um, uh, bidding out projects for buildings, um, that type of thing takes, takes a long time. I've got a, a bike lane project in my ward that um, has been going on for two or three years now. And, and you know, we're still months, lots of months out before we even break ground on that project. Um, and, you know, bridges, bridges are massive uh, time investments, particularly when we have to look at utilities that are underneath them, if they get anywhere near railroads um, or other roads underneath. Um, so putting this money forward on as quickly as possible is a smart use of our money. And it also corresponds um, with the ability to potentially match funds through East West Gateway with the infrastructure bill funds that are going to be coming through there. So um, we can't, I, I asked in committee about whether we could, you know, one for one substitute dollars if we got money from the infrastructure bill. Um, but we're, the city of St. Louis is not getting cash from the infrastructure bill the same way that we're getting cash from ARPA. Um, so we can't, we can't sort of just swap those projects, but we can use this money um, and even with some of these allocations that we're making today to potentially match contracts um, with through East West Gateway, the same way that we do for um, like CMAC grants or, or things like that, um, other, other infrastructure projects. Um, the, I also agree that it's taking a very long time to get money um, out into the community. One of the things that we talked about when the home repair money came through is that we need contractors. One of the reasons that the home repair list is, is so backed up is that we just don't have contractors to do the work. Um, and, and so we're, we're funding and we're trying to get that money out. Um, but both the request for proposals process and the lack of um, contractors to get that work done as quickly as we would like to has created some delays. And so I'm also trying to be patient with it while pushing and saying, hey, you know, if we've got this money, let's get this work done. Um, also about um, potentially investing for interest and how we could continue to benefit from this money. Um, the guidelines under ARPA are very specific about the money being spent. And so I know that the administration has looked into where we might be able to create funds that would then have sort of a revolving payout. Um, but I agree with the Alderman from the 16th that the, the Rams money unrestricted money like that is probably the best space for there to be um, that type of a fund. Um, and whether whatever it ends up going to, because it's unrestricted, uh, we have a lot more ability to continue to benefit from that money um, just fiscally. Um, so, um, the, you know, the ARPA, ARPA guidelines specifically talk about, um, using these as, as federal match dollars. Um, so that was one of the things in the, in the final rule that came out. Um, I, you know, and I'm also grateful for the opportunity to nominate folks onto the Capital Improvements Committee. Um, I think that was really helpful to have that community transparency. Um, I, I think that there are some changes that need to be made to that and, um, lots of folks, uh, signed on to a letter, um, asking for an equity lens or an equity analysis to be, to put into place for future capital improvement projects. And I think that's important, um, that from the top down, we're, we're looking at where, where these are being just, with these projects are being distributed through the city, um, that we, that we do make sure that there is an equity lens on that. Um, it seems to me from the analysis done from this committee that these are urgent needs, um, that we, we need to get done as quickly as possible. Um, so I am supportive of this and I, you know, I am, I am also hoping that, you know, as we move forward, we are all participating as much as possible, um, with the, you know, with the president's office, with the mayor's office, um, with folks on Ways and Means or whoever is going to be handling next bill, um, on this ARPA money, that, that we all be advocating throughout the process, um, so that we, we can get what we need or what we need to ask for out of that project. So, excuse me, um, I think, well, and I also would say, I would love to look, um, uh, one of the things that Kansas City, I believe, has done was create sort of a COVID hazard pay bonus for employees under ARPA guidelines. And I would love to look at, um, our ability to do that here in the city because I agree that our employees that have done so much through COVID, could use a boost and that may go, um, oh, I know that we can't put it into raising salaries because that's a recurring cost that won't be finished by the end of twenty twenty-five. But anything that we can do to encourage folks to stay, you know, thank them for their service, um, I would be greatly appreciated, I think. So, uh, thank you, Alderman from the sixteenth.
All right. Thank you. Alderwoman from the first.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. I forgot to ask the Alderman from the sixteenth one other question and if the Alderman from the sixteenth would yield.
Alderman from the sixteen will yield and Alderwoman from first.
Yes, I will.
Thank you. So we're gonna have all these extra projects. Um, and so I know we can't spend the money on, uh, staff and for, and for employees, but all this stuff will be going through B P S. When I left here in two thousand and three, we had five people who serviced the ward capital money. I think we have two now. So in your speaks, talks with the mayor's office, did we include in hiring some more people at B P S? Because if we don't, who, who is gonna process all of this stuff? So is there some, uh, future in our budget or whatever that we're looking at? We're gonna hire, have to hire some more people because they're gonna have to handle these projects.
Yeah, uh, Alderwoman, that's a great point. I have not had that specific conversation. What I would do, um, you know, and I, I wish I had the answer for you now, but I can commit before this is third and finally read next week to get with, uh, Mr. Rich Bradley and the folks over there at the, uh, Board of Public Service to make sure that they don't have any capacity issues. Cause you're right, this is a heck of a lot of money and there's a heck of a lot of projects moving forward. Um, and if, and if we need to address that in, in the next budget cycle, uh, we should, I'd be in favor. That's a great point, Alderwoman. I will, I will call Mr. Bradley, uh, and, uh, I'll report back to you.
Well, he and I have already had that conversation. Because I know that we used to have five people. When I came back here, we had two people. And I was like, wow, this is why it takes them so long to spend our money. Okay, so if we're gonna now add all of this, I'm saying that our budget is coming up now. So that's one of the things that we should be proactively looking at.
Yes, it would be the time to do it. You got it.
I have no further questions. Thank you, Mr. President.
You, Alderwoman.
All right. Any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderman from the sixteenth, we recognize the close.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I, I think there's nothing more that, uh, to say that hasn't been said today. This is a, a great conversation. Uh, I will renew my motion.
All right, it's been moved by Alderman from the sixteenth, second about Alderman from the fourteenth, that we perfect board bill one eighty-four as amended.
Are we doing a roll call?
If you request one. Madam Clerk, please call roll.
Alderwoman Tyus.
Present.
Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. I'm sorry, Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Page.
Aye.
Alderwoman Gracia.
Aye.
Alderman Calder.
Aye.
Alderman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther. Alderman Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Martin.
Aye.
Alderman Stevens.
Aye.
Alderwoman Switzer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Odenberg.
Aye.
Alderwoman Peal.
Aye.
Alderman Todd. Alderwoman Davis.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
I'm sorry, Alderman, you cut off.
Aye.
Thank you. Alderman Vaquero.
Aye.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Kong.
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
President Reed.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Spencer.
Aye.
Twenty-seven I votes. One no vote and one voted present. Give me just a second, I think. I'm sorry, there's twenty-six I votes, one no vote and one voted present.
By vote, staying motion, Alderman from the sixteenth, perfected board bill eight, one eighty-four as amended.
That's the extent of board bills for perfection.
Third reading consent, but, uh, before we get moved to thirty consent, uh, Alderwoman from the seventeenth, would you like to place board bill one fifty-one on an informal calendar? I'd recommend that because it has not made it through E N A yet. All right, Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Place board bill one fifty-one on third reading consent. Excuse me, on third reading informal from the. Third reading consent.
Board bill one twenty-six and board bill one seventy.
Alderman from tenth, you recognize on the motion for the third reading consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move that we adopt the third reading consent calendar.
Second.
Move by Alderman from the tenth, second by Alderman from twenty-second, any discussion? It's been moved in the second that we adopt our third reading consent column. Madam Clerk, please call roll.
Alderwoman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderwoman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Page.
Aye.
I'm sorry. Alderwoman Gracia.
Aye.
Alderman Calder.
Aye.
Alderman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Martin.
Aye.
Alderman Stevens.
Aye.
Alderwoman Switzer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Odenberg.
Aye.
Alderwoman Peal.
Aye.
Alderman Todd. Alderwoman Davis.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Vaquero.
Aye.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Kong.
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
President Reed.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley. Alderman Todd.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you.
Think that was Freeman Bosley, I.
I know Brandon Bosley.
Brandon Bosley, excuse me. Yeah. Is that what you heard, Madam Clerk?
Yes, it sounds like he was breaking up. But yes, sir, twenty-eight I votes.
All right, by vote, staying motion, Alderman from tenth and third read and finally passed the aforementioned bills. Third reading reported in gross.
Board bill one twenty-six. And board bill one seventy.
All of the business being suspended, president shall an open session fix his signature here to the end that these may become law. Alderman from nineteenth, you recognize on the most current resolutions calendar.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move that we adopt a courtesy resolution calendar.
Second.
Move by Alderman from the nineteenth, second by Alderman from the fourth, any discussion? Alderman from the twenty-second.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board, I would like to add as a co-sponsor, resolution one eighty-six and one eighty-seven.
Uh, Madam Clerk, please make note of that.
Please add the Alderwoman from the nineteenth as well.
Please make note of that.
And the Alderwoman from the fourth is not on there.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that.
You can add the Alderman from the third too.
Would somebody like to?
And bank?
Yeah. I'll make a motion, we do this in bank. Uh, and second by Alderman from twenty-six, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, which can carry, Madam Clerk, please make note of that change.
So noted.
The move was moved by Alderman from nineteen, second by Alderman from the fourth, that we adopt our courtesy resolutions calendar as amended, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Which can carries. Alderman, Alderman from the twenty-third, you recognize. Thank you. Yeah, I would like to suspend the rules to introduce a, uh, resolution one eighty-nine. It should be in everyone's Google Drive. Uh, it's pertaining to. Hold on a second, that's all right there. It's been moved by Alderman from twenty-third. We suspend the rules for his purposes of introducing resolution one eighty-nine, which should be in the Google Drive. Entertain a second on that motion.
Second.
Second by Alderman from the twelfth, any further discussion on the suspension of the rules? Been moved in the second, uh, Alderman from the eleventh.
Uh, thank you, um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I, uh, believe this should likely go to a committee.
Yeah, it will, but first I have to. Alderman from the twenty-third, you haven't been recognized. Uh, so only thing we're doing right now, suspending the rules to get it on the.
It'll be a heard. Okay, sorry, I lost track. Thanks.
It's been moved by Alderman from twenty-third, second by Alderman from twelfth, that we suspend the rules for the purposes of introducing resolution one eighty-nine. Madam Clerk, please call roll.
Alderwoman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderwoman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Alderwoman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Page.
Aye.
Alderwoman Gracia.
Aye.
Alderman Calder.
Aye.
Alderwoman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Martin.
Aye.
Alderman Stevens.
Aye.
Alderwoman Switzer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Odenberg.
Aye.
Alderwoman Peal.
Aye.
Alderman Todd. Alderwoman Davis.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Vaquero.
Aye.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Kong.
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd. President Reed.
Aye.
Alderman Todd. Alderwoman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed.
Aye.
Twenty-seven I votes.
By vote, staying motion, Alderman from twenty-third, and suspend the rules for the purposes of introducing resolution one eighty-nine. Madam Clerk, please place resolution one eighty-nine at the end of our first reading of resolutions calendar.
So noted.
First reading of resolutions.
Resolution one seventy-eight sponsored by Alderwoman Switzer and the following other person.
First, first reading.
Oh, I'm sorry. We have none.
Uh, uh, no, one eighty-nine.
First reading.
Yeah, first.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Resolution one eighty-nine sponsored by Alderman Vaquero, calling up on the mayor to begin negotiations with the city's union workers and their representatives.
Alderman from the twenty-third, you recognize on first re- reading of resolution one eighty-nine. Uh, can I have the, uh, clerk read it and then I do want to send it to committee? All right, Madam Clerk, please read resolution one eighty-nine.
Resolution one eighty-nine, calling upon the mayor to begin negotiations with the city's union workers and their representative. Whereas the collective bargaining agreement between the city and its union worker is set to expire in June of twenty twenty-three. And whereas negotiations with city workers and their union representatives, which were, which were to start at the beginning of this year, have yet to begin. And whereas, union representatives were promised a meeting by the city's former personnel director to discuss the findings of the city's recent compensation study prior to beginning, uh, beginning negotiations. And whereas, union, union representatives have made repeat attempts to communicate with the mayor's administration and personnel department about said meeting, the commencement of negotiations and simply inquire, who is the minister, who in the administration and personnel department should be, should be meeting with them, but have received no response from the administration or the personnel department. Now therefore, let it be resolved that the Board of Aldermen hereby calls upon Mayor Tashara O. Jones to promptly begin fair negotiations with city workers and their union. to promptly begin fair negotiations with city workers and their union representatives, introduces twenty fifth day of February two thousand twenty two by the Honorable Joseph Macquarie, twenty third ward Alderman.
Alderman, please proceed.
I would, I would ask, because this also will include police fire and all the unions. And because it's important to us as we get, you know, the budget for next year, all this stuff should be done and, and we get such things so late. I would like it sent to public safety, but I'm certainly fine if it goes elsewhere, because I'll be there all the way. But I prefer public safety, so I'd, I'd like to make a motion to send it there, but.
Okay, it's been moved by Alderman from twenty third and seconded by. Seconded by, sounded like Alderman from the ninth, but Alderman from the sixteenth.
Sixteenth, yeah.
Alderman from the sixteenth.
Yes, second.
Yeah, any further discussion, any further discussion, Alderman from the twenty fourth, the discussion is around the, the appropriate committee, so.
Absolutely, uh, thank you, Mr. President, uh, I, I believe, uh, that given, given the fact that this is looking at all the, the union personnel of the city, I think personnel is probably a more appropriate committee for this. So that's, that's my take on it, thank you.
I think you meant public employees.
Excuse me, yes.
Public employees.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Alderman from the twenty fifth.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mr. President, I was just about to say that as well, I, I do think that this should go to public employees, given the nature of the bill, or the, the resolution, excuse me. So I would support it going to public employees.
All right, Alderman from the eleventh.
Uh, I just want to agree with my colleagues that, um, because this is a personnel matter, I believe this should go to public employees, thank you.
Right, uh, and I think the Alderman from the twenty third is opening that, Alderman from the twenty, twenty third, would you like to?
Yeah, that's fine.
All your original motion and.
Yeah, I would, I would draw my original motion.
And make a motion, and then Alderman from the sixteen.
I'll withdraw my second.
Yeah.
So I'll motion that it goes to, uh, public employees.
Move by Alderman from the twenty third, Alderman from the sixteenth. And entertain a second on it. About Alderman from the sixteenth, uh, in a further discussion. Been moved in the second that we assign resolution one eighty nine to public employees, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Pose, motion carries, Madam Clark, please make note of that, sign resolution one eighty nine to public employees.
So noted.
All right, second reading.
Resolution one seventy eight sponsored by Alderwoman Switzer and the following other persons. Ingracia, Rice, Stevens, Gunther, Pam Boyd, Calder, Oldenburg, Martin, and Green. Amending Board of Aldermen rules to preclude members from voting or being counted present at meetings when driving a vehicle.
Alderman from the thirteenth, you recognize on the second reading of resolution one seventy eight.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, uh, this resolution is to, uh, is as simply a safety, uh, rule change for our body to make both the members of the board participating in meetings safer, uh, while participating in our meetings and also the and also the, the people we share the roads with. Uh, we had talked about members of, in, in committee, some members brought up the concern. You know, that people might, with so much change in, in, in our schedules with, with COVID and the pandemic, that, you know, people are kind of all over the place when participating in meetings and this does not attempt to stop people from participating in meetings, no matter where they are, even if they're in their vehicle, it's, it's simply to, to prevent participation in meetings while actually driving. Uh, so with that, I, I appreciate the time and the, and the effort that so many people have put into this, this resolution, and I would make a motion to, um, amend the rules of the Board of Aldermen by accepting, adopting resolution number one seventy eight.
Move by Alderman from thirteenth.
Second.
Who is that?
Yeah, the fourteenth.
The twelfth and the, the twelfth and eighth. Second by Alderman from the eighth and Alderman from the twelfth.
Discussion.
Uh, Alderman from the twenty fourth.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, uh, I guess a quick procedural question, I do have a floor substitute here, or an amendment, I should say. I don't know if this is the appropriate time to take that up, or if we need to wait until after one seventy eight is in front of us to amend one seventy eight.
Yeah, it's in front of us right now, if you want to amend it, you can amend it now, or you can wait and amend it after.
Okay.
Pushing this on to you.
Then, uh, there is an amendment in the drive that I would, uh, move that we put resolution number one seventy eight as amended, uh, in front of us.
Uh, what is the amendment?
Yeah, point of order.
Uh, please state your point of order.
Uh, we would be introducing the amendment, not a resolution as amended.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Yes, so, yes, I, I, I would like to introduce.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's where you hit it, so, so, uh, please state the amendment so that we can, um.
The amendment takes out, uh, the language, no alderman or alderwoman may vote or be counted as present at a meeting of the Board of Aldermen or Board of Aldermen Committee if they are driving a vehicle. And it would replace that language with, no alderman or alderwoman may participate in any manner, including voting and speaking at a member of the Board of Aldermen or Board of Aldermen Committee, and shall not be counted as present at a meeting of the Board or a committee for purposes of a quorum, or attendant, and attendance if they are driving a vehicle.
All right, it's been, and it's been moved by Alderman from twenty fourth, entertain a second on that motion.
Second.
Uh, and seconded by the Alderman from the thirteenth, it sounded like, right? Uh, any further discussion on the amendment? Uh, Alderman from the twenty seventh?
Mr. President, I want my name removed as a co-sponsor on this bill.
Okay, uh, Madam Clark, please make note of that, the Alderman from the twenty seventh, uh, name should not appear as a co-sponsor on resolution one seventy eight.
So noted.
Uh, Alderman from the eighteenth.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, uh, the sponsor of the resolution, uh, Alder, uh, Alderman woman from the thirteenth, uh, will you yield to a question?
Uh, Alderman from thirteenth, will you yield the question to, to, Alderman from the eighteenth, what's before us now is the amendment to resolution one seventy eight. If you have general questions about the resolution itself, uh, you may want to wait until after we finish the amendment, do you have any questions specifically for the amendment?
Uh, no, thank you, Mr. President, I don't have any questions.
All right, we'll come back to you soon as we get to the, uh, as soon as we get past this amendment. Alderman from the twenty third, do you have any questions about amendment number one?
I do, uh, would the Alderman from the twenty fourth pause?
Alderman from the twenty fourth, will you yield the question to the Alderman from twenty third?
Yes, I will.
All right, Alderman from twenty third, please proceed.
Was, was there any reason you didn't do this in committee? I mean, since this was already in committee, and why do it now?
So, um, I guess after the, uh, committee meeting, the sponsor of the resolution, uh, wanted to make a change, and I'm just kind of handling it, uh, on the floor here, uh, for the, the technical aspect of it. Um, so this, this is a friendly amendment at the request of the sponsor of the resolution.
Well, that would lead me to, the next question would be. Why didn't the sponsor just make that change in the first place in committee, and why isn't the sponsor handling it out here?
Uh, that, that would be, uh, I think a question better answered by the alderwoman of the thirteenth. I, I don't want to try and be a right, a mind reader here, um, but she may be willing to yield for questions there.
Would the alderwoman of the thirteenth yield for questions?
Alderman from thirteen, will you yield a question to Alderman from the twenty third?
Yes.
All right, Alderman from twenty third, please proceed.
Is there any reason you're not handling this amendment to this, you know, why pass it off?
Really, just so more people are involved in this resolution, I don't know that, you know, we're, any of us are, um, you know, it's a board, it's a body for a reason, so when we have something that we can work on together, I feel like that sometimes is the way to go.
So you're suggesting that if I want amendments that I want to make, I should pass it to fellow alderpeople to make my amendments?
If that's what you chose to do, you would be, you'd be in your right to do that.
I was still talking. I, I don't talk over you, please don't talk over me. It, it just seems that, to me, that if I'm the sponsor of a resolution and I want an amendment to it, by doing this now, it looks like someone else's amendment. It looks like the Alderman of the twenty fourth, it looks like his amendment to the bill, or to the resolution. And I, I think that's not appropriate. And I'll leave it at that, but I make my, if, if, if it's my resolution, or even if I'm sponsoring a, an amendment to a resolution. It seems a little bit, you know, we always talk about transparency, transparency. And it seems a little disingenuous and way less transparent when I'm having someone else do something or speaking for me, but I'll leave it at that, thank you, I have no other questions.
Right, thank you, Alderman from the twenty second.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, members of board, with the Alderman from the twenty fourth yield for questions.
Alderman from the twenty fourth, will you yield a question to Alderman from the twenty second?
Uh, absolutely.
Okay.
Please proceed.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Alderman, as I read the, the amendment, so if someone's driving, um, you're suggesting that they cannot be counted as, as part of a quorum, uh, they can't vote, basically, right?
Yeah, so essentially, it would be like they were not physically present in the, on the floor of the board if they were driving a car, this is, we're in kind of this brave new world right now, where I think we're all trying to sort out the technology, uh, I think in an ideal world, this becomes moot pretty quickly, I'm hoping that we can move back to in-person meetings here and be done with, uh, a lot of these, uh, you know, technical issues, but uh, right now in the state of Missouri, a person who is driving a motor vehicle is tasked with exercising the highest degree of care. Uh, and that's, that's an even higher standard of care than a, than a surgeon in the middle of surgery. So it's, it's, um, I don't think it's appropriate to say, hey, I'm doing this at the same time that I'm on the floor of a legislative body. So if you need to drive, that's fine, you, you just kind of disappear from the, uh, from the floor, the second you pull your car over uh, and, you know, put it in park, you appear back on the floor.
Okay, so, may I ask you this, if, if, if a quorum requires four members of the Board of Aldermen and I start out in my office, and I'm clearly present, and I, on roll call, I say I'm present and I make a quorum. And then I leave and I start driving. Your suggestion is that we no longer have a quorum, is, is that right?
Uh, so if someone made a quorum call, you could pull over your, your car and, and, uh, you know, interact with the meeting. It, it'd be the same as if you walked off the floor of the Board of Aldermen or out of a committee here.
Yeah, yeah, but I'm, I'm kind of confused, because your language suggests that if you are driving, you cannot make a quorum. So if, if required five people make a quorum, and I'm driving, then we no longer have a quorum in that committee based on the language of this resolution, so the committee would not be able to conduct any business, basically.
So i- i- if someone made a quorum call, it'd be the exact same thing as if we started a, a committee hearing with five people and one person walked up to, uh, or walked out to use the restroom, uh, if someone in that committee hearing made a quorum call and there were only four people present, then you, you lose your quorum. Uh, if that person comes back into the room from the bathroom, or wherever they may be, uh, then they are back for the purposes of the forum vote, and, uh, you have quorum.
Okay, so the way to get around that, you just drive and, uh, don't speak there, for the most part, uh, to maintain your quorum. Um, I, I honestly think making a big deal out of, out of not much to me, um, I do find it very interesting and um, odd that you're sponsoring the amendment for an alderwoman that introduced the resolution. That is, but I have never seen that happen unless an alderman had an issue with a, um, a bill or a resolution and was adamant about, you know, they want to make this change on the floor in order to get this thing passed, I mean, that has certainly happened, but you know, I know that you and Alderman from the thirteenth have a pretty good relationship, and you are very good at working with your colleagues and helping them draft an amendment to their resolution would have not been an ordinary for you, I mean, because, you know, you're a very supportive person to your colleagues, it, the optics of this, it, it's, it, it just makes me you know, feel like, um, something else is going on, it doesn't look good to me at all. Um, it doesn't look good for the, all along the thirteenth ward, it doesn't look good for you. Um, it looks like some kind of game being played, but it doesn't matter, because it can achieve the same result at the end of the day. You know, I just wanted to share some of the same thoughts that, uh, Alderman from the twenty third shared, um. Look, so, uh, anyway, I'm done with the amendment, I'll speak more about the resolution, thank you.
Absolutely.
Right, thank you, Alderman from the twenty second, Alderman from the nineteenth.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Uh, this is so unfortunate, because, uh, am I listening to this amendment? It has changed the total essence of the original resolution, and, uh, if I had my way, it would go back to committee, because we need to start this conversation all over again, thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman, Alderman from the fifth.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, um, would the Alderman from the twenty fourth yield to a question, and I will add that my question may also apply to the, uh, bill itself, or to the resolution itself.
All right, no problem, Alderman from the twenty fourth, will you yield a question to the Alderman from the fifth?
Absolutely.
Alderman from the fifth, please proceed.
Yeah, I kind of want to go down in the weeds for just a little bit, if you don't mind, indulge me.
Absolutely.
It's, it's, from my reading of this, it's unclear exactly what while driving actually means, and I'm not going to Bill Clinton and there, there.
Depends on what your definition of is, is, Alderman.
Yes. Because is the intention of this, um, amendment to limit participation while someone is in a car behind the wheel and the vehicle is in motion? Or can the person actually participate by being in route, safely pulling their car over and participating either with a handheld device or over Bluetooth or whatever, while the car is not in motion? And I'm not really clear on that point from the amendment or the original resolution.
So Alderman, it would certainly be the second, uh, uh, as, as I had indicated before, if you're, if you're actually operating that motor vehicle, if you're driving the car, if the, it, it, then, then you would, in essence disappear from the committee meeting or the, uh, or the board meeting, uh, the second that, that your car is in park. Uh, you, you are no longer driving a car, uh, you are sitting in a car at that point, and, uh, uh, at that point uh, you would be able to vote, speak, uh, uh, you know, a- all of the uh, privileges and abilities that, uh, that every member of this board has.
And a secondary, a follow-up question, and who makes that determination whether the person, uh, is in the car and it's in motion, or is in the car and it stopped, who makes that determination?
Well, I think that either, you know, thi- this, it would be the same as a violation of any other rule, uh, the, the president of the board is kind of the umpire, uh, and then the board as a whole can vote to, uh, to disagree with the, the, the ruling of the chair, uh, on any interpretation of the rules, on any uh, calling of the rules.
Okay, with that, I yield back, thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, Alderman from the, uh, fifth, Alderwoman from the eighth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, um, I think, uh, as a, as someone who sits on the Rules Committee and had this discussion this week, I think part of the, the purpose of this amendment is to, to tighten it up a little bit, to tighten up the rule because as the underlying rule is written, um, you could participate. So if I was in the car driving right now, I could be participating in this discussion with you all, um, trying to keep up, keep up with everyone's arguments, keep up with, uh, perspectives, see what's going on in the chat, you know, um, see whose hands are up, that type of thing, um, while I'm driving. And what we're, what we're asking for is the same due care that we would have when we are in person at the Board of Aldermen, um, to participate in meetings. So, you know, there have been times where, um, you know, it, prior to the pandemic, we had multiple committees that were going at the same time, right? So I remember running back and forth between the Kennedy Room and the Leisure Room to make quorum or to weigh in on a bill or to make sure that I'm voting, that my vote is counted, that type of thing. Um, and if I had, if I, if I had a court hearing and I was not able to be present at a committee, then I wasn't able to participate. I wasn't able to vote. My vote was not counted. My wishes, my perspective was not included. Um, and, you know, when we moved to coming to Zoom, there were a number of things that, uh, you know, we could have addressed, you know, whether or not the, the chat box that we have over here is a public record or not. You know, like there, there are a lot of pieces of being virtual that, um, that maybe should be accounted for in our rules. And it is possible, you know, that there's maybe only a few more weeks of us meeting online, and I would hope that that's the case, that we can come back safely in person, um, together. But in the event that the pandemic resurges, um, or we, you know, have another emergency where the charter allows us to move online like this, that we have some rules in place just to protect our body, our rules are, are functioning and to set a really good example for our constituents here that, um, it, it's true that it is not illegal in the state of Missouri for us to be on a video call while driving our vehicles, but that doesn't make it right, and that doesn't make it safe. Um, and so I, you know, I really do liken this to showing up to a committee room, um, and, and being able to participate in that meeting. And, um, you know, I, I'm grateful for the flexibility. I've benefited from the flexibility of being particip- being able to participate from afar. Um, but I, I, I think it's, this is sort of the, the, the bare minimum for me that we, we operate safely, that we're, we're showing our constituents that we're, we're present, that we're paying attention. Um, and, you know, that I, I appreciate the, um, Alderman from the twenty-fourth for bringing, you know, the legal standard of the highest standard of care in the vehicles. And I, I would really hope that all of our citizens and all of our drivers in the, in the city of St. Louis would operate their vehicles with the highest standard of care. I think that would cut down on a lot of our accidents and, um, fatalities. So this is, uh, as we've been shown, um, but, but I think that we can, I, I don't see this as that big of a deal for us to just say, if I'm going to participate, I will pull my car over, um, and safely operate my phone and my vehicle. Um, and as far as the enforcement mechanism goes, um, the, the dialogue, I think, helped explain that a lot about, you know, making a quorum call. Um, if that, if you're not making a quorum call, well, then, you know, you're not, you're not changing the quorum count as long as you're, you're, you're still in the meeting. Um, and we had, we had two meetings going on at the same time yesterday where there were members of both committees that were on both calls at the same time, but that never would have happened when we were in person. You couldn't, you couldn't do that because you had to physically be in the room. Um, so it, it's kind of that equivalent, um, that was, that was acceptable yesterday. That helped committees establish quorum yesterday when folks had both meetings up at the same time. Um, but to, to even think about the potential of doing that while operating a vehicle, right? Like, that's just not, it's just not safe. Um, and, um, I, I, yeah, I, I just think that the, the potential other enforcement mechanism, I, I don't see this as any type of weaponization of folks who have emergencies that need to go pick up their children when our meetings run long or things like that. They can, they can still be listening to the meeting, um, can make that choice to pull over, um, to be heard for comment or for questions or for a vote. Um, but it's, you know, if, if someone is continually in their vehicle, participating in the meetings, it's not out of line for a fellow member of the Board of Aldermen to make a point of order to say, you know,
Alderman, Alderman, I think we're discussing the amendment now, so.
I, I'm not.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I think you're going into the broader bill.
Well, I'm not. I'm still talking about participating, um, because if someone is participating in a meeting, which is part of the amendment here, um, then a, a fellow member of the committee could say, point of order, could you please pull over? Right? That, and that's all it is. We're not kicking anybody out of a meeting. We're not saying that they can't participate any further, but just, can you please pull over? Um, and I, I, I think we can, um, I think we can, I think our body is capable of doing this. Um, so I appreciate the amendment. Um, I appreciate strengthening it because, um, it's, it's just about, it's about safety for us and for our constituents and to, to put our best foot forward as, um, as public servants. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Ald- Alderman from the twenty-third.
Yes, um, the, the other man brought the point now, trying to be in two meetings at the same time while driving your car. The Alderman from the twenty-fourth has an amendment that really isn't his, that's coming from someone else. I think we all agree you shouldn't drive and text and talk and do all these things. We do have hands frees in cars, but given all this, it seems like, um, this thing really should go back to committee. I, I'm going to make a motion. We send it back to committee. Get it correct. Bring it out so we can all vote on what should be the correct version of this done by the sponsor and not, you know, and if you have amendments to it, make your own amendments. If I have one, I guarantee you it'll be in my name. So I make a motion that we send this back to committee to do it right.
It's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-third that we send Resolution one seventy-eight back to committee and attain a second on that motion.
Second.
Second.
Second by Alderman from the fifth and a number of others. Uh, any further discussion on, we're on the motion to refer? Any further discussion on the motion to refer? And this is just a motion to refer. Alderman from the seventh.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I do have a comment on the, the motion to refer. I, I guess if folks' underlying issue is the premise here, you know, whether or not you should be able to drive participated meetings, if, if that's the concern, why don't we just move forward with the amendment and take a vote on the underlying resolution as, as opposed to sending it back to committee? I mean, I think the amended language certainly clears things up somewhat as to sort of what you can and cannot do if you're driving a vehicle, uh, during, during one of our meetings. I mean, if we send it back to committee, I, I don't know what's going to change. We're just going to have this conversation again next week. Um, I, I frankly would rather just, we, we get it over with now while it's, uh, it's still relevant and we're meeting remotely. I'm, I'm hoping this is all moot, uh, come, come our new session. Um, so I'm going to oppose sending it back to committee just because I'd, I'd rather, uh, discuss the underlying resolution and get this done today. Thanks.
Right. Any further discussion on reference to, referring it back? Alderman from the twenty-seventh.
Uh, uh, that, no, sir, because this is not about referring to committee.
Okay, uh, going down the list, it looks like the alderman from the, before we get to the alderman from the third, Alderman from the twelfth, is your question about referring it to committee?
It is indeed, Mr. President. Um, whoa, let me lower that hand. Oh, thanks. Um, I agree with the Alderman of the seventh, who is, of course, the chairman of the Rules Committee. Um, and that it, this conversation strikes me as not being an issue with the amendment itself, but rather its presentation and the procedural, uh, presentation of it. So I, I agree with the Alderman of the seventh, and I oppose sending it back to committee um, on the basis that the issue does not lie with the amendment itself so much as it lies with uh, the method in which it was presented to this board. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Alderman from thirteen.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Uh, I'm frankly quite surprised that, uh, no one else was helping other people on their, on their resolutions and rule change. Um, the discussion that the Alderman from the, the twenty-fourth and I had about this was, you know, what's the intent of the resolution? I, when, when first drafting this resolution and presenting it, um, it was about being counted as present. So if you're present in the meeting, you know, there's two definitions of that. One could be you're there for a roll call, you're there, you know, actually present.
Point of order. Alderman, please. Alderman from twenty-third, please state your point of order.
We're discussing whether it should go back to committee, not discussing the points of the, the, the bill, the resolution itself.
Right. Uh, Alderman from thirteen, please, uh, keep your, um, comments, comments germane to the, the need to send it back to committee or not.
Thank you. My point is that the intent of this resolution is not changing. The language is being strengthened and, um, a lawyer on our board has agreed to present that change in order to help make the points better than I might be able to. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Uh, any further discussion, any further discussion? It's been moved by the Alderman from twenty-third, second by Alderman from twenty-fifth, that we should refer Resolution.
Point of order. It was not seconded by the Alderman from the twenty-fifth.
From the fifth that we, uh, refer Resolution one seventy-eight back to committee. Um, Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderman Tyus?
Aye.
Alderman Middlebrook?
Aye.
Alderman Basley?
Aye.
Alderman Evans?
Aye.
Alderman Page?
Aye.
Alderman Negracia?
No.
Alderman Colder?
No.
Alderman Rice?
No.
Alderman Gunther?
No.
Alderman Ballmer?
Nope.
Alderman Martin?
No.
Alderman Stevens?
No.
Alderman Schweitzer?
No.
Alderman Howard?
No.
Alderman Green?
No.
Alderman Ottenberg?
No.
Alderman Peel? Alderman Tye?
No.
Alderman Davis?
Aye.
Alderman Spencer?
No.
Alderman Mohammed?
No.
Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Bacaro?
Aye.
Alderman Orion?
No.
Alderman Khan?
No.
Alderman Clark Hubbard?
No.
Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
President Reed?
Aye.
Alderman Peel?
No.
Ten aye votes and eighteen no votes.
By vote, you fail to sustain motion, Alderman from the twenty-third. Now we're back to the, the amendment. Alderman from the twenty-second.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Uh, with the alderman from the eighth ward, you?
Alderman from the eighth, will you yield a question to the Alderman from the twenty-second?
I will.
Uh, Alderman, do you really believe that someone could be in two Zoom calls while driving a vehicle at the same time?
It is possible, yes.
Highly unlikely, right?
Sure.
I mean, you think about the, the navigations that you'd have to do to be in two at one time because I sat here in two meetings at the same time. And it's not an easy task at all when you're trying to listen simultaneously to two meetings. So I, 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 I just highly disagree with you that it's, it's not even practical, I don't think, uh, without having an accident for sure.
That was a very minor point of what I was trying to make, but I was saying there was a possibility.
Okay, so it was just filler to justify, uh, the amendment, right?
It was, it was a piece of the conversation that I felt was relevant to bring, but it was not the entire point.
Okay. Thank you for yielding.
Right. Any further?
No further questions.
All right. Any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderman from the twenty-seventh.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, it, the, the discussion that I'm having is, I brought this up earlier when they had the, uh, Engrossment Committee meeting in regards to this bill. And what I told them was, it seems like, uh, the alderwoman from the thirteenth is, one, making, putting, bringing up a trust issue within the Board of Aldermen. I think everybody on this board is an adult and everybody is respectful of our laws. And so they went to the extreme to say they would make you show your camera to see if you were driving. And I think that is disrespectful in regards to me as an elected official because I don't have to lie to you and I'm an adult. And then two, my question was in regards to the rules. How is this rule going to be enforced? Because we have a lot of rules on the Board of Aldermen and trust me, they have not been enforced. And so is this going to be convenient for when it's on, for you all to enforce these rules? Or is this something that's ongoing? And then third, you are saying, well, the president could make the decision and he's not at every meeting. So it's no way that he'll be there to make a, a recommendation or a decision. And so I'm pretty sure, I don't know about you because you all are youngsters to me. So I'm pretty sure that I'm going to follow the rules because I'm a rule follower. But the question is, how many of you are going to be upholding those rules that you're trying to put out here? And I do know time has changed. And when we get through with it, the state is already looking at laws in regards to this. And I'm pretty sure that we have laws on the book about texting and driving and talking on the phone and driving, but they don't have anything to say. You cannot be on your phone and be free to use your Bluetooth to be on a call. So I just feel like this is a, another plot to take the black people's votes away because that's who's being targeted. So since all you progressives out there on Twitter and you putting all this stuff on Facebook and on Twitter, you make sure you put that out there. Again, you're trying to take the black person's vote away because you are penalizing them because they have families and they don't just sit at home all day. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman from the twenty-seven. Alderman from the twelfth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I apologize for the shaky camera. I'm having to charge my, uh, lip here. Um, so, uh, but, Mr. President, I would like to speak on the resolution, uh, very briefly. The aforementioned, uh, statute that the Alderman of the twenty-seventh notes.
Point of order.
Point of order. Please state your point of order.
Are we speaking on the resolution or the amendment?
We're speaking about the amendment, amendment number one to the resolution.
Okay, thank you.
But I believe the Alderman from the twelfth said he wants to speak on the resolution.
He did.
Uh, that is correct. That is correct. I apologize and I yield back. Thank you for, uh, for pointing that out, Alderman, the first.
I was, Alderman from the twelve, I was assuming that you meant the, um, the amendment.
My apologies.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, thanks, everyone. Uh, Alderman from the, Alderman from the eleventh.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, I do think this has gotten a little, uh, heated and a little, um, kind of off the rails here. Um, I, we would be expect, we wouldn't be counted present when we were in person. We wouldn't, for years and years, decades, whatever, we wouldn't have been counted present if we weren't in the chamber, ever. And we made a commitment to the voters and I'm a mom. I get it. It's hard sometimes. We're juggling a lot. You can, you know, this, you can pull over if you have to. Um, but I don't see how this rule is any different than having to be present in the chamber. We wouldn't have allowed driving while zooming then. I don't see how this is particularly targeting anyone. Um, and I think we really, this is really common sense and we really have to get back to the nature of this amendment. And again, this is only changing our rules, not in ordinance. So I just want to remind everyone. Thank you.
All right. Uh, Alderman from the third.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I think people pointed it out a few times. We are within our, our in state law able to, to do this. I, I don't know why we are pretty much saying that folks are not smart enough to be able to read and write at the same time. You, I mean, with a I mean, with the alderwoman from the thirteen, yield for questions about, just yield for questions.
All right, alderman from thirteen, we yield a question to alderman from the third. Alderman from.
What is the definition of participation? As it remains to this ordinance? Is it defined? What is, what is to participate? Because there are different types of ways to participate, to act participation. You got listening when you, what is participation?
That's a very good question. In this case, it means speaking in a, in a meeting, you know, if you're, if you're recognized and giving and participating, participating in debate, uh, voting, definitely does not limit anyone's ability to, to listen to the meeting at all.
Is it defined or outlined what participation is here in the bill or in this resolution?
So with this, I assume you're speaking about the amendment. With the amendment, the idea is that you're, you're, you're right. I mean, being present at a, at a meeting was the part I think that was hard to define in the, the resolution as it was written.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Thank you. And so, so that to me is why this, this amendment was needed. So it, it did clarify what it meant to be present, because, you know, being present is the definitely the original intent of the resolution was that people wouldn't be participating in the meetings if they're driving. And that wasn't clear enough in the original resolution. I had some feedback around that. And then the amendment's goal was to clarify that. Uh, so if, if you have any belief that there's further clarity needed to the, the amendment, I'm half, I'm all ears. But I, I do think that the amendment strives to, to demonstrate what that means, whether, you know, whether you're speaking, voting, participating in debate, that, that is what being, being participating means in this, in this amendment.
Right. Is, is once again, the question is, is it defined in the resolution? Is it defined in this resolution or in this amendment?
I believe it is.
What line?
I, I believe that the, the amendment defines what is and isn't allowed by this rule.
What I'm saying as far as.
Any manner, and then there's a clause that says including voting and speaking, um, which I, I believe is the definition of may participate any manner than the clause, including voting and speaking. So that is, that is the, the clause that defines participating.
Okay, but there's, there is no definition there as far as defining participation?
I think we're gonna have to disagree on that.
Okay. All right, that's fine. Um, my next question would be in particular let's, let's just throw the hypothetical out there. Um, we sometime have five hour long meetings. You cannot predict when these meetings start. I mean, not, not when they end, but you can definitely dictate or predict when they start, correct?
Yes.
We know when the meetings start, but we don't know when they end.
Yes.
Is it also of your observation that sometimes there's absolutely no plan that you can make that the Board of Aldermen at some point in time can change based on us having the ability to call meetings twenty four hours before a, a meeting needs to be held, correct?
I, I apologize, you were breaking up a little bit. I, I need you to repeat that.
Sorry about that. So the question was, so, so it's okay to assume, I guess, is, is it in your experience that you've been called into meetings that you most, that you didn't plan for or did not know about the week before?
Yes.
All right, so it's in your experience that the Board of Aldermen within twenty four hours can call a meeting just like that regardless of your prior plans, regardless of what's going on, even if we did not have this planned out a week prior, correct?
Sure.
With that being said, um, and us having very, very long meetings, this makes it difficult for an individual who plans out their, their, their day, just like people in the regular world do, or the regular world, just regular people who are not or are regular people, individuals who are not elected, uh, they get to plan, they get to, to, unless you on call. We're like forever on call, which means a lot of us, especially on the north side of St. Louis, we spend a whole lot of time in our vehicles, driving from place to place. Going from one side of our ward to the other side of the ward. We actually pick up children and take them to school that are not our children. There are a lot of different issues and problems that exist with on our side of town that you all don't deal with at all. Um, like, like period. There are so many different issues that we can go down the list on. We have I can go to CSB now and look at the different types of problems and issues your side of town has versus my side of town, with needs, my immediate representation sometimes. You don't have shootings, you don't have a gang of stuff going on, which requires you to hop in the car and actually physically be present in places while you're physically present at a meeting. You know, so with those things being said, it takes one second to vote on something, just a second. Um, and, and I think what you're implying is that the one second that it takes for you to say yes on a vote to participate in a meeting while operating a vehicle is, is as how would I say, oh, is obstructive to some degree, is you being able to pay attention as you pressing a button on your radio. So my question, do you listen to the radio in your car?
Yes.
Do you change the radio by finger, or do you talk to your car and tell it to go to ninety five point five? Do you actually physically touch the buttons in your vehicle?
Yeah.
When you change the radio while driving?
Yes.
Another question, while driving, do you lift your head up and look out of the rearview as we all are supposed to? Just a question.
Yes, I, I follow safety guidelines in my vehicle when I'm driving.
Do you find yourself sometimes having to look out your left side of your rearview? I mean, the left side of you, your left mirror or your right mirror, and take your eyes off the front of the road while doing so?
Yes, I, again, I, I safely drive.
Just, yes, no question, respectfully.
Yes.
Ken, do you know anybody who can see completely left and right at one time?
No.
So it's safe to say that at some point in time, when you're driving a vehicle, regardless of whether you, whether or not on the phone or not, you are always not looking forward, because your job is to look at the surroundings around you. So you're not always focused on what's in front of you, correct?
Correct.
So it's safe to say when you're driving, you're multitasking all the time, correct?
While dri, yes, to drive, you have to.
While driving. Understood. So do you have accidents because you are pressing buttons on your radio?
People do have accidents during that, yes.
Understood. Well, it definitely happens, but the state and car manufacturers and all of those other entities that have looked at the way that people change their radios and have said to themselves, you know what, we need a better way to do it. So what they do? They put it behind the steering wheel, so opposed to you having to look down, you can press it while looking up, but you just press the button, right? In some cars, in some vehicles.
Yes.
Correct. So is it of your opinion that inside of a car, the buttons, knobs, all of the things that you are supposed to touch while operating that vehicle can distract you from driving, just as pressing one button for one second would be to say yes to, to, to a vote?
Yes.
So it takes longer, do you think, to change, to get to the radio station that you are, you know, of course you got presets, we may have presets. Do you think it takes longer to get to your radio station of choice than it would take for you to say aye?
Yes.
So it would take longer for you
Yes.
To operate the radio than it would for you to say aye?
No, I, I think it would take longer to say, have to deal with your phone to get back to the Zoom meeting and say, aye, yes, I do. About as long as I think it would take for someone to pull over their car and say aye at that time.
Well, that's not absolutely true. It takes a second to say aye, aye, just like that. To pull over your car, you have to look left, look right, be distracted. Once again, you have to be distracted just to pull your vehicle over and say, let me get to a safe side of the road. Let me, what if you're on the highway, right? We're in a four hour meeting, five hour meeting. A person's been sitting here all day long, and now you gotta go pick up your kid. Now what happens when you hop in that car and when it's your time to vote? Or it finally gets to you, because we talked a long time. We've been on there since ten o'clock. So people have meetings and other things that are set up that's going into what it is that they set up. And that's okay, because we're here and we're supposed to be doing the people's work. The people's work also require us to have what exactly what we're trying to give, a comfortable life that live-work-balanced life. You still got things that you gotta do. So I'd like to go around at some point in time, and I'm gonna ask every one of you who wanna ask wants to answer the question. You got kids. And for you all who don't have, uh, uh, school-aged kids, you are basically telling the individuals who do that you're penalized for having duties. Yeah, your duty to your city is your duty. But we got five hour meeting, something that we did not plan for, and I have to go pick up my children in the middle of that meeting, I have something to say, or I have to take a vote. You're telling me if I'm stuck in traffic, because at four or five o'clock in the afternoon, traffic is crazy in some of these highways. You know, so I'm stuck in traffic, I have to get on side of the world, hurry up, pull over just so I can say aye, while being uh, on a timeframe to go pick up a child, or on a timeframe to go handle something else that was not planned uh, to be handled based on us being in a job where you are forever on call. And that is okay, once again, it's okay. That is why, once again, they made provisions and different things for us to do, or different ways for us to communicate during the time where this pandemic exists. What you think Zoom was created for? Hands-free talking. It's for having meetings when you're not around. It's the reason why there's a hands-free model there. It's the reason why they created car mounts. There's a reason why the police, right now, right this day, the individual was supposed to protect and serve us, have hands-free, uh, uh, some of them, you know, can talk hands-free in their car, but they, the ones that we asked to protect and serve, got a computer sitting in the middle of the console that they utilize while they're moving. You actually are accidentally driving from place to place while they're clicking buttons, looking down, trying to figure out how to get to a location, but we are inefficient and we're unintelligent enough to say aye. But our police officers, the individuals who are going to emergency calls, utilizing emergency equipment in emergency situations, they're expected to pick up the, they can cross themselves over, hey, they can make all these calls, do whatever it is they need to do, but we can't have a conversation with the government. Now, we're not telling our citizens there are more efficient ways to do things, because the citizens of this city, what you're saying is we lead an example and give them an example of how, uh, you know, best to practice and do things in a way where it's safe, then you gotta know. Us saying that we're not going to do this while driving does not give them any better way or example of how to do it while driving, because they're within the, the, you know, they're, they're perfect, um, they're within their, their, um, uh, I'm sorry, ability, their legal rights to do what it is we're saying we won't do. So we're not giving them example of how to do it better. We're just saying, you know what, we won't do it, period, and we hope you don't either. Now, we don't tell, we can't tell you how to do what you're doing. We just say we won't do it. You all go ahead and do what you do, but just for us, we're gonna keep us safe. We care about the board, not the rest of the city. We care about this board. We care about every single one of you, aldermen. We, we want you, yes, vote, all you know, but we don't want you to be driving while doing it. You know, that's you know, we want you to show the rest of the city, that's the wrong way to do it, and just don't do it, period. But we not put no PSAs out there. I ain't heard about no money going out here to all these different organizations that got out here and talked, and everybody had something to say about participating while we're doing these things. Ain't nobody put no money up and say, we're gonna do something for these victims of the families that's out here. Nobody from the board that's supporting this has come out and said that those individuals who have been victims of this or this or that, we gotta fund now. We're gonna do something particularly to help those individuals. We keep talking about the worst stretch of the entire city, that they reference, um, you know, during the committee hearing, or somebody else, I forgot who said it. It was Alderman Gunther, somebody. My apologies, I'll take that back. But one of the individuals had the nerve to say, I have the worst stretch of of vehicular places in, in the, in the, what is the city? And that's false. I have the worst stretch of vehicular homicides and manslaughter in the entire United States, the worst stretch, which is on Natural Bridge. And that don't come from distracted driving, that I can tell you. So we wanna clean some stuff up and get individuals to follow behind our lead, and we wanna lead by example. We gotta give them something as an example. This ain't an example. What it's saying is, we run away from the problems. Whenever it gets to a point where there's something that needs to be thought out, the best way for the government to deal with it is just to make it disappear. We good at making stuff disappear. That's what the city do all the time. We don't try to deal with our problems. You make us disappear on the north side, you make our issues disappear here. I mean, not our issues, but you get, make our resources disappear. I won't go into that, because now I'm getting off of the, the actual amendment. But the point that I'm making is one hundred percent, if the government is supposed to be in a intent, is it, is to show everybody else that there's a safer way to drive and do this, then you're not giving them an example. All you're telling the city is, don't utilize the, the resident service, don't utilize your, your, uh, your rights. You have the right to do this, but don't do it. We're telling you, just don't. We're lawmakers. And if that's something we wanna push for, then maybe we need to be talking to the state and ensuring that they allow what it is we trying to do too. But realistically, this does not improve the public safe and healthy, if not one individual in this city, because we're not providing an example of how to do it better, which is our job. So if we can't participate, just say yes, we can't have a conversation and teach the folks how to do it better, then you can't expect not a one individual in this city to do it better, because we're not giving them an example. So with that being said, I'm one hundred percent am against this resolution, against the amendment. I think that it most certainly is racist in nature, and I, and I, and I believe that one hundred percent is wild. It's weird, very, very weird, number one. I'm gonna throw that out there. Yeah, I act like y'all, man, we, some of us got kids. And if I went through the list right now, most of y'all don't have no school-aged kids that are, that are on this resolution as a sponsor. You all have had kids before, maybe older children, but y'all don't have the same responsibilities as every, you know, as other folks. So with that being said, just because you ain't got nothing to do during the day, and you sit in your office all day, and you have a, 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 a small amount of work to do that's outside in the streets, I'm in the streets in my community, and I have to drive to get there. Thank you. Oh, sorry, I didn't, I didn't mean to say it like that. Alderwoman Schweitzer, would you like to respond? No, wouldn't be in disrespect.
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. With that, I yield, sir.
All right, thank you. Um, alderman from the fourteenth. I'm having technical problems here. Alderman from the fourteenth.
I'm having some problems here. I just, I, I, you know, we, we're coming to the end of being at the pandemic. I think this is a a solution looking for a problem at this point. I, I just don't see the point in going forward with this. Hopefully, we'll be back in the, the office together. And I think as adults, we're all capable of making our own decisions. And everybody has different needs, as the alderman from the third, the fifth, third, third just mentioned. We all, third, correct. Um, you know, I, I think, you know, as adults, I think we're capable of, of making our own judgments, our own decisions. And I think we're wasting a lot of time on something that really doesn't need attention at this point. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you, alderman. Uh, alderman from the sixth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I just wanted to mention a few things. I am in support of this resolution. Um, I disagree that we are at the end of this pandemic. None of us have numbers to prove that's the case. Uh, we also don't know what's gonna happen in the future. This was the first time in a very long time something like this has happened. And so um, regulating our body and, and getting us all on the same page in terms of safety, no one has mentioned the really awful statistics that we have in terms of crash rates and pedestrian fatalities in the city of St. Louis. So not only would this resolution protect each alderman on this board, but it would also protect the public with whom we're interacting while people are driving. Um, I also want to mention that, um, I've spent the past nine years. My, my little kids were, um, three and five when I started at the board, and my daughter was in high school. I completely understand that it would be really valuable for me to be in two different places at once. It would have made this job much easier. It would have eased a lot of the tensions that I have experienced with my family, uh, because I let them down constantly when I'm at a nine or ten hour board meeting. Um, even ones that pop up in August with minimum wage or, or other issues. Um, it is my duty to serve the citizens of St. Louis and to be absolutely present at all of these meetings. And driving while doing that is a luxury that we have not had until now, or even doing it from home. I've, I've experienced, um, you know, I was able to help my kids through a year of schooling while sitting at home, because the board was not in session. Um, STL TV, the assistant clerk, our, our, our clerk, our other staff, don't have the luxury of doing the things that the alderman from the third is insinuating that we should be able to do, just because we have this special set of circumstances. And I don't disagree that, you know, there are some wards that have quite a bit more need than other wards, but, but leaving a, a meeting to go pick up a kid, or to attend a doctor's appointment, or to do a number of other things is, is not been historically what we've had, what we've been able to do at the board. And so I, I just wanted to say, um, also that waiting for the state to act on this is, um, an absurd thought. The state is never acting in the best interest of local governments. We've seen that over the past ten, fifteen, twenty years in our Missouri legislature. And, um, I, I think this is a really simple thing that we can do to gesture to citizens and advocacy organizations, that the, um, community of disabled folks, community of pedestrian and cyclists that, um, are really counting us to just do the safe thing and the right thing the right way. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, alderman from the first. Uh, Alderman from the first.
Sorry, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I would like to uh, stand in opposition to the amendment. And I would like to answer the Alderman from the third ward's uh, question. Um, when he asked about if there were definitions in this uh, even, either the amendment or the resolution itself, it is not, is one of the flaws that I saw immediately. This is what happens when we have people who don't know how to write uh, legislation. Uh, if you go on to um, the revised Missouri statutes of people who writes legislation a little better, the first thing you'll see is they will define what driving is, what participation is. Um, and so what I did when this resolution first came to light was I went online and said, let me look and see what's legal and what's not. So I started looking, I, I go through revised Missouri statutes trying to see what does it uh, what does it say? And um, I did send a note out to all the, all the people because what it, what I found out, and I wanna say, I don't, I am fortunate enough, I have a vehicle that does um, audio texting. So if you, as soon as I get in my car, my phone hooks up to my system. And then it will, and it will prevent me from doing manual texting. But I can do audio text, texting, and then I can send back a text because that allows that and that is a good safety feature. I have cameras so I can look to see what the side of the car or the SUV is. And, and, and I try to get those kind of safety features. And when this first came up, I was thinking about distracted driving. But I got more distracted about when people say, take people's vote away. Um, that just is a red flag for me as a black person that has had to have two constitutional amendments to be able to vote. So I am not the person who supports taking people's votes away or overreaching. And I think this amendment overreaches. Um, I am pro-choice and I give money to Planned Parenthood. But I was one of the strong advocates against the sex, many of the same group of people who came out and wanted us to have a rule that you couldn't protest outside of a Planned Parenthood, overreaching. That's what this thing does here, it's overreaching. Um, Resolution 178. Um, as, especially, and it gets more overreaching with the amendments. I'm more opposed to the amendment than the original resolution. And I'm also opposed to both of them because they don't define. When the Alderman from the 13th says, well, I think it says this, that's because you didn't define it. This is how you define something. The definition of driving is, the definition of participation is, that's what you do with definitions. For those of you all who don't believe me, because I don't play a lawyer as the Alderman from the 22nd Ward likes to say. I am one and been one longer than all of you all down here. Okay, and so don't believe me, go and look in the revised Missouri statutes where it'll show you how to write. So learn how to write the legislation is what I first wanna say, okay? Because this is poorly written. And that's the first thing I saw when you say not driving. Um, and that, but in going to the revised Missouri statutes, I wanted to see what it says. So revised Missouri statutes 304820 bans text messaging and all other use of handheld mobile devices while operating in motor, motor vehicle for drivers over 21, which I don't like because that should be for everybody. And I hear that they're clearing it up now. Don't make any difference if you're 21 or 29, like I celebrated 29 for a lot of years. You still should not be using a handheld device. Um, but the law currently doesn't apply to drivers over the age of 21. But I hear that addressing that in Jeff, Jeff City. But the law applies to text messaging, blah, 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 reading, writing, electronic email, all of that. And also talks about bus drivers, okay? But what the law does permit is the use of voice operated technology or hand free devices. So like I said, if it wasn't for the voting, I would be over there working with the Alderman from the 13th and others about what can we do about this? But because whenever you get into the voting, you're never gonna get me. You're never gonna get me because it's very bored, stripped me of my right to vote. And you're not gonna get me because my grandmother, I stood in line for her to be able to vote. And you're especially not gonna get me in Black History Month, though we actually, you were so tone deaf that you brought this up in Black History Month. That is just beyond all everything to me. And then to have some people say to me, uh, say to us, oh, well, oh, you, this is getting out of line. When you're stepping on my toe, and I keep telling you, you stepping on my toe, you say, oh, there's nothing wrong with your toe. It's just you being too sensitive. No, it's you being too arrogant and tone deaf, that's what it is. So I went to look up, the law permits the use of voice operated technology of hand free this device. Well, I never had to use, uh, I have a hands free device because it gets into my car. But then I said, well, let me see how this thing works with Zoom. So I went and got a thing that you put your, I, and I use iPad more than a phone. You put your phone in this device and I put it right up so that it's in my, then when you put it up, I can look right in it, just like this. In fact, I can do it better than I can reach down to change my radio. So I was like, oh, well, I never knew about this. So I do wanna thank you for bringing this up because I am a research person. Well, once you put that up, long as your face is seen, that is equal to being on the floor of the Board of Aldermen. I don't know, uh, the Alderman from the 11th is saying, uh, says, says something about the floor of the Board of Aldermen. The whole reason that we have that rule is so that it used to be people wanted to yell from outside the, over by the clerk's office. But we needed to see your face to make sure who was voting. And when we started doing Zoom calls, which when I was the chair of the rules, we did the first Zoom call. And then I started insisting, we had to see your face. Because some people were saying, well, why do you say that? And I would go to them saying, it's just like us being required to be on the floor. But when you put this handheld device up like this, you don't have to look at it because they see my face and I could still look at the windshield. I can look at my rearview mirrors. I can look at my cameras, I can do everything. I also have a Bluetooth. So I was like, wow. And I will tell you, I was that person, people on caucus know that, I would say, are you zooming? Then maybe you need to pull over. So I learned something about how that worked that I didn't know, okay? I, I, and I don't zoom while I'm driving. But if I had to, I now got a thing that will hold my device and I can do that. And it doesn't require me to take away my attention from the driving. In fact, if I got kids in my backseat, I got a dog barking, I got a radio that I look away to turn. Those are all things that take more of my attention than zooming while driving. So what we're talking about now and why I'm opposed to both the amendment, which is poorly written, and the resolution is because we're talking about making a law to take away people's votes for something that is legal in the state of Missouri. I did not find any state law as it relates to zooming while driving. Zooming while driving is, is legal. So we have all these people who, and I'm one of them, believe in the right to cho, of choice, that I get my, my decision, my body, my choice. Now, some people think that's murder. They say, when you make a decision about abortion, that's murder. And the people don't blink, many of these people down here, and they say, my body, my choice. But then they come up with this thing about other people's rights and choice. And I find it often with the same group of people. Like I said, they were down here pushing for the people not to be able to protest outside the abortion clinic. When they were downtown protesting and closing down streets and highways, which I fully supported them. So I don't like hypocrites is what I don't like. And I don't like people who overreach when you do not need to overreach. Um, so everybody has said, zooming and driving, oh, it's so bad. It is not, not if you do the proper equipment. If we had been talking about, how do we do this to make this safe? So that we can make an access though, so that people can be where they need to be. Of course, we have things different. We absolutely have things different than the first 20 something years I was down here, or 30, 25 years. Because we actually can have people from remote centers. Okay, is that bad? Is that something that's awful? Um, I, I heard people say that this started on Twitter. That's why I'm not on Twitter. Because people got all these good ideas, but they don't know how it affects everyone. When you wanna push your agenda down somebody's throat, but you don't want people to do that same thing to you, I find that just uh, uh, incomprehensible. And like I said, it's hypocritical. If you believe in your right to choose as a woman, and I do, then if somebody can safely drive, because this goes on to allow you to talk on, what I don't like about some things about this law, but what I do like, it allows you to drive and have your hand, your um, your uh, device mounted and you can talk on speakerphone and Bluetooth, that's an advance. What is wrong with an advance? Who came up with, oh, this is so horrible? So the bicycle riders say, well, this is unsafe. I'm gonna tell you, in my community, they hate those bicycle lanes. Um, when you put them up there, I got so many complaints about the bicycle lanes on Union. I could not believe it. They were like, you're taking up lanes for cars. But I believe that people ought to have bicycle lanes, so that's okay. I do not want anybody to be hit by a car. I actually have been hit by a car when I was a child, drunk driver. So that is a painful experience for not only yourself, but your parents and everything else. But this is legal. This is a legal right. And then adding to it, and I wanna make sure I under, this thing says, no Alderman or Alderwoman may participate in any manner, including voting and speaking at a meeting of the Board of Aldermen, a Board of Aldermen Committees, and shall not be counted as present at a meeting of the Board or a committee for purposes of a quorum and attendance if they are driving a vehicle. Alderman from the third asked a good question, uh, one of somebody about who decides if you're on a, uh, if you're in a vehicle and. What, again, doesn't say we're driving a vehicle. Who decides that? What if I have up a nice background like some of you have? And what if you don't see if I'm driving or not? And that is totally ridiculous to say, well, I'm gonna put it on the president because he's not at every committee meeting. And so uh, then who does it? Is this a committee chair? Is it a supportive of, by who, how many people say you are and you're not? You really can't tell if I don't want you to know that I'm driving. Okay, so I, again, overreaching and adding responsibility. Somebody else said, oh, we're getting ready to end this anyway. Then why are we doing it? What was the great rush to do it? Again, Twitter driven. I, I don't like Proposition D because it was driven to protect one person. I do not like things that come up on Twitter and they say, oh, this is what should happen. And uh, don't disregard anybody else in any parts of the city or other people who have different uh, priorities. You're just, okay, well, this came up, this is a good idea. We don't care what you think. And that is why we have such a splintered Board of Aldermen. And that's why most of progressives don't get along with the black Aldermen. And no matter how we tell you, stop doing this, you do not understand about how, and some of the senior white Aldermen, you don't understand about overreaching. You just think it comes to your head and it's a good idea. Talk, somebody talk about, oh, well, if you drive, you have to check chat. No, you don't. It's what you do. You turn chat off, you say, I'm driving, and you don't have to check chat. I have chat off now, I don't have to check chat. But if I have my device right here, I can still drive, I can still use my Bluetooth, and I can still continue to do what I need to do. Somebody talked about showing up to two committees at one time. When we did in person, we actually were courteous enough to people that sometimes we had to have people, and Alderman for Carl knows this for a fact because he's done it on many times, that we would have them go from room to room to go and make quorums. And the other chair would say, okay, Alderman for Carl, I'll let you know, send somebody over there. So this is not new about uh, being able to be at a couple of committees at a, a same time. I am not going to make, and nor am I going to vote to make something that is illegal, illegal because a few people think it is, that we can't let people vote or participate at the Board of Aldermen. As a black woman, I am gonna make it as easy as possible for people to vote. It is always so interesting to me that I get all of these things from the Democrats talking about how hard the Republicans wanna make things for people to vote. But here in the city of St. Louis, it's a lot of the white Democrats. The very ones that wanna know why black people don't show up to vote for things because you always picking at the black vote. You tear up the highest voting Democratic ward in the city. Oh, that was the 20th ward, voted higher than all the wards that was Democrat. And second and third all over. You'll come, you come with these things about reducing the number of all the automatic wars, not looking at how it's affecting negatively the black wards. We got these big, humongous wards now. And then people worry about, well, how come they don't have people? Because our people left because they, they had things that were done against them. But now you come with this just absolutely unnecessary amendment to our rules about, and taking people's right to vote away. Not let's show, let's come and come, come together and say, well, hey, we're worried about this. Is this something else we can do? You go straight to, take away their right to vote. And then you say, oh, and we wanna make it even stronger. We don't want them to participate at all. Absolutely not. I would never support this. And again, I find it offensive in Black History Month that we're having a conversation about taking people's vote away. I wanna make it easier for all the people to be able to vote as long as we're doing Zoom because we are giving people the right to participate. And they come down here to represent the people that represented and voted them in. And so there is nothing wrong with it. You got all, you, I heard the Alderman from the sixth said they had all of these uh, 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 this data, I thought I heard her say about driving. And I don't know if it's zooming or texting, because I still don't know how driving with your, your, your device right here, you're driving like this, I can see your face. I don't know how that is any more disruptive than those kids that the Alderman from the sixth said. Because if they're back there fighting or you got a dog barking or all the other things, or even just in a robust conversation with the person sitting next to you, all of those, all of those can take your attention away. So if we're gonna do driving while zooming, I wanna say you can't have kids in your backseat making any noise. You can't have your partner next to you having a conversation with you. You can't have your dog in the backseat barking. There's a whole bunch of things that are distracting and we cannot overreach. And this resolution itself is overreaching. And the uh, proposed amendment is further overreaching. And I am opposed to it. And I would ask for other people not to vote for the amendment so we can get to the heart of the resolution itself and we can also defeat that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman. Uh, Alderman from the 23rd.
Yeah, um, just quickly on both. I mean, on the, first off, on the Twitter, I guess the Alderman from the third is now decided to debate me on Twitter. Again, transparency. But what I am gonna say, if you look at the caucus, the black members, the majority are opposed to this, there's a big difference between hearing what the black members have to say and listening. I hear a lot of people tell me what, but sometimes you need to listen. They, I, I hear member after member of the caucus saying this is racist. I know that Alderman Boyd, he has to take her husband to the hospital. I guess she could leave him at home, stick him in a cab. But no, let's take her whole area's right to vote away. I know that Alderman Basley, you see him sometimes, and I don't know what purpose. Let's just take his right away. What, why should his, why should his neighborhood have any representation? Because he has to be somewhere in a car. Let's take the right away. You don't see, I have not seen any or that I know of any of the white Aldermen. I know I haven't done it. I, I know uh, President, the board hasn't done it. But the ones that seem to have done it have been the black members. Let's just take their vote away. Is anybody listening to what they're saying? Or you just hearing what they're saying? They feel this is extremely racist and I agree. I say, take their vote away if that's what you're saying. But then don't say it secretly, don't say it some sort of uh, secret amended, well, we won't actually, you know, this is the way we can do it without saying something. Say it. If you don't want them to vote, damn it, if you don't want, you know, uh, Basley, Alderman Basleys or Alderman Boyd's neighborhood, they have a vote, then say it. Quit doing this behind the scenes. They've been talking and saying, they're saying this in meetings, they're begging. I've seen them literally in tears over this stuff. Quit listening, start hearing what they have to say. Let's vote this down because it's the right thing to do, but do whatever you want. But quit being a clown. But quit being a closet racist. If you're going to be a racist, be it out front. And I'm sorry, and I have no problem. I know that people like to say stuff about me that's absolutely, absolutely untrue. Nobody has lived through this like I have. I was a member of Core. I don't know how many of the progressives can even tell you what Core is back when it meant something. Do whatever you want to do. I can't support this. I will support the black members of my committee. I support Pam Boyd. I support Alderman Basley. I can't support this. And if you want to debate me, do it on here. You don't need to do this on Twitter. And if you don't believe me, go to Twitter. That I'm being mean to anyone in particular. I'm not. But if you want to be a racist, do it out front. Otherwise, quit being closet racist. Because I know I'm not and I'm tired of being accused of stuff. And I appreciate and have great respect. I can fight with, with Alderman Tyus and we've done it. We publicly fought. But I have a lot of respect for her. And then at one time, did she ever go to Twitter or Facebook? Not one time did anybody on Twitter say, oh, well, Alderman Baccaro's being awful mean to Alderman Tyus. No. Because she's black, maybe that was the reason. I don't know what the reason was. Apparently.
Point of order, Mr. President. I think we're off track here.
And I agree, and I am, and I will back off. But I can't support this. And I am going to stick with the caucus on this amendment and on this bill. But if you feel we need to take the right of, of, of people that live in disenfranchised neighborhoods to vote, then vote for this. Otherwise, vote against it.
All right, thank you, Alderman from twenty-third. Um, any further discussion on the amendment? Any further discussion on amendment? It's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-fourth, second about Alderman from the thirteenth that we adopt amendment number one.
Roll call.
Going to request roll call. Madam Clark, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus?
No.
Alderman Middlebrook?
No.
Alderman Basley?
No.
Alderman Evans?
No.
Alderman Page?
No, based on language clarity.
Alderman Gracia?
Aye.
Alderman Carter?
Aye.
Alderman Rice?
Aye.
Alderman Gunther?
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer?
Present.
Alderman Moran?
Aye.
Alderman Stevens?
Aye.
Alderman Switzer?
Aye.
Alderman Howard?
No.
Alderman Green?
Aye.
Alderman Altenberg?
Present.
Alderman Peel? Alderman Todd?
Oh.
Alderman Davis? Alderman Spencer? Alderman Mohammed? Alderman Boyd?
No.
Alderman Vacaro?
No.
Alderman Orion?
Aye.
Alderman Con?
Aye.
Alderman Clark Hubbard?
Aye.
Alderman Boyd?
No.
President Reed?
No.
Alderman Peel?
Aye.
Alderman Davis?
No.
Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed? Thirteen, aye votes.
Excuse me, uh, clerk, you have me for a no.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, baby.
Alderman from the, uh, twenty-six. There was someone else that had raised their hand, uh, but they took it down.
I didn't raise my hand.
Okay, all right, go ahead.
Thirteen, aye votes. Twelve, no votes, and two voted present.
By vote, you fail the same motion of Alderman from the twenty-fourth. Um, amendment number one fails. Now, as before us is the vote on Resolution one seventy-eight. Um, any discussion? Uh, Alderman from the twenty-second.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I was wondering if the alderwoman from the thirteenth would yield a question.
Alderman from thirteen, we yield the question to Alderman from the twenty-second.
Sure.
Yes, Alderman, um, what happened, um, to, um, bring about this resolution?
I had been seeing the information about, um, road deaths due to distracted driving and noticing that members of our body were participating in that and wanted to, uh, do something about it.
Were you not called out on Twitter as one of the people that was tagged from someone saying that the Board of Aldermen should do this?
I was tagged, yes.
Okay. Uh, so it really kind of came up about Twitter. I mean, that's kind of how it really started to blossom. Wouldn't you agree?
That wasn't where I first heard the information, but that is where I was tagged about this exact kind of way to get involved.
Let me ask you this. Um, I think I heard you say this was all about public safety, right?
Yes.
Okay. Um, do you believe that, um, Aldermen should have cameras in their wards, uh, when their constituents are telling them that they want it because they're afraid to call the police?
Yeah, I think people can have cameras.
Okay. Um, if, if this is such a big issue and a concern, why limit it to the Board of Aldermen? Why not just make a board bill and make it illegal in the whole city of St. Louis?
I wanted us to lead by example.
Um, not that I know of any E and A member who have zoomed while driving, but why not include them? Why not include, um, other county office holders?
The rule change seemed like a straightforward way to do it. And it seemed at the time of bringing it up that there would be enough support for the change.
So you think that twenty-nine people, just the members of the Board of Aldermen, can set such a great example that other citizens wouldn't zoom and drive?
I think we could attempt to, yes, sir.
Okay. You, you don't think it would be more plausible to find options for the members of the Board of Aldermen to be able to vote rather than take their vote away from them?
Yeah, I appreciate, oh, all right, sorry, you finished?
I would just say during these times.
Yeah, I hear you. And I, and one of the things that I think is so great about the way that we collect votes is that there is an opportunity. If you aren't able to vote when your name is called, your name will be called again. So there's, you know, many, many, many seconds, um, plenty of time to pull over uh, before you would need to register your vote. So I do think that, that this gives people time to, to do that. Um, as well as, you know, you know, the order that you might be called in a meeting based on the hands that have come up. Mr. President, it was always great about calling people in order. Uh, so again, you'd also be able to pull over to participate in the meeting in discussion in that way.
Now, you would agree that, uh, zooming while driving is legal, right?
Yes.
Okay. So I may ask you this. How many aldermen have been in an accident or caused an accident because they were zooming and driving?
This is trying to make sure that that number stays zero.
Oh, okay. Um, if, if you're so concerned about being on camera and seeing what they're doing, why not just make it a rule that every member must always one hundred percent of the time be on video?
Uh, yeah, I, I hear you. That's a really interesting point. Um, I think it's, you know, I, I only go off video if I'm kind of walking away from the screen. Besides that, I stay on video. And I, I do think that that's how I personally choose to, to participate in the meetings. And that's just not what this rule attempts to address, though.
Right, but I personally choose to, and I haven't done a lot, to zoom while I'm driving because that's a personal choice of mine. So you want to take my personal choice away from me when it's not illegal? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, because even though it's not illegal, it is dangerous.
Okay. So I really think that we need to start figuring out how to take, uh, other people's choice away from them too. Because I would under, I think you're pro-choice when it comes to that movement. Am I right?
Uh, yes, I am pro-choice.
And you wouldn't want somebody to take your choice away from you, would you? Because it's legal. Am I right or wrong? Would you want somebody to take your choice away from you when it's legal to have abortion?
Do with abortion.
It has to do with choice and taking people's right away.
Alderman, hold on for a second. I'll, I'll answer. Uh, Alderman from the, from the eleventh. Um, Alderman from the twenty-second already answered it. But he was, uh, he was bringing up the issue of, of choice and a person's right to choose. Uh, so that was the line of questioning that connected the two. Um, if he was talking about just abortion, uh, you know, just abortion, then.
I hope no one, I hope no one ever complains about any sort of traffic danger in their ward ever again. Thank you.
Alderman from the twenty-second.
Mr. President, Alderman from the eleventh, for you.
Alderman from the eleventh, we yield the question to Alderman from the twenty-second.
Yes, please.
Alderman from the twenty-second, please.
Alderman, can you clarify the comment that you just made?
Well, I know as an alderman in the eleventh ward, um, that we have probably my number one complaint um, is speeding and just general out of control traffic. Um, and I've heard it from a lot of our colleagues, um, all over the city, that that is a common problem. Uh, so I don't know why we want to rein in traffic for our constituents, but then we can drive dangerously ourselves.
But that hasn't been proven that we're driving dangerously. We have, I could understand and appreciate if there was a couple of aldermen that were.
I bet if we, I'm going to venture to guess if we took a poll of this city and that you asked them if they thought zooming while driving was dangerous, they would say yes.
Then we should create a law to make it illegal. Wouldn't you agree?
Fine by me.
That, that would cover the Board of Aldermen, everybody, but to just isolate twenty-nine members and say, we must be the model citizens, which is not reasonable in my mind. Because we all have rights and there's no, no such thing as a model alderman per se. Uh, we can't be the model for everything because we have choices. And we're grown. Do what we want to do. So thank you, Alderman, for yielding.
This has become a sad gotcha game over something that is very common sense.
It's common sense to you because of your privilege. I thank you. Um, so, Alderman, again, um, it's really sad that during Black History Month that we're talking about taking people's right to vote and participate away. That's pretty sad. Um, and, and I definitely would not keep voting for this. And I think sometime you might want to consider talking to some senior black aldermen, get some perspective of some of the senior black aldermen when you're introducing something that could be potentially com- confrontational. Because we certainly don't feel like we're heard. Now, maybe some of the younger aldermen can go along to get along. But I think you're a fan of most of us black senior aldermen will probably give you a good educational experience of why you may not want to do certain pieces of legislation or resolutions. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, Alderman. Uh, Alderman from the twenty-fourth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, just, uh, quickly on the, uh, the underlying resolution here. Um, you know, I know that there were some concerns. This, this was drafted by a lawyer. It was reviewed by other lawyers. Uh, when it comes to the definitions and things, it's plain, uh, the plain meaning rule comes into play when, when you have any piece of legislation and you don't have defined terms in it. Uh, you go with the ordinary dictionary definition. Further, the state of Missouri doesn't define our rules or our words in legislation. We do that. Um, Alderman Boyd, uh, excuse me, the Alderman from the twenty-second, uh, brought up the idea that, you know, this isn't illegal. I think that that's very unclear. I think, uh, R S M O three oh four point zero one two tasks people with driving with the highest degree of care. It's a misdemeanor not to, uh, it's a B misdemeanor not to. It's an A misdemeanor if you're in an accident. Uh, again, that level of care, it's the highest degree of care. That is a higher level of care than a surgeon in surgery. So if you do not want your surgeon doing something while he is operating on you, you probably should not do it while you're driving. Uh, further, uh, the hands-free, um, devices came up. I, uh, am unclear about how you could mute, unmute and toggle a camera without using your hands. If anyone could weigh in on that, I'd, I'd be interested. Um, previously, you could not vote if you left the room or if you were not physically present. Uh, this is all that that does is brings back that status quo. Uh, the enforcement of our rules and who's calling balls and strikes is already laid out in our rules. Um, this is pretty plain, straightforward language. Hopefully, there's not much of a, a use for it moving forward. But moving forward, we may still choose to utilize Zoom for, say, committee meetings or, or work under a hybrid system. So I do think that, uh, it, it's still appropriate, even if we're coming to an end of doing full board meetings, uh, on Zoom. I think it is appropriate to, to address some of these concerns because I certainly have heard this brought up from my constituents that they say, hey, you know, I, I, I'm a, a person who walks or runs or rides a bike. Uh, and it's, it's disconcerting to me to see leaders in my community driving around legislating. Um, so again, I think this is, it, it, this does not seek to take anyone's vote away. This says, if your vote comes up, please pull over to the side of the road, vote, and then carry on on your travels. Um, this is not an attempt to, uh, to play gotcha and to steal anyone's vote. Um, I would ask for everyone's favorable consideration and I would request a roll call. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the twelfth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I promise to be brief. Um, I did want to respond to, uh, in the scope of this resolution, uh, and specifically the scope of it, I want to respond to the Alderman of the twenty-second, who raised a very good question, you know? Um, why are we not introducing a board bill? And I, I want to assure the Alderman of the twenty-second and the members of the public as well that that is in the works. That is the facet of the project, um, to improve driving safety that I am working on. Um, that has to wait until next session. But the issue that we ran up in, um, that has delayed the introduction of a board bill, um, is that the, I'm so sorry, the revised statute of Missouri, uh, three oh four point eight two O, specifically subsection eleven, uh, states that the state preempts the field of regulating the use of handheld devices in, in motor vehicles. So the state sort of preempts the field from local municipalities. I did reach out to Senator Greg Razor, who's on the other side of the state and who is sponsoring the, um, the Senate bill that the alderwoman of the first and a few other of our colleagues spoke to, um, that would seek to, uh, to amend this, uh, this statute from twenty thirteen to include all ages, not just twenty-one younger. Um, so as we've worked with Lou Galley, our legal counsel, that is what we've been trying to circumvent and work around. We do have work around all around the twenty-second. It was just too late in this session to introduce that board bill, uh, for which I apologize. I, I will take responsibility for, uh, for the delay on that. But I just want to assure this body that this is but one facet of a greater, um, this resolution, I should say, this rule change is but one facet of a greater. Move to make our roads just a bit safer. And if I have dropped the ball by not introducing board bill sooner. Then I apologize to this body. And with that, Mr. President, I respectfully yield back. Thank you.
I thank you, Alderman. Alderman from the ninth, first time.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I will also try to be very brief as we're in our fourth hour here. But I I just want to stand in support of this resolution. And I'm standing in support of this resolution because this is about distracted driving. I know for the last hour, we've had all types of names thrown at us. From privileged to racist, but this is about distracted driving. And we all got in the last week here, we got the report card from Trail Net. So I'm just gonna go ahead and repeat what Trail Net sent every one of us, and I really do hope that every one of us. Read this report and take it seriously. It says in twenty twenty, there was an unprecedented year for traffic violence in the city of St. Louis. With the highest fatality rate in ten years. Twenty twenty one, there were seventy one people that died from traffic violence. Being the second highest with twenty twenty the highest. Then goes on to say for four years in a row, pedestrian fatalities rose from year after year, rose from the previous year. So four years in a row, pedestrian fatalities have risen. It concludes by saying a rising number of pedestrian fatalities is becoming the status quo for the city of St. Louis. And this trend needs to be addressed immediately. This is straight from Trail Net. This is what the intention of this resolution is, addressing it immediately. Now, yes, maybe there should be a state law, but we all know, sitting back and waiting for the state to do something. When this is something that we have the opportunity now to say, we're going to make this. Motion as a board to say we take distracted driving seriously. This is what it's about. And the other point, my last point I'm going to make here is that. I sit through a lot of committee hearings. I try to sit through every committee hearing because I want to, I want to find out what's going on with our bills before they pass out. I will say there's HUD's committee, you know, the Alderman from the twenty second. I've been on there many a times where if my video is not on or someone's video is not on, they are not allowed to speak. It's not written down in our rules. It's it's nowhere in our rulebook. But I have been in committee hearings and have witnessed our chairpeople not allow people to vote. Or speak if they're not on camera. But now all of a sudden, we're saying, oh, we don't want you to drive, pull over to vote, pull over to talk. I I just don't see how we can say, oh, you can't vote if your video is not on. It's not a trust issue. You just want to see our faces. But then all of a sudden, this turns into such an ordeal over asking people to drive safely and be responsible while. Doing our work. So that's all I have to say. I I am in support of this and I'm I'm really feel bad about the nature that this whole argument has taken. So thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. I think it was the Alderman from the eighth, then Alderman from the third, first, twenty second, six and twenty second.
Thank you, Mr. President. Quickly, I want to thank the Alderman from the ninth for his comments. I I think particularly the. Portion about being on video in order to vote has. Is a a functional equivalent of this and is directly related to this resolution, and it's not even a rule. But it's one that committee chairs have enforced and that we've enforced even in full board meetings, that if you can't turn on your camera, then your vote is not recorded. And so I I I think that this is a piece. I also want to say, you know, multiple members of our body have have zoomed. While participating or while driving, participating in our meetings. I myself have done it. The chairperson, the rules committee admitted doing it in our discussion in committee. You know, we have all done it and we should not have done it, and this is not about targeting a particular member of our body. This is about us. Trying to set a good example, responding to the information that we've been given by our citizens, whether it comes through Twitter. Or whether it comes from a report from Trail Net, or whether it comes through the folks that come to us every year. With a resolution honoring pedestrians who have been killed on our streets. We we, there is a resolution that comes through for victims of traffic violence every year. And we all celebrate them and say, I'm sorry, we're going to try to do better, and this is a way that we can lead and we can try to do better. The Missouri Senate has passed one bill this year, one, and that was only because they were under a deadline. They are arguing about. Overalls and where we cannot count on the Missouri Legislature to pass a law to end distracted driving in the city of St. Louis. We can lead by example and say, we're not going to do this for our body. I also agree with the Alderman from the twenty fourth. I I now for the first time have a car that has Bluetooth capability. I did not have that before. My old car had a tape deck in it. So I'm I'm very new to how Bluetooth works and I'm still trying to figure it out. But on Zoom, my, I can hear the audio through my phone if my phone has a Zoom meeting up. But I can't, I can't disconnect the video. I can't connect the video hands-free. I can't turn on my microphone or turn it off hands-free. So it's, it is not a hands-free device if I can't control it through the buttons that are on my car. And then that is also a privilege point to ask that members of the board have hands-free devices in their cars in order to participate in the meetings. So what I'm saying is like, we we've blown this so far out of proportion. When all we're asking for is that we lead by example and show the citizens of the city that we are taking their safety on our streets. Seriously, and it, I, again, I want us to come back in person as soon as physically possible, as safe as possible. Because our relationships with each other, our decorum at the board has declined. And it breaks my heart as a member of this body that came in here to try to do good work for the people that we've devolved to this point. And so I would ask all of us to please, and Mr. President, can we please come back in person as soon as possible? Thank you.
Did you say Alderman from the third?
Yeah, yeah, Mike.
Okay, thanks. I I try to make this quick, just real quick. Alderman from the ninth, answer questions.
Alderman from the ninth, will you yield for question to Alderman from the third? Hey, you still muted, yeah. All right, his video went off. Alderman from, Alderman from the ninth. I don't, I don't think he's yielding for questioning, Alderman from the third.
Okay, so basically, what what I want to go and throw out there, so we got all these individuals that supposedly, if you didn't read this stuff from Trail Net. You got all this information on these distracted driving deaths and things that we need to change within the city. We just gave out. Millions of dollars in our funds, and this wasn't even a conversation brought up. Like, we ain't talking about doing anything as far as capital improvement that makes our streets safer, but we finna spend millions of dollars knowing that people are dying out here. From driving-related distracted driving. If you want to twist it a turn, that, let's just be real. This is an issue that if you really wanted to work out and you really wanted things to be changed, you put some money behind it. Everything that folks want to do that costs. That's critical, that's that's cost, that there's a cost base for, or you got to figure out how to spend money. We got to find money for everything else. But we're not looking at, once again, like I keep on saying, the people here. Everything is about things, not about the people. We know people are dying at a high rate. Once again, why are we putting cameras on the highways? Why aren't we investing in. LEDs that have speedometers on them, I mean, not speedometers, but a radar for speed on them, and they're able to tell people you're going too fast, slow down. Why aren't we investing in more traffic officers? Nothing in this board bill at all stops somebody from speeding, and the fact that you will continue to. Throw that out there because it's frivolous, it's crap. You're going to continue to throw out speeding when this is not addressed speeding. None of us are driving through the city going a thousand miles per hour, and we continue to talk about speeding. And and people recklessly driving through the city as being something that's going to help. This bill, this board bill, this uh, this uh, resolution being something that's going to help that. It's not. As soon as this passed, the same amount of people speeding today is going to hop in the car and speed tomorrow. Most of the folks that you are trying to get to not even looking at this this meeting, nor will they hear about it. Because it's only germane to us. It only, only touches the Alder people. Ain't none of these folks out here driving a hundred miles down the street, zipping through the alleys, doing donuts. Looking at a Board of Aldermen meeting right now. Not a one. And not a one of them, when we done with this meeting, gonna be like, oh, the Aldermen just kind of censored themselves a little bit. No, no, they don't care. Because it's only germane to us, period, point blank. So when you get out there and you say. Things that you're trying to stop people from dying, you're trying to keep people safe. This is false when you try to try to make this resolution. Something that's supposed to be an attempt to eradicate that problem, because if that's the case, this is poor legislation. And the worst legislation that I could ever say we've ever seen dealing with anything dealing with traffic-related deaths, if this, if it's about speeding. Because what you're talking about, if you're going to reference Trail Net, you need to reference why people are dying. Ask Trail Net or get on there and figure out realistically. What is, what is the distractions? That are causing people to. Will never get to what those distractions are and what causes the most distracted driving. We're not being realistic in our approach. Saying that we want to create this resolution for public safety and health. Because we are the Alder people that nobody pays attention to when it comes down to us just doing stuff for us. Half the city don't know the resolutions that we put forth. That are just germane to us. Look on YouTube right now and look at how many views we got last week and this week. You're gonna see a few hundred. Few hundred out of the few hundred thousand people that live here. Now, you think our little meetings that we have, where you got a hundred people watching that meeting. Is going to trump the thousands of people out here that have the ability to walk outside and zoom and drive right now without any repercussions from the Board of Aldermen? Absolutely not. We can't even stop these folks from shooting. You can't stop somebody in your neighborhood from drivers recklessly, and the white folks got more densely populated neighborhoods than we do. Seriously, they they speeding through, they speeding downtown with a police station in. How are we going to expect them to respect us and only respect our police? We won't even give the police the tools that they need to calm the streets down. And we're talking about censoring the board, and the police need more cars, they need more radar guns, they need another effective way. To stop individuals who are speeding through the city, because it stands right now, if you go and speed and the police sees you, all you gotta do is keep going. Because they can't even chase you. So where is the actual end game, right? What's the end game? Because if we stop all of the distracted driving right now, people still are going to speed through the city. People ain't hitting everybody because they on their phones. They're hitting everybody because they're flying through our city, and there's absolutely nothing, nothing on the books that stops you from speeding. Because it specifically says these officers can't chase you. The hood know that. The people who not in the hood know that. Folks from everywhere else see it. They see you run the stop signs. They see these folks driving crazy. The police are sitting right there, look at us and watch them fly. Why? Because they don't want to be put in a position to where they chase that person, somebody ends up getting hit, somebody dies, and now we ride, ride, ride with the police. Oh, the police are terrible folks. They chase somebody. What else are they supposed to do? How are we going to keep the city safe if we don't even give them the tools they need to do their job? And if their job requires them to chase people who are running through the city at speeds, I'm sorry, driving through the city at speeds. That are against the law, how do you expect those people who are supposed to protect the law and and provide order are supposed to write that? So we just said it's the Board of Aldermen, you know what? We got so much clout. That uh, the people is just going to follow us. But if that's the case, please, all of my friends out there, all of my family out there, all the people that's not friends and family, can you guys stop shooting people? Please, can you put the guns down today? I hope when we go outside tomorrow, the guns are down. I I just hope. That's stupid in thinking that that is something that immediately is going to change the minds of the people. Who are in this city, just because we told them they have to do something. There's no enforcement behind it. There's no enforcement behind going out here, giving the police a mouth and no tools. They can go out there and tell you, you better not be driving a thousand miles. Hey, I'm on the microphone, slow down. But but I can't chase you. I can't do anything while watching these people recklessly turn this city into a a raceway. We can't protect these citizens if we can't protect the people who are supposed to protect the citizens. And as it stands right now, police are getting no help when it comes down to us asking for help with this problem. So if we want to hit it. Hit the the head on the nail with the hammer, all of that good stuff, then we need to hit the problem where it actually is. And the Trail Net has went out there and done a study, and they have done analytical data. And this is show proof on what distracted driving is and why these accidents are happening. I guarantee you, there will probably be a, think that they said it, it's like fourteen percent. Fourteen percent of distracted drivers utilizing their phones, which you can actually go and look at, the little black box, and look at your phone and find out who is distracted while driving. These insurance companies do a good job at this point. We got reckless driving going on throughout this entire city that has nothing to do with the Board of Aldermen. And it's weird for you to continue to all the, to throw this stuff out as being something that blankets. An effort to stop everybody else out there from driving crazy because we stop ourselves from being on Zoom. Being on Zoom does not make you a reckless driver. It does not. Now, does it make you a little less safe than other drivers who are not on Zoom? Anytime you are doing anything other than watching the road, you're a little less distracted. Plenty of people have been looking in their rearview. And had an accident in front of them because they were trying to find out what was going on behind them. So we're actually talking about the issue at hand and trying to do something about the fatalities that exist within the city. You got to point to the people, period. And this is just a thing. So with that being said, with Alderman Ryan. Ask, answer questions. I'm gonna make this one minute.
Alderman from twenty fourth, will you yield a question to Alderman from the third?
Absolutely.
Alderman from third, please proceed.
All right, is it, uh, your understanding that a handheld device is something that you hold in your hand?
Yes.
Once you take it out your hand, it is still a handheld device, correct?
You know, i- if you're talking about. The state statute, I would want to review the state statute to see if if they if they defined handheld device.
Great. And the reason I wanted to ask you that, because you asked a question earlier, you wanted to know how does a hand-free device. Be something that you can utilize when you have to utilize your hand to manipulate it, correct?
I I just don't understand how. Under just kind of plain meaning, how you could say something's hands-free if you're having to use your hands with it.
Understood. You are a lawyer, though, correct?
Yes.
So so you're you're you're, I guess in your expertise, in your field of things, your job is is to get down to the most technical terms of things. So you can properly represent your client or properly represent your cause, correct?
Yeah, I mean, the the job is to to certainly try and be a.
Be as specific as possible, right?
Yeah, to zealously advocate for your client.
Understood. So I I would say if we're advocating for this bill and this bill is the client, right? And 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 you're defending your client to some degree. It would be well, especially from us who are not lawyers, to be able to look at individuals who are lawyers and have well-thought-out meanings for what it is that they support. So we can look at that in a way where we can see that there was more work done to be as specific as it could be. For the the preservation of the actual integrity of the bill and what it was meant to meant to actually do, right? And let's just like, just just being real, if if we have a question about right now whether something is hands-free or not, and I'm going to get to the question. And you don't know that, that means you're not properly prepared. To represent your client. And us being on the opposite of that spectrum saying, hey. What is hands-free? It's not, you know, we not figuring out things out. I mean, not hands-free, what is a handheld device? At some point in time, a handheld device isn't handheld when it's in your hand, I would think. And because there is also, once we look at state statute, there are provisions in there for Bluetooth, right? At what point in time does a Bluetooth device be not a handheld device? Because every single Bluetooth device you have to put in your hands to operate that Bluetooth. Same thing with a car. You have to program your phone or whatever Bluetooth device to pair with the other Bluetooth device. Everything at some point in time that you touched is Bluetooth and hands-free eventually goes from being touch and handheld. Because a Bluetooth device is somewhat handheld when you operating it before you get that wireless signal, correct?
So in in this resolution, the word.
Yes, I know.
Handheld and the word Bluetooth do not appear. So that's why they're not defined terms. They they simply do not appear in this resolution. The, the, there is a doctrine when you're interpreting. Both contracts and statute called the plain meaning rule. Where if something is not specifically defined, you go with basically the dictionary definition of that word. So I know earlier you you had brought up participate, for example, and participate not being specifically defined in it. So what you would do there is you would then go to, you know, your your dictionary, your your old Oxford dictionary. And pull it out and it says participates, so that would be, you know, something along the lines of, and I haven't looked it up, but to to take part in. I I I would wager a guess that it'd be something like that. And so that's the word that, that's the definition that you would use when kind of sussing out the.
I guess my question was, once again, would you agree that everything is at some point in time handheld? Until it becomes a wireless device, after you activate the wireless components, correct?
So I I would say that, you know, things built into your car, for example, would probably not be handheld devices.
As it remains to separate devices from your vehicle, because I mean, still in all. Just separate from your vehicle, would you, would you say that things are initially handheld before they become Bluetooth, before they wirelessly transmit a signal?
Sure, so like my 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 phone here is 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 a handheld device. And if I if I put in my my Bluetooth headset while I'm on the phone or I I I'm on speakerphone. And I I start driving, you know, I don't have to use my hands for anything. But I think that a Zoom call is slightly different in that, you know, you you, we do have this kind of. you know, you you, we do have this kind of uh expectation, at least, that we're going on mute when we're not part of the conversation. And that uh uh frequently we see people toggling their video on and off, I I I
Would would you say that requires it to be in your hand for you to toggle that though? Does it, is it required to be on Zoom to hold your phone? Cause right now, I'm holding it, but is it required? Do you have to hold your phone and is there a way without it actually being in your hand for you to turn on and off the video?
No, like for example, right?
I would say that's a yes or no question, just flat out, yes or no?
Right now, you can see both of my hands, but if I go, if I go to 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 go on and off mute. Uh, and I think that that's part of the distraction that this is referencing. But I think we're we're pretty far into the weeds here also.
Should be. This, cause this this is one of those conversations that uh is very important. We talking about taking away the power that the people vested in us through a vote, and you're talking about taking away their vote to some degree. Because everybody believes that this makes them safer while watching us drive, which is super weird. My people didn't vote for me and say, don't drive while voting. They voted me, say, go get the work done, however you gotta do it. They don't care that I'm at four different things because I'm doing the work of the people, period. They see me when I'm out there picking up trash in the middle of the alley, going from here, going to there, they like the fact that I'm on a meeting while I'm inside of their houses. Doing whatever it is that they need me to do, looking at this, looking at roofs, whatever it is, there's an appreciation there. So, you know, with that thing being, with that being said, the question I was I was getting to is at some point in time, your handheld device goes into a wireless device because you're utilizing Bluetooth, you don't have to necessarily have it in your hand toggling video on and off, it's just a press of a button. So you technically utilize your finger and it's not being handheld. So, you know, that transition is what gives us the ability to stay law to right now Zoom without being under uh uh whatever laws that you were just talking about as far as the, I forgot what the exact law I was as far as being um Understood. So, you know, with the with that being said, I I wanted to ask that, put that out there because you made a statement and wanted to know how you could make something not handheld. I mean, it's just a press of a button, you're not holding it in your hand if it's mounted. And if there are provisions that say you can mount something, you know, and if we just have to define what a a a handheld
I believe Alderman Bosley cut out.
Yeah, um, give him a second here. Uh, we will move on to the Alderman from the first and then come back to the Alderman from the third when when this, when he returns. Alderman from the first.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. First of all, I'd like to write, to address about how to best write legislation. Alderman from the twenty fourth said, if you did not put definitions in there, then you would go to plain language. But the best way to write legislation is to put definitions in there, so you do not have to go to plain language. So you do not get to that argument that people didn't understand when Bill Clinton said, depends on what the is. So that is not the best way to write legislation is to go to the plain language. The best way is for you to define it so that people know what the intent of the legislation was. So when you say things like uh uh participate in any manner, then you say what participate means. When you say driving or operating a vehicle, you actually uh define those things and that is the best way to do legislation. Okay, so I don't like to do second best and third best, I like best. And that's what I was speaking to. Um, the Alderman from the uh eighth talked about, well, all the people making uh that these uh committee chairs and people are saying you have to turn on your video. I said this before, so I guess people didn't hear me. We have a rule in our rules that said when we were in person, that we had to be on the floor of the Board of Aldermen to vote, that is our rule. When we started doing Zoom, I as the Chair of the Rules said, what is the equivalent of being on the Florida Board of Aldermen? I started finding out from other people. So the equi- equivalent of being on the Florida Board of Aldermen is when you're on a Zoom, is that you show your face. Now, the reason for being on the floor and or showing your video face in Zoom is because we wanna make sure that it is you that is voting. Now, at the time that that rule was made, we never thought about that we would be Zooming meetings. But I'm awfully glad that that's a technology that came along because I think that we have done really good at holding down the number of people who have gotten COVID nineteen in our office. So I think that's wonderful. Um, somebody talked, oh, the Alderman from the eighth said, well, you, now we're gonna make people do hands-free. Let me tell you from my ancestors that you are not hearing. If they say to me, Sharon Tyus, buy a hands-free device or something that you can mount or lose your vote, I guarantee you, all of my black ancestors back to slavery will say, get the ha- get them a device that lets you amount your uh iPad or your eye or your iPhone or whatever, that it doesn't cost that much. I got one, it costs like twenty something dollars. That's way cheaper than losing my vote. This is what happens when people just do not wanna hear you and they're tone deaf. Oh, well, I would like to tell you that it's better to lose your vote than to buy for a a hands-free device. No, it is not. It is not better. I just can't, I I, you know, a lot of times, and this is analogy, I talk to black women and they say, how are you a feminist? Because I can't be a feminist, cause white women don't hear us. I hear that from black women all the time. And you don't hear us, okay? So you just get in your mind, if somebody would sit down with you and talk to you and say, well, we're gonna start out, well, we're gonna get rid of abortion. Now let's talk about this rule we're gonna put in place. All of us, including me, who is pro-choice, we said, oh, hell no, 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 no. But you sat down with this thing about distract- distracted driving and instead of coming and saying, look, this is what we're thinking and we're hearing, let's have conversation. This is not hurry up, because then we're gonna have conversation and find if there's some other way to do this or some kinda agreement. You all do, don't do that. You get something in your mind and then to hell with everybody else, you just wanna do it that way. And you don't even know, you're not, you've not lived my life experience, so you don't know what it is, you just think I can ramrod it through. And that irritates me about you, because I have been on your side so many times, so many times I've been on your side. I've been on that side of the young progressives and you all all know it. But you do not know how to make a group of people that work together. And you need to stop that, all of you. Come and say, can I talk to you? When I will bring up a lot of stuff you do, but you make it so hard that you just think you gotta have it your way. You don't. Um, somebody said, how can you do Bluetooth and and your device? I have this little device right here, it's a Bluetooth speaker, I'm not, I don't have the ear buds or whatever. This thing cost like twenty something dollars, it connects to my iPad. When I wanna mute it, I push a little button, it mutes, it mutes my iPad, just like that. It doesn't take me to do anything, I just know where the button is and I do it. There are devices, you haven't looked enough, you haven't done enough research to know about these things. Now, I know this is old fashioned, but it works and it does mute. The other thing I wanna say is that you do, you all assume that you gotta mute yourself by you're doing it. A lot of times SLTV will mute you. If you have noise in the background, you don't have to worry about doing it, they will mute you. You could probably even ask, could you mute me, cause I'm on my phone, uh I'm on my device in my car and I do have it mounted on a little uh, I forget what the thing is called. I'm gonna get it and send it to all of you, cause it doesn't cost much. And then STL, yeah, STLTV could mute you. That is still more preferable than losing my vote. So if you all could hear, I don't wanna lose my vote and I don't wanna take anybody else. And hey, this is a sensitive subject for black people and no, you don't, you just think, oh, I could just say, I can do it anyway. No, you can't. And then somebody said, oh, we've been called privileged and racist. I have never heard a racist or a privileged person admit to that. When or somebody who is anti-gay or anything, when you call them out, they go, oh, no we not, you're just being too sensitive. Never hearing, I wanna use what Alderman from the twenty third said. Never hearing and saying, am I that tone deaf? Am I making that mistake? Cause there's nothing wrong before you try to push stuff like this through, sitting down, not just one meeting or reaching out to somebody one time and saying, we need to do long-term working together. I used to, I'm so fortunate because I've uh dealt with a lot of presidents of the Board of Aldermen. But when Tom Villa, he used to talk about that they had working legislative meetings, okay? That they didn't just try to rush everything through, I always liked that. So he, before he became the president of the board, he came, uh he was at the legislature and they would meet and have meetings about how do we get to this, what's our differences? Instead of just saying, okay, we all got together and that's a good idea and those other people just don't understand. Yes, we do, we have a different life experience. Of all those people who wanna work with black people, then they need to understand different life experiences. And people of different ages. And when I was a new alderperson and we did a thing for, so that people can do um uh uh what it was that uh the bill so that gays and people could have a partnership. Now, I got lambasted in my community because I understood that this was something important and it ain't just about me all the time. That things that's good for my community may not be good for the whole community. It's something you guys seem to have escaped you. You say, well, my constituents says that, so it must be so. So as though we don't have any constituents that maybe saying something else. Cause my constituents that I talk to say, well, why are they trying to talk about taking a vote away? So if that didn't hit you, maybe the first black person who told you that you may hear that. You know, again, when you're on my foot and my toe and I keep telling you and you keep saying, oh, you're just being so sensitive. You're the one being a insensitive claw, okay? You're not listening, you're being tone deaf. So if somebody tells you you're privileged and you say, this is if you, maybe you are. You know, I am a privileged black person, not by everything, but I have a lot of things I got for privilege. I didn't inherit my privilege, I worked for it, but I do have it. So when people say, but oh, you and Sterling, y'all got this, I don't go, oh, no I'm not. Yes, we do, we have some privilege that a lot of black people don't have, yes, we do. And I understand that, that's why I stayed out at this Board of Aldermen and worked so hard and didn't try to make a career, could have been a judge, could a lot of things to fight for my community and make sure that they have a black lawyer down here at the Board of Aldermen. We used to have two, but this Board of Aldermen couldn't stand for us to have two, so they put us in the same war. You can have four, five, six white lawyers, but if you had two black lawyers down here, oh my God. Uh, that is something that we can't have. You don't even know about your privilege sometime because you're so busy telling us how black people should act and what we should do, that you don't hear what black people who actually are down here uh are saying to you, you just dismiss it. So that's what happens, okay? I don't know that anybody called you racist. I did hear Alderman from the twenty third said, are you being racist? And if you are, don't come out, why don't you just come out and uh and say so and be open about it? A lot of times people do what's called covert racism. I love overt racism because it says, we don't want no Negroes here, you can't vote. Um, in the city, uh you can't come down to Don Brown Chevrolet, cause they actually bought some people here years ago when I first started. And Don Brown Chevrolet had a different group, a different amount of money if you wanted to buy a shit uh uh Chevrolet if it was black or if it was white, they did the same thing with if you wanted to rent an apartment. So that's overt, but a lot of things that are covert, you put the stuff in the law, you deny, 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 never met. You don't talk about the impact, you just say, oh, I just have a good idea and I, what is wrong with you guys? Oh, and as that we did something wrong. And that is something that women have to deal with, sometimes when you're talking to men, they don't wanna hear it. So a better way to do legislation, especially with something like that, is to sit down and have conversations and try to find some common ground. Nobody wants anybody to get hurt while driving, nobody does. But when you ra- wave a red flag in front of people who for centuries could not vote and then you just dismiss their concerns is out of turn. And then say, oh, and you better not be talking about driving and speeding anymore, I'm gonna keep talking about driving and speeding. In fact, that's why I sponsored the uh the Speed Hump Bill. And some of you all who are out there talking about have it uh uh vetoed, you got speed humps, you do know I have the list. So I do know the hypocrites who said it was against it and then ran and got it. I just haven't released it, but I do have the list. So um you oughta be ashamed of yourself, but the reason why we had those speed humps was not uh because we wanted to hurt anybody, it's because they went on residential streets and they slowed people down. And all those places where I have them, I don't have people getting their cars uh uh totaled anymore, people that are getting hit. We are concerned about public safety and we are concerned about uh driving while distracted. But we also are concerned about speeding. Natural Bridge has had more people killed on it, it didn't have anything to zoo with Zooming. Down there in the twenty first ward at Fair and Natural Bridge, oh my God, I I I don't even go there and drive anymore cause so many people have been killed at that intersection of right there for, and it had nothing to do with Zooming. When I hear then um the Alderman from, I think from the third asked, how many people um Aldermen have been in accidents or hurt somebody while they're Zooming and the answer is zero. Maybe we found a answer to a problem that does not exist. Alderman from the twenty second said, uh, why don't we then just have a law? Um, and we can't override state law, but we could if we came up and we sat down and you may not get everything you want, but if we found that we could find some common ground, then we could let's do what we've done, send a common resolution to the state saying, hey, the Board of Aldermen is asking, can maybe you do this and do this, but it doesn't happen with you just deciding, I'm gonna ram something down somebody's throat. Um, and I'm gonna not listen to a whole side of town and I'm gonna dismiss their concerns. That is not good legislation, that is immature legislation, that is immaturity on your part that you keep trying to do that. And I'm really, I feel sad, cause I thought that I, when I was over there working with you all, that I was trying to teach you there's a different way. But some people cannot be taught and they don't wanna hear. They understand their side of what they want. So if you talk to them about uh doing something to abortion, they're all dreading now this new Supreme Court we have cause that we're probably gonna lose our right to abortion. Now me, I'm too old to worry about that, but that could happen. And then I hear all these people saying, oh my God, I actually sent money to Planned Parenthood, cause I don't want that to happen. This thing about committee, what, I saw somebody, I wrote down here uh about, where here? I forget it here. So I'm not, I'm gonna wrap up this, can't remember where I wrote it here, but I'm gonna say, this is not good legislation. When you come back, if you are gonna bring uh legislation, try the route of can I sit down? In fact, talk to the people that you disagree with the most. Sometimes they come up with really good ideas that you didn't think about. And it doesn't mean you get to do that in a week or so, doesn't get me be- that because it was on Twitter. I'm not saying anything is wrong with Twitter, except for when that drives legislation in such a way that I gotta hurry up and do it. And I'm challenged to do it. No, that is not good legislation. Legislation is often something that is worked on over time period where like minds agree and then minds that differ sit down and they come up with something. And then they find out you got a lot more in common than you do that's opposed. As I said before, I got hit by a car. So I do not, I'm very careful about driving. If I leave my house and I'm in a hurry to get someplace, I'd say to myself, Sharon, if you hit somebody, how will you feel? I cannot live with myself if I hurt somebody and I drove over them or I killed them or I injured them. I would just be a mess because I know and remember what my mom looked like when I got hit by a car. Um, so that is not what we're saying. We're saying this is an overreach, you haven't established data of why this is a good idea. You 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 just, somebody said, well, people are getting killed, but did they say it was from Zoom driving? Or did they say it was uh uh from um app, uh what do you call it? Uh, driving that is distracted. And how many people have gotten hurt because they were reaching back to tell a kid to do something? Or they got into arguing with their spouse? I would like to see some more specific data. But actually having my iPad up here while I'm driving and I got a Bluetooth in my ear where I can mute it or I can act ST STLTV to do that. That is a reasonable risk to me. That is not me, because you haven't given me anything where somebody got hurt. That's just your idea and you, when you have limited information, you only can come from your uh perspective. My mom often says to me and my sister, well, I don't believe that happened because it never happened. I never heard anything about that, I mean, my sister and I always say, Mom, there's so many things, and my mother's eighty-six years old, getting ready to be eighty-seven. There's so many things you haven't been exposed to. So I want you young people to be a little bit more broad-minded so that you can understand other people's perspective. And if you do not, then do not be surprised when a group of black Aldermen tell you, when you start talking about taking somebody's vote away. I'm gonna tell you, in my heart, that strikes fear and that makes me think of racist laws. It makes me think of poll taxes and all kinda things that were put in place even after people got a right to vote. So if you do not wanna work on a collective agreement, then you're gonna always have these kind of drawn out battles because you do not know how to work together with people. then you're gonna always have these kind of drawn-out battles because you do not know how to work together with people. And I, this is not a good uh, piece of legislation uh, or as a resolution and as a rule. And if you come back and you're gonna do some kind of board bill, work with people like me who are opposed to what you're doing and hear us. Work with Alderman from the twenty-second. Work for the Alderman from the twenty-third. Work for the Alderman from the uh, fourteen. I know that you get a certain age and you just think, oh, those are all the, Alderman from the twenty-seventh, the fifth. Old people, old people got something to put in. And you don't act like it at all. You just think that only you have something to say in your group of people. And so people give into that and say, oh, this was on Twitter. I don't care if it's on Twitter. I don't care if whatever they say about me on Twitter, I don't even know. It, it ain't important because I meet with my own people and what you're talking about has never been brought up. So the other thing that you have to do when you want to change legislation is that you have to go out and convince people. And I'll skin with this. When I got here, nobody in North St. Louis had done the Conservation District and I wanted to do it. I had to have twenty meetings all over my ward and make people comfortable with why I thought that was a good idea. Yeah, I could have just introduced them past, but I did that. And that's how you form alliances and you have a understanding about other people's concerns. And I still got those little votes. And one woman said, I really like the Conservation District, but I don't like that we have to pay that a- application fee. But I love that you brought it to us and that you had all these conversations across uh, the twentieth ward. Please learn how to do that. And please stop trying to bring stuff and just push it down people's throat. It is not a good way to do legislation. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board.
All right, thank you, Alderman. Uh, it was Alderman from the nineteenth for the first time, I believe. Can remember if you spoke or not yet.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. Let me first say that I'm at a place right now where I'm embarrassed for us as a board. Um, I was hoping even in the committee that we could be heard for some of the things that we were concerned about and most especially uh, if you're gonna do something like this, it should have some fairness to it. And that was not uh, looked at or considered, nor was the um, how it was going to be enforced. That was a suggestion to go into the resolution. And that wasn't uh, heard because there's gonna be a lot of arguments uh, that will take place and hold up opportunities for us to get our work done. Because it's about who is going to make the decision. If you were in a committee meeting, are you going to allow the chair to make that decision? Or will you all just start howling and screaming and arguing about it? In, in a full board meeting, we absolutely know, Mr. President, that you make those decisions about the uh, protocol in the board meeting. But again, that's gonna take a lot. Uh, because if the, if your decision is challenged, then we've got to have long discussions and we also have to vote and you have to have two-thirds of the vote to overturn your decision. That's not likely to happen. So it, we're in a bad place. Uh, one of the things I thought about just for myself, as we've been, as we've been talking about this today, um, I have a car where I never have to touch anything. I just tell it what to do. And uh, I can drive safe. I also, my car uh, gives me warnings from the, whether a car is less than a car length behind me or if I'm less than a car length uh, in front of me. So I'm alerted. I, I'm not gonna hit anybody. Uh, it, it, it just, you, we need to take a lot of things into consideration. And most especially, as many have said, dissect the data. I guarantee you that if it's five, and I doubt if it's that much, accidents were caused because somebody was on a Zoom, that's all for the entire state of Missouri. So dissect information and find out the minute part of it. Don't just assume and jump to some conclusions. Uh, and I wanted to support it, cause I, I'm about safety. There's no doubt about that. And we've gone through so many measures in the city that is totally in chaos because of uh, people believe that there's no laws anymore, that they can do anything they want to do. But we need to be more responsible because I don't want us to start something that has no, that has no real impact or outcomes of anything. And I want us to delve deeper. I want us to um, make sure that we know and understand everything. And if you knew you were gonna do a board bill, just do, I don't understand why there wasn't some conversation and we just did a board bill. And then that way we would have gotten deeper into this sooner. Uh, so there's, I'm just hoping that everybody just takes a step back at this moment because I think that we have truly damaged ourselves today. And uh, I, I can't support the resolution, although I do believe in safety, sir. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the twenty-second.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Uh, with the Alderman from the ninth board deal.
Uh, Alderman from the ninth, will you yield a question to the Alderman from twenty-second? I don't think he is going to yield.
Okay, um, Mr. President, just from a, a rule perspective, uh, I was wondering if you can verify that the Attorney General's Office gave guidance to all government bodies that in order to conduct business via Zoom or live streaming, that we must be visible on our device in order to speak and vote. Is that correct?
Your choice. That's, that's, that's the reality of the laws of the state of Missouri.
Yeah, so it's not a rule of the Board of Alderman per se. It, it's the state of Missouri. And he says something, it kind of ticked me off because uh, it's one of the reasons I hate Twitter sometimes. People put false information out there. So he referenced the HUD meeting about, you know, requiring people to show their face and all that kind of stuff. That is the reason I did that. And there was an episode where I had somebody, you know, I told somebody they must show their face and that individual decided to get out the car and stand in front of his headlights. And then it lit Twitter up about how what a bad person I was, but that was a lie because I didn't require him to sit in front of his headlights. He could have turned his dome lights on. So I wanted to clear that up. Uh, cause Twitter likes to lighten you up with a bunch of BS. Um, but also I wanna uh, ask if the Alderman from the eighth board will yield.
Alderman from the eighth will yield the question into the Alderman from twenty-second. Sure, Alderman from twenty-second.
Hold on, I, I certainly understand your passion, you know, and, and wanting to do this. But sometime when you're, when, when you are justifying your position, I, I wonder if you realize what, what you're saying. Uh, and sometime I, I think you say something I call filler because you made a statement about we passed resolutions where honoring people who were victims of violence and all this other kind of stuff. And I'm just like, what does that have to do with our rule in this resolution? So can you clear up that, what you was talking about?
Yeah, so specifically talking about, um, to my recollection and all the years that I've been on the board so far, there's a resolution that comes to us every year honoring those who have been and the families of those who have been killed in traffic accidents. So I was bringing that up because this is, this is related to traffic safety. And I, I think that those are intricately connected.
Okay, because I know that's a courtesy resolution. That's where it threw me for a loop.
It is, but do you remember, if I could, um, I think we've had some of the, those folks come before us to be honored in person um, for those.
Mm-hmm, absolutely. I agree. Yes, I remember that. I was just trying to connect the dots on a courtesy resolution compared to a resolution that has to deal with uh, the rules of the Board of Alderman. So thank you for clearing that up.
Yeah, and if I could, it also, it has to do with, you know, the, the Board of Aldermen's liability and the city of, the city of St. Louis's liability. If someone participating in one of our meetings were to have an accident to, to hit another car or to hit a, a, a building or, or hit a person. I, I am also curious about, you know, particularly with this conversation where we're tacitly endorsing zooming and driving, if we're admitting liability, um, if an accident like that were to come up. And so the, the question about these, the victims of, of folks who've been killed in, in traffic crashes, um, I, I just, I want us to be um, genuine when we're, when we're honoring those folks. If we can do what the best that we can do to pull over to participate in a meeting to be as safe as possible, I, I think that's um, that's uh, what's consistent. I think that's consistent of our body to, to do.
Sure. And, and again, I'm not a lawyer. I always pretend to be one, but I never take uh, fees for my services. But I want to suggest that the government body, the city of St. Louis does not require us to Zoom while driving. That is a choice.
Correct.
That we choose. So the, the city being liable if, if an Alderman had an accident is highly unlikely. Wouldn't you agree?
Well, no, because if, if we were, I, I mean, it would certainly be argued by the city councilor, but if we, in the course of our duties, if, and so if we're saying that, you know, participation in a meeting is a part of our duty as an older person and in order to participate because of whatever circumstance we have going on that we're on Zoom while we're driving, then I think it reasonably could be connected that we had that crash while in the course of our duties as an older person.
But the city doesn't require us specifically to drive while Zoom, right? We would have to use, you know, good judgment at the end of the day. And I believe the issue, we probably have a problem with the insurance company on that. And maybe some insurances have, have restrictions on if you're texting or driving, you have an accident and, and you're not gonna be insured. But I just don't think that the city of St. Louis be held liable for us if we decided to uh, Zoom while driving. So thank you again for clearing up uh, courtesy resolutions versus a rules resolution. Thank you. And um, I know everybody's been tired. I'm gonna end right there, Mr. President. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion, any further discussion? Okay, it's been moved by one, Alderman of thirteenth second about uh, Alderman of the eighth that we adopt Resolution one seventy-eight. I'm assuming that you want to roll call.
There has been a request for roll call already.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus? No. Alderman Middlebrook?
No.
Alderman Bosley?
No.
Alderman Evans?
No.
Alderman Page?
No.
Alderman Negracia? Alderman Coder?
Aye.
Alderman Rice?
Aye.
Alderman Gunther?
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer?
Present.
Alderman Moran?
Aye.
Alderman Stevens?
Aye.
Alderman Switzer?
Aye.
Alderman Howard?
No.
Alderman Green?
Aye.
Alderman Odenberg?
Present.
Alderman Peel? Alderman Todd?
No.
Alderman Davis?
No.
Alderman Spencer? Alderman Mohammed?
No.
Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Bucaro?
I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, that's a no. I was just backing like driving.
Alderman Bucaro?
Uh, no.
Alderman Orion?
Aye.
Alderman Cole?
Aye.
Alderman Clark Hubbard?
Aye.
Alderman Boyd?
No.
President Reed?
No.
Alderman Negracia? Alderman Peel?
Aye.
Alderman Spencer? Eleven I votes, thirteen no votes and two voted present.
I vote, fail to sustain the motion, uh, of Alderman from thirteenth, Resolution one seventy-eight dies.
That's the extent of first reading of resolution. I'm sorry, second reading of resolutions.
Miss Lena, some unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcement.
Monday, February the twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-two, Health and Human Services will have a meeting at nine AM via webinar. Tuesday, March first, two thousand and twenty-two, Cubs will have a meeting at nine AM via webinar. Streets will have a meeting at eleven AM via webinar. Wednesday, March second, Streets will have a meeting at ten AM via webinar. Public Safety will have a meeting at one PM via webinar. And Friday, March fourth, full board meeting, ten AM via webinar.
Any further announcements?
I got one.
Alderman from the twenty-fourth.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I would just uh, request a uh, a brief moment of silence for the uh, citizenry of Ukraine who didn't pick a war, but a, a war came to them and uh, they are bravely defending their country.
All right, thank you. Thank you for that, Alderman. I'll ask everyone to please join me in a moment, in a moment of silence uh, for the citizens of Ukraine. Thank you. Their lives have been upended overnight. It's uh, it's crazy. Alderman from the twelfth.
Thank you, Mr. President, dear members of the board. I've got two quick announcements. One, uh, two weeks ago, uh, on Friday, February eleventh, I announced that I would be working on this board bill and I put out a call to Alderman Tyus, um, whom I sent an email to as well to begin this conversation. So I want to reiterate my uh, my invitation to collaborate on this distracted board bill, distracted driving board bill, Alderman Tyus. I would love your input uh, in your history, in, in your perspective. And then secondly, after this meeting, everyone, I would be happy to buy anyone who is willing to take up the offer a beer or a coffee or whatever they need so that we can find a little more congeniality in this uh, in this digital body at the moment. So if anyone wants a beer or coffee or tea, it is on me. Send me a text. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the third.
Uh, yes, sir. Thank you, Ms. President. Just like to make an announcement for a public employees meeting, if we can do Thursday at, you know, one of the times open for Alderman Bucaro's bill, his resolution.
All right, thank you all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and the Alderman.
Thank you.
Um, Madam Clerk, please make note of that. And Alderman from the twenty-third, please reach out. Alderman from the nineteenth.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. Uh, first, I'd like to um, as we end uh, our final board meeting during Black History Month, I wanted to recognize a lot of um, black businesses in the nineteenth ward. I was driving around the other day and I realized on, on a block that I had, actually two blocks on Washington Avenue between Eighteenth and Twentieth Street. The majority of the businesses there are black-owned and a third of them are women-owned. And that's a quite incredible feat to have. Uh, because during that stretch there, those buildings and spaces had been abandoned, burned out, whatever. So development had occurred, but the great thing about it is that all these minorities have had an opportunity to come and do business in the city of St. Louis. And I tell you, it's everything from uh, a rest- restaurants, lounges, clothing stores. There's even a, a ye- a young woman who has opened up a business that has uh, PT uh, screening for veterans and uh, refers them to other services. It is something else. And I just want to applaud them and thank them for choosing the city of St. Louis. and wishing them many, many prosperous years uh, in their endeavors. And lastly, sir, I would like to recognize two individuals that I think we missed uh, who have passed on, who have served our, first, we have uh, Clifford Wilson, former Alderman of the fourth ward. Uh, and secondly, Alice Wyndham. As many of you know, a lady who told us about our history, taught us how to be a proud about who we are, worked for the State Department in uh, conferring in Africa and everywhere else on behalf of the United States. She has traveled and taught in our universities. And even when I talk about grassroots, you could sit at her feet and learn a lot. She's done so much for this world and she left it, not, not even a little bit of thought should be given that she didn't do her best. So if we could give a moment of silence for Alice Wyndham and Clifford Wilson.
All right, I'll ask everyone uh, at the board and who's on this call to please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you, Alderman.
Thank you.
Alderman from the first.
Mr. President, members of the board, first of all, I'd like to ask you never to let the Alderwoman from the nineteenth go before me. Because she stole um, most of what I was going to say, almost verbatim. Uh, except for that I will highlight Natural Bridge, the forty-six hundred through the fifty-two-hundred block of Natural Bridge, which is mostly African-American owned businesses. People don't know that from the Burger King to the McDonald's, to the Stephanie's Auto Body, to Wade Funeral Home, to Randall's Funeral Home, all of these beautiful businesses to a barber shop, to a strip mall. These are all black-owned businesses. So I'm going to extend uh, Black History uh, Month another week because I didn't quite get all my resolutions and I wasn't going to have resolutions for part of them and not all of them. So I will be coming back Friday with all of my resolutions. And I don't want the Alderwoman from the nineteenth to be allowed to do a one, okay?
All right, there you go.
So if she turns anything in, I'm gonna ask the clerk to lose it for that. Right, but exactly. So and I, and Alice Wyndham, I, she was a longtime constituent of mine. And I, I didn't get to know Cliff Wilson, but uh, I heard great things from him uh, about him and from him, uh, and fine man. So that was, I'm glad that she did mention those two people. But I will be coming in next week with my list of black businesses in the first ward that's on Natural Bridge. And I encourage people to go there. And the good thing about this uh, uh, this pandemic we were in, because we didn't have sit-down restaurants, my uh, fast food restaurants did just fine because you just drove through there. You didn't have to change anything. So that was good. And I encourage people to go there because there are mostly, mostly black owners between the forty-five, forty-six hundred and the fifty-two-hundred block of Natural Bridge. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the twenty-second.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board. I just wanna make a statement, announcement that, you know, in, in the spirit of transparency, if your colleague asks you to yield, but you don't have your video on, chances are you're still present and it's disrespectful not to acknowledge. It's just a way of hiding yourself. As a senior Alderman, I try to recognize my colleagues, even if they're not on the committee because I wanna be fair and transparent. So I just wanna ask my colleagues, be mindful of that. When you talk about transparency, if you're asked to yield, but you don't have your video on and then you pretend like you didn't hear anybody, that's unacceptable to me. And sometime be careful what you ask for.
Thank you. Alderman from the twenty-third. I just, just gonna add, since, since we did that and probably not the right time, so stop me. But I can remember when I started that the chairman of the committee, if they didn't like you, you couldn't even speak during the committee hearings. You only had the right to vote and they would tell you. When you would say, look, well, no, I, it's my turn to talk, they would say, no. You don't have, the committee chair doesn't have to recognize you to say anything. You only have the right to vote and we don't wanna take that right away from people. And other than that, I'll be quiet and I will be at Alderman Bosley's meeting on Thursday. All right, excellent. Uh, any further announcements, any further announcements? Alderman from the twenty-seventh.
Uh, yes, Mr. President. I wanted to announce that Parks, uh, an environmental committee will meet on March the second. I wanna say they said March the second to make sure, yeah, March the second, we'll meet March the second.
All right, excellent. Madam Clerk, please make note of that.
What time? Nine o'clock. Unless the clerk gets on me and is later.
Any further announcements, any further announcements? All right, Alderman from the tenth, you're recognized on the motion to excuse.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. In a hallelujah moment, we are all present.
Excellent. You're recognized on the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move that we adjourn to March fourth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Move by the Alderman from the tenth. From the first and, and who else? And Alderman from the fourth.
Everybody.
Everybody's ready to adjourn. Alderman from the twelve.
I'd like to add that in bank.
It's been moved in second that we adjourn this meeting of the Board of Alderman. All in favor, signal five percent, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. You all have a great weekend. All right, bye-bye.
Thank you.